We are a little bit past 4:00 P.M. And in attendance today at the work session on January 17th, 2024. Time is moving by fast. Director Jorgensen, Director Art, Director Malpakam, Director Hayfley, and I saw Director Bankers. Director Carey is on the way here. He should be joining us in the next five to 10 minutes. And Director Nelson is unexcused as she is at the finance lesson, what a goodness that finance course that she is taking. So she and Dr. Comfort are attending that finance course together. So she is excused and will not be here. With that, we have Superintendent Gall joining us at this work session. And we have several of his team members up here too. And we have some community members in the audience. Welcome to all of you. Thank you for being here. We have a full agenda, so let's get started. The first item on the agenda is the continuous improvement cycle, but more focused on the mid-year assessments that were given out right before the winter break and the results that come from it. We will have a presentation and questions from the board at some point in time. I will first hand it over to Superintendent Gall so he can set the table.
Yeah.
And we'll go from there.
Many of you have seen the slides. We are very excited to go over our mid-year data. Our flow is going to be our STAR data. We'll get to our DIBELS. And then we have a separate deck to go over some of the behavior stuff. That echo has been all day. Is that the new sound system? Am I in that special spot of the Capitol Building? Harry, can you hear me? Tamara is in roof coming back from a teacher forum. So I will cover the slides that she's not here to cover. But then we'll be giving it to David to really go through the opportunity. And I know that there will be some questions on special populations. So David, if we need to go into the appendix for any of that, let's make sure that we get to it. Here's the agenda for it. Really, what I want to cover is just an affirmation of the strategy of which the board has empowered the district to embark on over the last couple of years and how we're really starting to see that show some very consistent inroads across the system. The number one way to student achievement is access to highest quality instruction. We right now call high quality instruction best first instruction. And you'll see a lot of the structural changes we've made as a district to be able to deliver on that. Next slide. Next slide. Your board priorities are, next slide, our major improvement strategies. First and foremost, best first instruction again. Number one way to student achievement, highest quality instruction. Two, communicating and engaging with our community to bring in more partnership voices at both the individual parent level as well as to the more expansive way of partners self-influence both MIS 1 and MIS 3. Still in strong conversations on MIS 3 of how to continue to improve that cycle from within. This is a very macro level of a cycle, but this same cycle has happened in individual schools. We were supposed to have our K-12 meeting yesterday. We lost that due to snow. We will have that meeting now on Tuesday to go over this data in depth with our individual school leaders and their ILTs. And then we have lots of facilitation for them to break out in a small group and gain that as well. You want Sandra? Sandra, it's happy you want to. Next slide. Okay, next slide. You want to go over some of these, David?
Yeah, so thanks again for the opportunity to go through this. I just want to really highlight what we're going to see. We're going to see a lot of really good news. And we're going to see some areas that we continue to improve in. And that all of this comes through systems. The positive, the negative are systems that are in place that are really the result of systems of practice, systems of instruction, and every component in the best case functioning in the way that we have designed it and that is reproducible. So really, if I use a little educator lingo, it's all internal locus of control. We control our destiny with these data. When we look at where our gaps continue to persist, we'll look at it with a forward-facing, not a rear-view mirror. Not looking at data in the rear-view mirror, but looking at how it's pointing us into new areas. Before we jump into the data, though, just want to go quickly over a review of how we look at data and assessment scores of various types. The first is performance levels. And you can see that these do align to the state CMAS, state assessment performance levels. And it determines where students at, at a particular given amount of time. If you are familiar with your researchy language, it's criterion reference based on a particular set of skills at a particular grade level. And that's what we look at with how percent meeting or exceeding and percent well below. That's a performance level band. When we also then look at it across a norm sample with STAR, it's a nationally norm sample. Over a million students in that dataset. That's when we look at median growth percentile. So if we take a look at an example of Mrs. Smith's class. Here we have a collection of student growth percentiles, SGP's. Those, we take the median of that group and that gives us the median growth percentile. It's a nationally norm sample and it's used to compare our students to students around the country. So our data story is looking overall very, very positive. Math scores show a record-breaking jump with two years of using STAR. So prior to this, we use the tool called Galileo. Some key differences, one being this is an adaptive test. This really gets at where a student is at, at a particular moment in time. And so this is our second cycle with STAR. And you can see that our jump up to 32.9% meets or exceeds. You could also say passing is synonymous. That's the biggest jump we've seen with this tool. But again, it's not about the tool. It's not about, I don't know what we did. I think it might be this, it might be that. It is systematized practice and looking at data in a very strategic way that is producing some of these results. So you can see that we are higher than we ended last year and we're higher than we were at this point last year in the winter. We are on track to meet the district goal of 5% to 6% increase of percent passing per year. That's in the UIP. In ELA, it's a similar trend. We're at 44% passing. That is a four-point, nearly a five percentage point increase from winter this time last year. And we are also outperforming where we ended the year last year. Do you want to point out really quickly on these two slides, too? You can see between, if you look at 41% in the middle of the slide and 40.3% to the next, that's our summer slide. So that is the spring 22 to the fall of this year. Our summer slide was miniscule, which is also something to celebrate and something that we need to systematize and really look into what, how did we get that result as well? But we are outpacing every metric that we had from the previous year. When we look at our top performing schools, you can see.
Just those two slides before. By the way, do you want us to ask questions along the way or do you want us to wait?
Ask them along the way.
Ask them along the way.
I have a question, though.
Okay. These are for third grade to?
Three to 11.
Three to 11. Great. Go ahead.
I just want to make sure I didn't miss it. If we've made strides, is this a test issue, a student issue, or a combination of both?
The growth that we have?
Well, yeah, I mean, we're using a whole new test now, right?
From Galileo. So this is our second year of using it. So it's not a brand-new test.
Okay, so, okay. That answers my question.
So I think it's a little bit of both. I think we have, what we saw last year, what was our R squared? 88, 92, 0.92 of STAR being predictive of CMAS. And so the district's decision to switch from Galileo to STAR is going to give us a better data point on beginning year, mid-year, and end of year to the ultimate state requirement of CMAS. And there is certainly some opportunity to see an increase in familiarity of how the test works. But with the strong R squared, we're confident that as much of this is on the increases in instruction and as compared to just the familiarity with the test.
Yeah.
Thank you. So just for the record, that, okay, he is joining us.
So if we look at our top performing schools, Buena Vista, leading with 70% passing rate. In ELA, Chupita at 63% in math. So you basically see those, for the most part, those were grouping pretty well. We have a couple of exceptions where they did not, where ELA outperformed math significantly. At Buena Vista, for the most part, they tracked together.
What do you attribute that to? Like, that's such a big difference. All the others are kind of close by, but here it's like a 35-point difference.
Um, I would probably chalk that up to a lot with Montessori, the Montessori approach, being a heavy in language. We look at impressive median growth percentiles in ELA in math. Those are top performers. And on average, students in these schools were at the 58th percentile in ELA and the 61st percentile in math. Remember, we have gap closure. So just to put this in context, 50 is meeting expected growth, but it's not going to close any gaps. We're not going to get more students into passing at 50. We're just going to kind of be continuing status quo. Certainly better than lower than 50, but it's not where we want to be. So we set our goals at 55 to 60. That's when we start to see gap closure with that type of growth. And we can see that in these schools with the highest being Martinez and Rudy. So within our secondary, Odyssey had 68% passing rate in ELA. Holmes and Coronado had a strong performances in math. On average, 55% of those students are performing at grade level in ELA and 39% in math. We'll talk about that while we're celebrating numbers like 39% in one graph. In another, and more importantly, we have to accept that 39% passing is not nearly where we want to be. And the input needs to stay on the gas.
Just on this one, that last line doesn't look quite finished.
Yeah, I apologize for that. I caught that on the way over. So the district average in high school percent passing in ELA is 44%.
Sorry, 44?
44 in high school. And in high school math, it's 32%. Middle school, 41 and 25.
So the top of the slide says Holmes and Coronado showcase strong performances in math. Does that translate to the graph that you have there? I see Holmes at 30% and Jenkins is even higher than Holmes. And North is higher than Holmes, too. So I don't know.
Yeah, you're correct. Yeah, Jenkins outperformed Holmes in math. And they're pretty commensurate in ELA.
Odyssey, good, good.
In ELA, so we have a 68%. Let's see if I have this one.
I think your carryover, I think Holmes is a carryover from a previous slide. Go back, you see Holmes doing very well there in ELA. So I just don't think you got the title of the slide correct as it carried over because the title didn't change. It's an overall story.
Yeah.
So we'll correct that and repost for those that are looking at it to make sure the titles match the actual graph. But if you go back through this sequence in secondary, go back to the first slide, David. So this was the first slide, talking about achievement. You can see that the achievement in certain school has outpaced what those averages were. Those averages are still way too low at an achievement level. Now go to the next slide. Now we're talking about, that's the next slide? Okay, thanks. Now we're talking about the growth. And so this is where, again, we didn't talk about it elementary school, but since there's fewer schools here, it's easier to discern. Toggle back again and you go and you see that we're talking about Holmes and Jenkins and/or North if we're talking about middle schools, where even if we measure our socioeconomic percentage of students, it's a higher socioeconomic status in those three schools than when you now toggle to where you're seeing growth be the measure at Mann and maybe or/or Saban. And so celebrating the mid-year data is both at an achievement and a growth level. The challenge that these systems and the measurement that the state provides is you can become addicted to growth without ever reaching achievement. We have board and district level goals of decreasing the number of schools on the state watch list to getting that to zero in just two years. Getting that to zero in two years doesn't equate to more than half of our kids at an achievement level. And so again, none of us want half of our kids not meeting state expectations. But the way that growth is used to eventually connect to achievement gives us this belief statement that now says, if man can do that two, three years in a row, and I want you, David, to talk a little about how we're measuring by cohort, then we know we're actually reaching a space where achievement is the goal. So not to just every quarter celebrate growth without connection. You want to talk a little bit about cohort measures?
Yeah, that'll be the next slide.
You can wait if it's going to come up.
So, yeah, just to reiterate, all of our goals are based on percent passing or achievement. Growth will come after that. So when we look at the continued struggles and growth gaps, we have to be honest and really look at the fact that more than two out of three of our students are performing below grade level in math. Nearly two out of three students are not growing at the rate needed to catch up, meaning 55 to 60 MGP. We are using a tool called Eureka End of Math, or Eureka Math. And it is using an end-of-module assessment. So we're on a set, end-of-module number four now. It is standards-aligned. It's for grades K through eight. We're using, actively using a dashboard to monitor grades three through eight and looking at the proficiency of end-of-module tests. And we continue to hover in the inconsistently proficient or not yet proficient range with the majority of our students. We want to get that into consistently proficient so that that information and those skills stick into the next round of district benchmark and the state performance or the state assessment season.
David, just a question on that. Are teachers in, especially third to eighth grade in every school, is implementing or giving this end-of-module Eureka Math assessments?
I wouldn't quite say we're at every. What we did this quarter or this semester is David's team worked with our tech team and with CNI. And we came up with a digital dashboard that measures specifically what we're getting on math on these end-of-module tests. As with any new program, that takes time for us to implement across the way. It's gotten good momentum, but there are still, we're redefining, trying to make it easier. What we don't want to do is force teachers to have to spend extra time to put information in. It's kind of like that first version of Quicken that came out. You spent all night putting your checkbook ledger into the program to say that you're out of money. And now you just hit a button and the bank tells you. So we're trying to modernize that of how do we get the assessment into the system without it being laborious for the teacher to do it. So I can't say that every teacher has done this. We're trying to get to a place where the classroom sees this as a tool because this gives us immediate feedback. So remember, the old way used to be you test at the end of the year and you find out how you're doing. We have a beginning of year, mid-year, end of year, which David started with. And now we're at a modular sense for math. We're almost to a place in education where data is so rich that we can know as students leave the classroom whether or not the exit ticket is an accurate measure of the learning that did or did not happen. And so the yin and the yang in the system right now is, is the school the lever of change or is the classroom the lever of change? All of our lives is driven by technology. I'm not promoting, putting this in a kid's hand in the classroom. But there are algorithms that measure everything that we do. But we still won't adopt to, how do we just make the exit ticket part of Eureka squared, which is already digitized and immediately know, did Jason learn single-digit addition today or did he not? Right now, we're waiting to the end of the module to be able to codify that at the district level. I believe every teacher knows that based upon their interaction with the student. But our ability to aggregate data allows us to align resources to an area of need faster instead of waiting until the end of the year. So I'm not going to ask you to go backwards. But the growth at Twain is noteworthy because Twain is the one school that slid backwards last year. That is incredible for us to have access to that information right now that says the resources and the USIP and the combined efforts of everyone in this district are showing improvements at Twain and not having to wait until the end of the year. But I hope that Twain is one that has adopted that module to look at the dashboard because I don't want to have to wait again now until April to find out did it stick.
So this is a good example of how data coaches and instructional coaches are working together.
The feedback that I am trying to give and Superintendent Gall understands this. Teachers teach certain, you know, standards in the classroom. But at some point in time, we need feedback from the students. If the students grasp those standards and understood it, and teachers also can then go back and reinforce those standards if necessary. And that's only going to happen if you have some kind of end-of-the-month assessments where teachers can also improve there.
And the important part is it's not a test. It's just part of the way that we're delivering the curriculum. And so, because there is always the challenge of, if all you do is test, then you never have a chance to teach, you never have a chance to learn. So trying to find the balance between those cycles that it isn't extra and/or dragging away from the opportunity to actually teach. And so I like the fact, and I think the growth that you're seeing in math particularly goes to the commitment of Eureka squared as our curriculum that had all those standards aligned pieces already built into it. And so again, it's hard for us to say out loud, but how much lesson planning should a math elementary teacher be doing when 80% of it is already built into Eureka squared? Can you annotate that lesson? Or do you want to take the lesson plan that you built last year before we had that curriculum and make sure it's standards-aligned? It's a metamorphosis over time of you can actually use some of these curricular resources to reduce teacher load since the teacher's time is focused on, was the standard of learning met or not met? Because some of that planning can be taken off. There's a, I know the, I don't want to go down the rabbit hole, but the board's interested in AI. There are AI programs right now that are developing interim assessments or end-of-module tests. So instead of a teacher having to say, what are those 18 standards that I covered? And how do I appropriately find them in an end-of-module test? Hit a button that says, these are the standards that I covered, generate tests. Are we ready for that? I don't know if we're ready for that. It'll be an interesting conversation.
Yeah, definitely. There are ways also to, to the point of taking some of the workload off. We are working on a model now within Eureka to be able to go item by item for teachers and produce for teachers a list of the items that most of their students got, you know, got correct. The items that most of the students missed, the distractors, which were the questions that, or which were the options in a multiple-choice setting that were most chosen. Really being able to dial down to the actual specific skill, like decimal, you know, decimal understanding. Place value is, we need to come back and reteach this. This is, I would say, the brunt of how we spent time with the University of Virginia out in Oklahoma City just recently in really dialing in data to drive and inform instructional decisions and giving teachers the freedom and the ability to really make those critical pivots and strategic turns. So that's coming out of, it's coming out of math. In ELA, then back to.
So I'm interested in what this specifically looks like for a classroom teacher. Some of the things that you've mentioned, you know, I, as someone who was in the classroom, you know, an hour ago, that's why I was a few minutes late, sorry about that. Some of those things sound very useful and exciting. Others sound maybe like not as useful or exciting to me. So can you help me understand, if you're a classroom teacher, you're using Eureka, what is it exactly that you're getting? Are you getting pre-made assignments? Are you getting a pre-made lesson plan for you need to cover X, Y, and Z today? And then you cover this other thing the next day? What are the specific deliverables that teachers have? What gaps do they still need to fill in with their own prep? This may be getting into the weeds a little bit, but can you help me understand what exactly this looks like for a classroom teacher?
Yeah, I'll answer that from our perspective. Let our CAO settle in and then she can answer from the perspective from CNI. What they are getting are, we developed with our math, our math team, instructional team, is a schedule of assessments, so end-of-module assessments. So we're now on a common schedule. It is differentiated by grade, class level. But we should be finishing up module four right about now. So we have a way to tell exactly where each school and classroom should be based on the curriculum within Eureka squared. So then within that curriculum, there are tools, there are exit ticket use, not assessments, exit ticket tools. There are pre and post questions in there that teachers can use. And then ultimately, the end of module. So then within that, you can use the pre and the post. You can find out where the gaps are and begin to use tools within Eureka squared that are aligned to those gaps. So I would say what the list that you mentioned, it is all of the above, while giving teachers the freedom and the flexibility to really pivot where they need to with their classroom based on the data that comes in from the pre and the post and the exit ticket data. Instructionally, I don't know if you want to speak to how Eureka squared and the resources look for instructional use.
Yeah, how are they using the resources to meet student needs based on the data?
I guess, I guess what I was asking mostly is what resources does this curriculum give to them specifically on a day-to-day basis? And then what do they still have to kind of fill in the gaps with, with their own planning?
Yeah, I, so the curriculum, the curriculum by grade level is aligned to the grade level standards of the grade level. And it follows a trajectory of learning from kindergarten through eighth grade of what should be introduced at what, so like some things are introduced in certain grade levels to prepare them to be competent with them and have mastery at other grade levels. So we've aligned scope and resource documents that align with our curriculum that show teachers at points of the year according to the modules of instruction where kids should be on the trajectory to mastering grade level standards. So it gives, along with that, you know, connected to that scope and sequence, it gives identified lessons and, you know, activities that are based on how students learn mathematics to bring things from a conceptual level or an abstract level, real conceptual, to, you know, to a level where they don't need some of the conceptual pieces. So it gets internalized. So there's lots of those things. Within that, you look, you can look at the overview. You can look at different pieces and it tells you how, how to teach certain concepts. So that's folded in. Our professional learning that we're doing alongside of it is focused on planning for learning. So that's where we're looking at, okay, I know my students based on the data and I have to plan this module of study and they're supposed to be confident in these standards. Now how am I going to have to plan differently for kids that aren't quite there yet for skills in particular lessons? So we're working to help them use the resources to better be able to plan that way.
So what I'm hearing you say is that you're given, you're given the scope and sequence. You're given the resource to follow the benchmarks that they need to reach. And to hopefully add into that question from Director Carey is, and how much in that planning are teachers given the latitude to add to the lesson? Or is it a prescribed, is it prescriptive?
It is not scripted. We are not a scripted district. We don't seek to be a scripted district. We seek to provide, and that's what I talked about, the balance. What is the balance of, can you take the standards-aligned lesson plan that is built in Eureka? And can you annotate it? Or do many of our teachers still feel that they want to start from where they want to start to get to that same learning objective? I think that's going to depend upon the experience and expertise of each individual teacher. But what we're seeing.
And let me stop you there. And so what I'm hearing you say is that that is, I'm trying to find another word besides allowable. But that is the opportunity for teachers to bring in or to teach their class in a way that matches the resources for them that have been successful and incorporated into, but adhere into the curriculum that we have adopted.
That's right. And without bringing up the dashboard, because it's no different than any other set of lines that we share with you. As an example, when David came to me and showed me the dashboard, I said, bring up X elementary school and bring up that particular. And I called the principal up and I said, what do you know about that classroom? And the principal said to me, I bet the two highest scorers on that end-of-block module were Sandra and Thomas. And sure enough, she was right. And so what it does is it validates that if your commitment to however it is that you're bringing your expertise to the classroom is showing that growth and that achievement, then go for it, keep doing it, share that with everyone else. But no longer can we be a district that says, I know what I'm doing, yet my students aren't achieving and my students aren't growing. Because the teachers, particularly our inexperienced teachers, are new to teaching teachers who have taken this resource and implemented it with fidelity, are moving very quickly. And they're not having this struggle of, well, I. And they're not having this struggle of, well, I I, you know, this is different than my lesson plan. Again, it's it's a bit of a modernization of how it is that we can teach. Which is you don't have to build every lesson plan yourself. There's a starting point in this curriculum. I want you to personalize that lesson plan based upon what you know your classroom needs. But you don't have to start all over and tell me what you think was right two or three years ago when we have this resource in place. We are only in our third year of implementation now, right, or second?
Second year with your.
Second year. This math growth that we're seeing has to be attributable to the strength of the. Uh, the depth of what this curriculum offers, multiple levels of resources again. It sounds like overtesting, but if you make the end of module test that Eureka squared built, the gradable item for the student's performance. You were gonna give that kid that test anyway. So it's not a state assessment, it's now, now you don't have to generate the test. Or maybe you create three items at the bottom of it, because you know that there's something else you want to know about your student learning. We're not asking for it to be scripted, we're asking for people to use it as a launching point.
So that leads me to a question I had earlier when you were going through the stats of growth and um sixty to sixty-five percent or percentile is a. What we're shooting for so that we can find academic achievement success for our kids. So if we're showing sixty to sixty-five percent and not, eh and it's not resulting in academic growth. Would it be reasonable to say that there's, it's the curriculum that we should be looking at? Because with Eureka Math in two years, using that curriculum and performing it or uh teaching it with fidelity, the scores have come up. So if we are teaching, we're showing growth and the scores are not coming up, do you think that we could attribute that to curriculum? And I don't know if that's your question or your question.
David answered, I I would say that there is a direct connection between number of years of growth and achievement. Regardless of a curriculum, we're testing, we're testing the standard. So if you're showing growth on a standard, you will get to achievement. I think what is complicated as we were toggling is when David gets to this cohort measurement. With the instability in our average classroom, remember twenty-five percent on average of our families' choice. Into a school outside of their neighborhood school. The instability, the churn inside of public education means you're looking at a static number right now. So that's sixty-five percent growth in a single classroom. I can't tell you with confidence that eighty-five percent of those kids are matriculating to the next grade in the same building. There's a lot of churn inside of our system. And so I think it would require further analysis, but I'd love for David to comment on Director Bankus's question of curriculum. Which uh would be a cause for achieve, growth with no achievement.
Within year two, we do, I'll just say clearly, we do um. We are still growing in the fidelity of our implementation of the tool. So what the, what the dashboard is allowing us to do is to really drill down and say, hey, school B, you are. Teachers are way behind the schedule on module three. What needs to be done, what can be done to support? When we looked at this with module two, some of it was error in entering, some of it was they were using the pre-test as I'm thinking it was in end of module. Uh, there are all sorts of user, you know, user learning opportunities, I will say, so. We would not have known any of that without a really clear laser focus on looking at the outcomes with with this new approach. So it's to be under, it's it's to be expected that we have early adopters. That are just flow, they're in the module or flowing into the system, and I think we're seeing, we're seeing change there. It's to be expected that we have some that are still in, you know, learning the system. And some that we're gonna be following up to say, hey, what's going on with module four because, or module three, because it should be done by showing, you know, twelve, twelve now. So what we focus on and what we look at starts to, starts to change. So we are still in an implementation mode with Eureka. With now the ability to really hone in on how that implementation is is actually flowing.
Yeah, I just have, just would quickly add, eh it's, it's not to your point of. To go with what Mike was saying, with what Superintendent was saying about, it's not, we wouldn't. If we're not yet, that year is an overall system with the accelerated growth, we have good growth, right, in a year and a half. But it wouldn't be, it's not necessarily the curriculum resource. Like it is implementation, but it's also like what we're doing is teaching and as a eh. Instructing and providing support in teaching in a standards-based way. And we've chosen a particular standards-based resource to be able to do that. So later, as more resources come out, there might be that we make a movement, right? But we've got a really great standards-based resource and we need to be instructing in a standards-based way. What are the standards we're gonna be um teaching in the, in this portion of the year? What's the level of rigor in the standard? What, what skills are kids coming in? How do I adjust my instruction to meet that? Which is why you can't follow it day by day by day, you have to know your kids. You have to know where they're entering, you have to be assessing them, and you have to adjust instruction. The resource should be a good quality resource, but it'll never take the place of a teacher actually making instructional decisions, never.
Just a question about implementation, and sorry that I'm hammering on this topic, but you know, you can see on the slide sixty-seven percent below grade level. So I want to make sure I really have a clear picture in my head of uh the current plan of the district. So we're getting to implementation, it sounds like the curriculum has. A lot in the way of helping you design assessment, a lot in the way of helping you analyze the data that you get from those assessments. Uh, scope and sequence, lesson plan, how much of this are teachers mandated to use? How much are they encouraged to use? Like to what extent right now do teachers have the flexibility to use the program or not? What do they have to do, what do they, what are they encouraged to do?
Teachers have to, eh uh, instructionally as a system, we need to follow the scope and sequence of learning. That's aligned to our curricular resource, to make it easier for them as well, so they have to do that. We ask that they use the standards-based materials, but making adjustments to lesson to meet the needs of your kids is actually, that's what you should be doing. The assessments, we've asked them to use the end of module assessments. That's very intentional, again, because it is aligned to the, what kids are expected and to be able to do at the end of a unit of study. That's also aligned to the standards that are being assessed in the scope and sequence, so it's not one more thing, it's part of what's expected. And it's also, we ask them to do that because it's part of our overall district interim assessment system. We can't just use STAR as an uh interim assessment. Because it's adaptive, right, so it's not necessarily always, it's assessing connected to, and David could say this much better than I, but it's, it's. It's connected to where kids are on their trajectory to being at grade level or beyond, but they may not yet be there. So we've, we've got to be able to see how are they doing real time on grade level standards. So it's a combination of both.
Yeah, the the frequency of assessments makes sense to me. You know, gone are, well, some people still do this, but I think they're wrong. You can think back to your college days where you have like a single exam, that's eighty percent of your grade. And most teachers don't do that anymore for that exact reason, that part of what you're doing when you're assessing. Some of it may be, you know, building into the actual grade, but but most of it is, do my students know at the moment what I thought I taught them last lesson? Or do I need to reattack that? So that part makes sense to me, okay.
When they actually do their planning, they're planning with mind in mind, and that's planning in a standards-based way. So they first look at what, what are, what is the assessment kids actually have to take at the end? That and what, what standards does it address and what are the grade level standards? So then, then you plan from that, right? So then with your knowledge of where kids are entering, then you plan for this is where I'm trying to get them. It's, it's very transparent.
Yeah, I would, I would say overall, I'm pleased in year two with the adapted, uh, the the adu-. The adoption of this curriculum district wide. I think, again, I'll invite um board members to attend our K twelve meeting. Where you can see snippets of how we deliver this PD. There are always gonna be what I call, you know, um uh trickle-down loss as you go from district to area soup and area soup. To principal and principal to classroom, but there hasn't been resistance to this implementation. If anything, I think people are adapting to it much uh quicker because of the resources and their standards alignment within. Um, and I think then, you know, we talked a lot about math, but switching to ELA. The fundamental shift of getting a text-first planning, and if if Tamara wants to summarize quickly for folks. And the, again, the very strong positive feedback we're getting at the PD levels for that. Is directly attributable to these strong mid-year numbers that we're seeing.
And I think the way in which you phrase that or uh explained it. There can be a concern for people who don't, who might have another um view of how that unfolds. And you made it very clear, it's not teaching to the test, it's looking at the the structure through which we want our kids to be. Taught, uh, develop, learning and be able to demonstrate as they progress and it's in a systematic way. So that it's not, you know, you like to teach dinosaurs, I like to teach the tropical forest. We're away from that so that we can feel confident in knowing that our kids are all on a. Trajectory to reach a common goal, and I think that's well said.
I'm sorry, can I just have, just real quick, I want to make sure I understand this. Do math teachers move forward even if kids aren't mastering the material? Or do they stay on that material until it's mastered, thereby pushing their timeline back? Or is, if teacher A is is here and teacher B is somewhere else and teacher C. There should be a timeline, like curriculum map that they should be following, but let's say their kids aren't getting it. Do they have that leeway to stop, go back, and then move forward?
They should absolutely be doing reteaching if kids haven't yet um become competent with standards they're supposed to be competent in within a module of study. They should absolutely be doing that. We were just um, the uh area superintendents, myself and some of our priority schools. Were at a convening, a learning convening where we're talking about strategies. So it's, part of it is like building our competence and our strategies for how to do that, right, like. And eh the, what the learning uh experience that we were in was um having us as a team dive deeper into. Like, how do you use assessment and how do you build in the the reteach? And how do you build like solid plans for reteach that keep you on the trajectory? But actually don't have you keep pressing on if kids don't have things, which impacts their um their uh. Their later development mathematically and and beyond, right? So that is, that is where um we've got great pockets of um educators and schools that are doing that really well. And that's where po- we have pockets where we have to um provide more support on how to do that as an overall system.
So do they have time in the calendar to go and reteach?
Yeah.
Or are they going to fall behind?
Yeah, that's a great question, President, uh, Mal Paco. We um, we do, there is enough leeway within the scope and sequence by grade level to be able to do that. What we, I think, took away from the learning we just participated in is we probably, we probably need to make that clearer. In our scope and sequence documents. So it's very clear um after modules where reteach comes in, so people aren't, because what I find is like. Even though like, even the questions that you're getting are some of the questions that that um our area superintendents will get or all get is like. That uh they have a a point of view that that says it's not okay, I have to keep going, right? So even in your documents, even our scope and sequence documents, we need to be um putting that in so. So people, so so teachers understand that, no, it's not different than you would expect in that way. What is different is like, um, if you were a teacher. And oftentimes it will happen with new teachers that are overwhelmed, right? Like they're learning a lot of things, but they get sorely off- pacing. And what we do know is that kids don't even have exposure to um grade level content with some, like if they don't, if they miss half of. Half of exposure to half of the grade level content, um and they have two years in a row with that, they never catch up, they never catch up. So it's, yes, um, we, we, we can do, as we're learning, we'll do a better job of making sure that we're communicating that way. That our resources match, so it shows that, um, but it's, it's very important.
So this is the cohort model that Superintendent Gaul was referring to. So we look at STAR Math, what you are looking at here is uh winter to winter. So winter twenty-two, twenty-three for grades three through ten. For this winter, twenty-three, twenty-four, we're now looking at grades four through eleven. So we're getting as close as possible to the same bucket of kids from one point last year to this point. Uh, this year, so within that, you can see that we are growing the top, this is language that we use very commonly. So growing the green and blue, that's meets or exceeds grade level expectations. We grew that by eleven percentage points, and we also shrunk the bottom, so that's, those are students that are well below grade level work. We shrunk that by seven percentage points. That is um exceeding the pace, the the goal that we had for ourselves for the um, in the UIP. And we just have to continue to keep that moving forward. Within STAR, there is often a trend where we get a bump, we get a positive bump um in from fall to winter. And then it kind of, kind of hockey sticks or levels off to the spring, we can't let that happen. Moving forward, we have to continue in math to use the tools that we have. To get into the hands of teachers to reteach, to make those really quick cycle instructional moves. So that we continue this uh, this improvement and getting more students into the green. So wait, this is winter to winter, and so you can see that our achievements outpaced last year. This one looks very similar, but notice that it's spring to winter, so this is the end of last year. So our grades three through ten at the end of last year compared to those same bucket of students, grades four through eleven at this point this year. We are at, we added um ten, uh ten percentage points to the top. And shrunk the bottom by seven percentage points. So again, same bucket of students, year to year, we are significantly outpacing where we were last year. Now, let's take that in the big context, right, we cut, we cut our turnaround schools and for um watchlist schools by half last year. We, our goal is nothing short of doing that again. And with these numbers, and we continue to push on it and not flatten, but we continue to get that good uh positive growth. We are on track to meet that, which is very exciting. Any questions on the cohort approach?
I think Thomas has.
Yeah, I uh, just two, one really quick question and then maybe a longer question. Levels five through one, this is, these are like different levels of achievement on the assessments? Okay, and then this is just a more broad question, it's possible somebody asked this before I came in. How much of this improvement? Should I think of as being attributable to the curriculum and other changes? And how much of it should I think of as being more or less sort of priced in as we just get further and further away from, you know, the years of remote learning?
Part of it is also all the changes that Superintendent Gaul and this team have implemented, the leaning in. With the Rapparam supports that are provided now, uh, this first instruction. So I don't know if we can uh point the finger at one thing and say. That this is what resulted in uh the growth and achievement that we are seeing. Schools have more supports in terms of assistant principals, but we at the board uh approved that that last year. But if you guys have, you're the experts, so if you want to.
Well, we have a couple of slides out on the end, but I mean, we would certainly take an active position. That it's the realignment of resources against the classroom as the primary um contributor to the success. And whether that be curricular or administrative support through APs or area superintendent models. I would be um concerned to think that this is just the nature of kids making their way through COVID. Only because the achievement level is still so low and the achievement level before COVID was still below state standards. That this acquiescence of we're just over COVID and that's what we're seeing. I would, I would be fearful if we would make that an attribution to what you're seeing here. I think the important piece here is also that it is, there are dualities in growth here. We're not only shrinking the number of kids who aren't achieving, we're growing the number of kids who are overachieving. And so when Dr. Carey asked, Director Carey asked, um, Doctor Director Carey, Director Doctor Carey. Thomas, sitting next to me, asked uh the five different bands and and David had shown it earlier. You gotta be at level four to be beating with this, with with the state or the grade level expectations. And so even though you can see green and blue getting better, it still only says that with a ten percent growth. In STAR Math, only thirty percent of the kids are what we are saying, there you go, you're ready for the next grade. You're ready for your cohort to go on. The, there's another piece that hasn't come up, but particularly those that have taught in the classroom will appreciate. The more you shrink that tail, the steeper and the faster you can make that line. Cause it's not a linear relationship to the number of children who aren't achieving. The conversation, the the, the point came up in this idea of a reteach and are you, are are you not on scope? When you have more than a third of your kids who are not on objective, it's not, I need a third more of my time to get there. It's an exponential amount of time and resource that you need to get a concentration of children who don't understand the learning objective. And so I was in a different conversation earlier today and I drew everybody to the red. And I said, you almost zeroed the red, what, we were just down there in the area soups meeting, wasn't it? We were, we were having a meeting, I'm looking at Sarah, and one of the things got down to five, and I was like, no. And I was like, no, it was with Sherry, we were together. And I said, only five kids in that classroom are red right now. If you can get zero kids in red, you're gonna move everybody up to green and blue faster than the amount of time it took you to move those five kids from red to yellow. There's an exponential of, if you can move that concentration, if you just think about a, a, a mean distribution. The mean distribution in the first one is too far to the left of the, the mean. Once you get it closer to the average, it's easier to get your resources allocated to the area to close that gap. And again, remember what we're talking about is gap closure. And so yes, we're celebrating upper 50s and low 60s. That's just the place where you start to close the gap. To Director Bankus's question, if you wanna see a kid get to achievement in two years when they're at a third of their way now, you're gonna need two years at 70 plus. So we're celebrating classrooms at 57, which means that they're not losing, they're just barely winning.
When we look at this across, if you remember back to the UIP document, we put a particular emphasis on our subpopulations. And so I wanna take a look at this across ethnicity and socioeconomic level. So we do have noteworthy gains across all, but we set a very ambitious goal. We wanna add eight percent to the top. That's compared to five percent across the board. So we are underperforming that goal. You can see in our two largest, two largest ethnic groups, black and Hispanic, we are not moving our black students into the green at the rate that we should be. We are shrinking the bottom, and that's a great, that's a great start. But we need to really be growing that top to Superintendent Gaul's point. As we continue to push that and we get that doubt, that upward pressure moving up through the other two, we should start to see that, but it is flat at the moment. Hispanic is relatively flat as well, plus four on the top. But we shrunk the bottom by the same amount, by 11. So we are seeing those gains, but we are underperforming the goal that we set for ourselves. When we look at FRL, we see a little bit more, so we're growing the top by six percent, shrinking the bottom by nine percent. But again, we wanna grow that. All those top numbers need to be plus eight or bigger.
How much is attendance or lack thereof affecting this?
How much, I'm sorry?
Is, is there any data on the lack of attendance? How much is that affecting?
We're gonna come to the board with an attendance update, not next work session, but the work session after that. So that's probably a month-ish from today. Last year's numbers, we were 40% chronically absent. Roughly means 9,000 kids missed 18 days or more. And that is directly contributing to lack of opportunity to reach learning objective across the board. When you see the way some of our ethnic ethnicities or socioeconomic categories rank out in that chronic absenteeism, it too is showing a direct correlation.
We might talk about that, Dr. Konstata.
Yes, a month from now, we'll come back to the board with that.
Real quick, is there a reason that this slide compares fall to winter? Whereas in the other slides, you've done like winter to winter? Cause you had mentioned earlier that you sometimes see kind of an initial rise over the course of the year that then plateaus. So I, just the, the difference of how you're making the comparisons, I'm finding it a little bit hard to understand.
Yeah, so this is a within-year comparison, just looking at that because that's the way we set up the goal with the UIP.
Makes sense, thank you.
We have the other data, we've tried to truncate the amount.
Sure, okay, that's fine, that's fine, thank you.
This is, that's live data for this school year, basically.
Yeah, this school year, correct, yeah. So when we look at the same breakdown for ELA, very similar trends, a little bit bigger on the top, so plus 13. This is winter to winter, so last year this time, grades three through 10 and grades four through 11. So we have a good, good growth on the top. We'd like to see shrinking the bottom a little bit more. But as, as that red number gets smaller and smaller, the pressure becomes greater and greater moving those out, right? We have to, and this will become apparent in the, in the Acadian State or Dibbles data as we look at those really low-level skills requiring a lot of effort and a lot of structure to get those, to start to move those scores. But we are in this, on the same trajectory as we saw with math with our cohort model winter to winter. And then this is last, end of last year to this point this year. Very similar trend, plus nine, minus four. So we're achieving a nine-point lead over last year's performance with the same grouping of students. When we break it out by subpopulation again, we see a very similar trend. So our black and Hispanic students relatively flat up on, on, in the green and the blue. We are not moving our Hispanic students out of the red at the rate we need to either. So minus four is a start, but it's not where we need to be. Same with our socioeconomic level. So ELA subpopulation is an area of, that we need to see marked improvement moving forward, especially to reach that eight percent, that eight percent goal.
David, one thing that's missing from this, and I'm sure you have the data and schools have the data, it talks about all the minority students, but how does this compare to our non-minority students? If we are using it as a base for comparison, it would be good to have that measured. White students, what are they, how are they performing compared to black students and Hispanic students?
Yeah, I can, I can get you that information. The logic behind having it here, we are just comparing our subpopulations to an established goal, not to a, not to a criteria reference.
But just the takeaway of seeing the strong mid-year growth that we reported, and then seeing that subpopulations are not meeting that, says it is performing below your non-minority students.
When we look at median growth percentiles across the district, so this is grades three to 11. So remember, median growth percentiles are lots of students pooled into, into light groups. So this is across a nationally normed. This is the exact same calculation that the state uses for state testing for CMAS. So this is a very predictive number. Both performance and MGP range from high, high correlation of like point seven-six to point eight, I think eight-two, eight-three, even up to point eight-eight in some cases. So this is a very, very predictive number. So we want to really look at this as, as a predictor for what we might see coming out of April and into August when we get our state scores. So across the district, we see we are meeting and, meeting expected growth in ELA and approaching it, approaching it in math, right? Fifty, remember, keeps us kind of status quo. So 54 is good, we wanna get that up 56 or higher like we saw in ELA. This is across the district fall to winter. So this is within year, again to, to Director Carey's point, this is within year. When we look at minority group growth, we can see here that all minority groups met or exceeded expected growth. However, not all met that to the point of gap closure, which we saw in the previous slide, where we have performance levels remaining relatively flat. If we have MGP's with our subpopulations in the 53s, 52s, that flat is gonna remain. It has to be what we kind of see with, yes, like our multi, multiracial in ELA, 57, that's gonna be a gap closure number.
I had a question about that one. When you say we will see achievement gap closure, I, I think of, you know, you're starting a race and some students are down here and it's, you know, our, significantly our minorities are upper upper. And if everybody's climbing, to me, that achievement gap is not closing between populations. So it's, it's closing to our ideal of, you know, every student at 100% academic achievement, but I just feel like it's not. Maybe that could be worded a slightly different way, cause I, I guess, what are we talking about with the gap there? Are we talking about catching up with all white students or the, the average white student? Or are we talking about reaching a certain bar of achievement? So.
The bar of achievement, yeah.
All right, but they are going at such a slower rate that they're still losing the rate. Not, not that it's a race, but they're still so far behind. It's going to take them so much longer to get to that bar of achievement.
When you need to make greater than a year's growth, that's like, so like 50 is about like a year's growth. So you have to go above 50.
Right.
Dr. Colick, you're saying, you know, about 56 higher, even in the 60s to get multiple year's growth when you're, when you're that far.
So I, the current trajectory, if other students are at 60% and somebody is here at 50 or 53, it's just gonna take them that much longer to get there, is my understanding then. Okay.
That's correct.
If they have a growth median percentile of 50, they're growing.
Oh, yes.
They're growing, just not at a fast enough rate.
For it to be.
So like if we saw growth rates in the twenties.
Good thing is that they are about 50, which is what you want, the subpopulation. And this goes back to my question, we don't have the numbers for the non-minority population here. Maybe a non-minority population.
The next page is a little more helpful than, than the next page.
It's available, like, like.
And, and I would think the, the positive of this is all these numbers are better than they were last year when we reported mid-year data.
Yes, I'm glad, I'm very glad to see that.
This would be the, this would be the first time that every one of these populations is above 50.
Right, and if you can go really quickly back to just the elementary growth slide, can you go really back to the elementary growth slide?
Really quickly.
When you look at the names of those schools with knowing that the population is over 50%, any one of, or an assemblance of the subpopulations you saw before, it says that we are making strong inroads at school levels. When we disaggregate the data by specific ethnicity or socioeconomic status, it says that we don't have an answer for the individual that is represented there. But at the school level, we have gotten a concentration of effort. So if you pick Carver, you'll see Carver this year is now at almost 60 on both of those growths. And it wasn't anywhere there near last year. So it says, your approval of an allocation of resources and a strategy is making it inroads at Carver. The demographics of Carver have not changed significantly year over year. And now, again, if you now go to your subpopulations, you'll see that in the, in, in our special populations, or whether you call them ethnicities, it's getting harder and harder to actually measure what we used to measure, which was where are our black children, where are our brown children? You get now to two or more. What is two or more? How are families identifying as two or more? They're not naturally trying harder or getting better instruction because they come from two or more ethnicities. It's just the complexity of this is saying, I don't, I don't know what to take away. Why are kids of two or more races by identity achieving at 15 or 20% higher than children that are just identified as Hispanic or black? And then why do Asian, which is another subpopulation that we measure, constantly blowing all other, those other four ethnicities out of the water? Like, at a school level, our schools of highest need are growing at this year at a higher rate, almost to a gap closure rate. To get them all over 60, now if you go back to the high school takeaway, what were the numbers for Mitchell? They were both in the upper 50s, right? This is a school that two and a half, three years ago was on the state closure list. And from a growth perspective, is showing exceptional growth in math in ELA, particularly at a secondary level, knowing that that is the time that it is hardest to overcome that gap, because you are furthest from the opportunity to be able to correct.
Like this, this speaks to a couple of the questions as well. What can we attribute some of this to? I think it's very powerful to look at Audubon, Carver, and Twain, who at this time last year were nowhere near these numbers. And nothing significantly has changed on the surface. What has significantly changed at all of those is a focused attention on instruction, a focused attention on, on using data well and in a healthy fashion that empowers teachers to make instructional decisions and instructional pivots in a very quick cycle, and then use assessment in a, in a positive way to measure that. I mean, the work that's happening in those schools is, is amazing to watch and to be a part of, and we're seeing the, the outcome of that.
Yeah, and, and I don't wanna sound as if we're trying to take a victory lap, because if you look at a school like Queen Palmer, Principal Butcher's been doing what she's been doing a heck of a lot longer than I arrived here or Tamara arrived here, or probably before the district even committed to best first instruction. What the district is doing now is learning from what happens at Queen Palmer, which is an incredible laser focus on instruction. That's what Principal Butcher brings. She is a one-woman and/or team of an instructional leadership team. She knows every student, she knows every standard, she knows every teacher and where they are and their ability to deliver that. And now what you're seeing is, is we're bringing that to scale, not by replicating Christina Butcher, but by saying, what is the balance of every ILT in a building to ensure that those same strategic points that she delivers can now happen in Carver, can now happen in Twain, can now happen in Rudy or Grant as well? If you're thinking about our population sets that have been less served over time. And I've said it time and time again, if you wanna make a year and a half worth of learning to put your kid at Queen Palmer, they'll get it. She's done it year after year, regardless of superintendent. But what we need is a system that has that happening in every school based upon the needs of all those children. And I've tried to get Christina to take over 11 schools and she just won't do it.
Let's keep moving, we still have a long evening.
When we look at subpopulations or subgroups beyond minority, we can see by gender, English language learners, students on an individual educational plan, or sped students, GT and FRL. You can see that most subgroups are meeting expected growth. Our ELL in ELA is just underneath, but I think that makes pretty logical sense in the fact that they're 48 and 49. I'm sorry, 48 is, I think, a pretty powerful data point right there. So again, we are, I don't, in my time here in the district, I have not seen this consistent above 50 result with our subpopulations. We have always struggled and always been weak in this. And I think setting a targeted goal in the UIP to really focus on this matters. And I think we're starting to see some gains. Certainly we wanna see more, but we are seeing some of those gains. In math, you can see the students on IEPs are 40, in the growth percentile of 46. But again, almost all of our subpopulations or groups are meeting or exceeding expected growth.
In ELA, minority students are overperforming in growth, at least, non-minority students. That's, yeah, in growth, that's encouraging. And then to your point, the gap between FRL and non-FRL students, that's the lowest that I have seen in the time that I've also been looking at this time by time.
It's also a growth metric, so again.
It's a growth metric, yep.
Is this K-11? K through 11?
Uh, this is still STAR, so three through 11.
Three through, yeah.
Okay, three through 11, sorry, yeah.
We do have some schools that give second grade, but we don't include it in the data.
One of the things I wanna point out on this graph in math, for the ELL students who are at that 50% median growth percentile is that, my understanding is that Eureka Math is heavy in language, heavy in English. And so for it to, for children who are in those programs to reach that, that level, I think it speaks strongly to the instruction that they're being given and not being held back by the, the difference in their home language and what's being asked of them in school. That's, that's pretty good.
All right, so again, I just wanna, as I hand over, hand over the controls here. Oh, no, we're on priority approval, one more section.
Nice try.
It's been so long. So, so again, just that locus of control being what we focus on, what we strategize, and what we really implement, we start to see change on. So when we look at our priority schools, so this is our list of priority schools for this year, you can see across the bottom that we have some very good performance. Audubon again, Columbia, Mitchell that we pointed out. Some of our more flat or that are losing some ground, Galileo. I do wanna point out that Galileo, again, getting resources into that building, but when you don't even have a math department for at least half of the, half of the first semester of the fall because of hiring and just hiring challenges, we have to give some, some leeway on that and the work that's happening there. But we definitely wanna keep an eye out for Galileo and reverse that trend, because we're going in the wrong direction on both, both ends of that, of that bar in ELA. But you can see that for the most part, we are trending in the right directions. Swagard is another one that we are not moving students into the meets or exceeds. But on some of our most, so Audubon, But on some of our most, so Audubon, Columbia, uh, Mitchell, Twain, again, posting very strong. When we look at, um, performance levels for math, again, Audubon, I just wanna really point out, um, Audubon and, um, and Twain, especially at those bottom levels, but, uh, Audubon really did a good job of moving students into green and blue as well.
Yeah.
Um, we don't have any trending in the wrong direction in math, but we do have some pretty flat with both Galileo and Swiger. And Man on the top, but they're doing a better job at the, at streaking the bottom. So overall, take away our performance, uh, our priority schools are trending in the right direction, but we'd like to see it a little bit steeper, uh, to get them off that list. When we look at Man and Twain, they got the top spots in ELA growth, so Man at sixty-five, Twain at fifty-eight. To have Man growing at that rate, um, is really, is really fantastic, everyone really wanna point that out. Sixty-five, fifty-eight is, is pushing, um, has a good chance if we continue that growth, uh, definitely get off of turnaround status and into priority improvement. Uh, Man, I think, has a good chance of moving into, uh, into improvement or even, even slightly better possible. Twain, again, um, secured top spot in math, and Audubon, uh, came in a close second at sixty-four.
I disagree.
Yeah. So these are, I mean, Twain, again, just being our, our only school on, uh, turnaround. We wanna get that, we wanna get them off, off of that and into priority improvement or even higher.
Yeah.
And again, if we continue on these trends, we should be on track to hit our goal of close to our next, you know, having our list again this year, or this next year. So the question came up, um, I think at a, a previous work session or meeting, how are these, uh, results communicated to families?
That was me.
Um, so parents have access immediately after their, uh, after their student tests within the STAR system that they will be emailed an update on their, uh, student's performance and their child's progress and scores. Um, it does come with resources, how to understand that. We are developing an additional set of resources and possibly some video resources that might be a little bit easier and also bilingual. Uh, STAR provides bilingual resources as well. But sometimes STAR can be a little bit overwhelming on their, on their presentation of it. We are looking at ways to include a little bit more of a summary statement. But they are available to families, um, that does require a sign-up on the family's part, and each mail displays, each, uh, email displays the score and how to interpret it.
Have we communicated with parents how to sign up?
Yes.
More than once?
More than once, we can always do more.
More than three times.
Continuing to communicate.
Do you have data that shows you how many people have actually signed up and clicked on that information?
That's a great question, I do not know that, but I'll chase that down.
Okay.
We, we can and we will, I think that's important information. So we, we decided last year, I don't think John's here, but we decided last year to get to a push and pull. Um, if you want your kids' report card in the mail, we'll mail it to you.
Yeah.
Like, if you can't figure out how, or you don't wanna go into the portal, or like, we'll, we'll go back to old school. I'm not gonna save seven thousand dollars in postage for parents to not know if they don't like the portal and that's not their cup of tea, that's fine. Um, and we'll also make sure that we include, um, access to David's team as contact on these things, that if what we send you makes sense to us and it doesn't make sense to you, by all means, call. That's the whole flip that, um, Ed Insights has made by bringing data coaches to the area team. We stopped trying to even tell our own educators that they need to understand this, and we said, how can I help you understand this? Because it shouldn't be a test, it's a, it's a conversation.
Well, and they're our customers, so we'll wanna serve them.
Just a minute.
You had a question?
Yes, so I'm, I'm writing it down, so I don't forget, you, you referenced the STAR portal. It's different than Schoology and Power School, or is it, with, can you find it within Power School?
So do they sign this up on Power School or STAR?
You will, you can find your STAR scores in Power School, and then an email from STAR can be sent to families.
Okay, can be, or just?
If, depending on their, if they signed up.
So where do parents go to sign up for this course, is it in Power School?
Um, they are initially.
You can find that in.
Yeah, I need to find that out exactly where, but the initial, the initial communication goes out, uh, through schools, to SACS as well, beginning of year, and then I think we did another one in the, in the, later in the fall, for how to sign up to get your STAR results.
Did you get it first for your?
I can't remember. I can say, if my wife got it on site, that, uh, yeah, maybe she did, but I haven't though.
So we should be sending STAR to every family, and when you go in to find your kids' grades, there should be a link right there that says, interested in your mid-year data. We'll, we'll take this to the DAC, I think the DAC would be the perfect folks to help us put this into a parent perspective, and, uh, we'll report back to the board any changes that.
I'll, I'll find out the exact, the exact process.
My follow-up question to that thing is, why are we even asking parents to sign up for this? Why don't we just send the information to them? If parents want to opt out and they say like, hey, we don't want this information, then let them opt out
They get an opt-in versus an opt-in.
as opposed to them having to opt in.
It's a good idea.
Right.
I see if we can do that.
Unsubscribe.
So a follow-up question for me is, um, when, and, and you kind of mentioned that you're changing things up a little and making it easier to understand. Will that include, like, this is your growth achievement and this is where your child landed? Will it reference how that compares nationally in a way they can understand it? Like, oh, my kid's not achieving at, at the second grade level, but they've been there for six months.
Yes.
But that, that is gonna be communicated to them?
That's correct.
Okay, sounds good.
It is our intent, the, whether it is received is, is hard.
That information is, yeah, there.
But between those communications and parent-teacher conferences and the normal day-to-day interaction that our teachers and our principals have with families, there should be no doubt on, on how our children are doing, um, in their own educational journey. That's our goal, is a knowledgeable household.
Yeah, and, and conferences are the ideal, the ideal place because you can have the conversation about them.
You don't have your second set of achievement results in October, right? You have your fall data.
You have your fall, correct.
And I see where absolutely you're saying the kid, the child is on track, but if they're at Galileo or especially or someplace like that, it's like, well, nothing's really moving. There's no opportunity to communicate that necessarily unless we're really pushing about it, which I'm sure some teachers are.
It's, it's, it's always nice to be getting texts from your DAC chair. You can sign up your child on the STAR test page, is what Marion just texted me. But I like the idea of pushing the information and then asking people to opt out.
Yeah.
I think to Director Odd's question, somebody brought to me the idea of, can our school do spring conferences? And, and, and the question is, is, we really don't do fall and spring conferences? And I guess the standard, the standard is, is we don't like.
Well, I mean, that's why, I mean, it's in the calendar, maybe building two days off for staff to have these, uh, fall conferences, then we would have to build that in the calendar again for the spring.
There are a lot of ways to deliver conferences that don't mean that you don't have to have a school day to do it.
Two days.
I think my, my experience from a few years ago was, if you need the spring conference, that's an opportunity. That that was an option, believe it or not.
We, we used to have them, uh, twice a year, and that was important because you could have semester courses that, you know, would start in the fall and then it would start again in the spring, and you'd only talk to the parents in the fall, you wouldn't talk to the springtime parents.
Never meet those parents.
Right, well, and then, you know, that brings up, you know, the conference issue is, is a great idea to have conversations with parents. The problem with that is that, I don't wanna say most because it's not true, but the parents that come to conferences are really the parents that don't need to come to conferences. The ones that need to come, don't. So there's, there's gotta be a, an alternative to conferences to get in communication for parents.
We will take that on with the DAC as well, which are multiple ways of how do we communicate our children's progress on their educational journey. That's, that's the gap.
Yep.
Right, and I appreciate your point of, those who are showing up
Yeah.
are probably not necessarily the ones who need the conversation.
And I'll chase down the opt-in.
I was always scared.
Let's look at Dibble's scan.
I mean, the other, the other point is just that, that, that it, it's, it's important that families know, it's important that students know where they're on at the trajectory. And I know, um, a lot of schools are, are making the movement to really make sure that their students have a good understanding of how they're scoring when assessments come out, and what moves they need to make to, you know, and goals to change that. So the families are important, the consistent way across the district of how we communicate that out, which could very well be aligned directly to how the state sends out that, their information, where are you at, you know, on the trajectory, this means your child is this far behind. Um, also, there is some, there is some importance to having school SACS and school communities determine what works best for them. Um, for instance, some schools do, um, uh, math nights, literacy nights, in which they show data as well, right? It's based on the needs of what they need to do for their community, so it's important we keep that in mind when we're thinking about overall district strategy, but also what a school does to meet the needs of their community.
Absolutely.
Okay, and also, uh, to, to land this plane a little bit, so we have some Dibble's data that was by request. So we have to take away their big improvements in kinder reading. One, two, three remain flat, remember, Dibble's not a good predictor for state. So, Dibble's excels at really identifying our lowest ability readers and targeting that with, targeting those students with services to move them into, uh, um, higher, higher ability and higher ranges.
It's only assessing foundational standards, that's it.
Better, it's a better way to put it.
Well, having said that, I see that, but, uh, third grade looks concerning to me.
Third grade is.
From the beginning of the year to the middle of the year, we are going in the backwards direction, so.
And that, and we all know that's, that's an absolutely critical year, that that is very, very hard to make up, uh, after, after grade three, to the point where we're looking at research and looking at our early warning systems and really honing that in, using grade three Dibble's data as an early warning indicator for, for on-track to graduate or not, because the research is so strong there. So that is, that is a big concern, uh, to really get, to shrink that red and yellow, um, to a much greater degree that we need to really focus on.
Yeah, you might not even wait, you might not even wanna wait till third grade, you might wanna consider first and second grade, you know?
They're all very similar.
I mean, what's promising is that kindergarten looks really good in what we did, to your point, that they are starting at the lower level. Uh, kindergarten looks promising, but third grade, back to what.
Oh, no, I was just, they, they're all at least trending a tiny bit in the right direction, but, yes, they're all concerning after kindergarten.
Yeah, third grade, it means looking further at the intervention space, we know those third graders probably carried, they're probably sig- been significantly below for the last few years. You have farther, farther to go at the same time that where they're in a grade that's, they're expected to be reading to learn, they should have already had, they shouldn't be, um, significantly below in foundational skills. So, uh, the inter- the intervention that you do at the same time, it, it's trickier because they have multiple years of being behind. So that is the positive. If we can shrink the gap earlier, they're prepared when they go to kinder and they're not, and teachers aren't trying to, to fill those gaps at the same time.
So, thank you, now I do get to pass it off? Um, but I just came across a quote that I just love, that I wanna share, and I think it was, I think, uh, fits this. And it is, uh, the grass is greener where we water it. It's not rocket science, right? It is what we focus on, what we dedicate resources to, what we watch, monitor, and then, and then talk about improving is where we see improvement. And so I think it's, I think it's encouraging, but man, we cannot take our foot off this pedal. We cannot have that inflection downward. Too important to continue this trajectory up and continue this into, uh, state assessment season in April. So our, our spring test will be, um, the first week in, in April, um, and then we move into CMAS testing in mid-April, and, uh, then we, uh, just continue to do good work. So, ba- the actions based on the data, I'll hand it over to Chief Oscevedo. Is there any other, other questions on the data portion?
Um, I have a quick question, you may not have this information, I don't know why you would, but do we have any sense for what mid-year results are looking like for neighboring districts?
We don't, because they don't be, we don't have a common sharing, and it's also not all neighboring districts use the same assessment system.
Makes sense, I was just curious.
Yeah, so across district, we can only compare CMAS.
Anecdotally, though, of the El Paso County districts, we were the one that had an increase in enrollment as those numbers were, uh, codified as official today. We did lose out to D forty-nine, but we know, you know, they're just building houses out there like gangbusters. Uh, they were a zero in D twenty and we were a plus fifteen in District Eleven. So, as a caveat, once again, we beat District Twenty, which is not something we normally say out loud. So we're excited for that. Our next goal is District Twenty is the tenth largest district by enrollment in the state, and we'd like to dethrone them in the next couple of years, get some of our kids back again, which will be directly correlated to achievement.
Right, it will be.
Can I ask one more question, I'm sorry?
Sure, yeah, that's fine.
You men- you mentioned this for one single school, I'm thinking about the system as a whole. Are demographics stable enough from year to year for those comparisons? Um, or is that something we need to be thinking about when we're interpreting data across the entire system?
Because I'm not understanding the question completely, so.
So you, you said that for one school, like, the breakdown of minority versus free reduced lunch versus whatever is stable enough to allow for a good comparison? If I zoom out and think about the entire system of D eleven with, you know, the increased enrollment, are the demographics this year similar enough to previous years in order for those comparisons to be straightforward? Or is that something we have to take into account?
I see, yes, yeah, they're stable enough.
Okay.
Can the answer get as wide?
Yes, they are stable enough for comparison.
We do, as the rest of state, continue to see great, greater increases in our, um, ELL population, multilingual learners. Uh, so adjusted actions based on the data. I don't know if you remember our first continuous improvement cycle meeting together, um, under Superintendent Gall. Uh, last year, we went into the action steps. We, like our schools, expect to be checking in on how we're doing with our action steps and adjusting. Um, when we had those at that incredibly long meeting, we went through all of the action steps and updated where we are on the progress. So we have that, and we've done that, and we know that we have, um, the action steps we committed to, that we are, um, implementing. Um, we are only gonna, uh, talk, um, a little bit about, um, how are we making adjustments based on the data? Um, so that's important to know. And it's also important to know that each of our schools at this point in time have also done their next round of check-ins um, to progress monitor their strategic plans as well. So we're living that as a system in D eleven. Um, this is our superintendent.
I already said it, so.
It's right here.
I said it twice in the beginning.
Yes, which.
I think it's ingrained in our brains by now.
It's ingrained, and are we gonna, did you have Chris say it too?
She said it earlier in Executive Cabinet, it's my best call and response.
Great, awesome, yes. Um, all right, and it's a reminder, you know, when you were asking, we, we are seeing right now, it's, uh, we know we have, we have a lot more work to do. Um, but it is, it is pretty significant to be at this point in the year, um, to, uh, with our growth median percentiles where they're at, they are higher than where we ended the year according to CMAS, um, in terms of MGP's. You can double-check me on that, that I'm almost a hundred percent sure I'm right on that. Um, and, um, and, uh, from the fall, we maintained from spring to fall pretty much within a tenth to six-tenth of a point, um, uh, where we left at the end of the spring in STAR. And right now, at this point in mid-year, we've made the, um, the amount of achievement growth that we made all year last year. So the trajectory is right, um, we wanna continue to increase that trajectory. And so your quote about the, the, uh, the grass gets greener where it's watered, who is that attributed to?
I don't know.
Author unknown.
It's to them.
Is, uh, it's important because, uh, second semester, it's really important that we keep the focus and that we keep the intensity and maybe even increase it so that we can have the type of growth that we wanna have to, um, to really, um, make even greater movement that we did last year as we're implementing more and more. Um, and I, I just came off of a teacher forum, I apologize, that's why I was late, um, over at Keller where they're making great gains and implementing everything, um, that we've asked of you. It's very important that our, um, schools, our teachers, our principals are working really hard. Um, this is, uh, this is a reminder, we, best-first instruction, we, um- Um, this is a, this is a reminder, we, best first instruction, we um, we use the instructional core um, to focus our work on best first instruction. And so we focus on the student content and teacher. Student engagement, content ensuring that all students are provided with grade level and beyond rigorous content um, and that uh, that instructional practice is um, solid. We're supporting um, our teachers with instructional practice with purposeful, standards-based planning.
Before you go on, I have a question, but I'm not sure this is the right spot for it, so. Tutoring?
Yes.
Is this the right spot to ask that question?
Sure, what's the, what's the question?
Um, how much tutoring is actually being used to get the K through third grade kids to mastery? Is there money to support that and is it being used?
Yes, we are, we are do, we do have tutoring. And we have district-level tutoring resources um, um, in mathematics and literacy. Uh, we have, we work with outcomes-based contracting with tutor, with air tutors in mathematics um, at identified schools. We, um, and um, uh, Children's Literacy Center um, for tutoring um, uh, in um, specific places. That's a district-supported piece. Um, and then we also have um, individual funding that we've given to schools to provide uh, their own uh, tutoring um, and programs as well.
And we're normally overspent on the last. The, the need exceeds our ability to resource.
Oh, okay.
Um, getting back to, so um, our focus, when you were asked to attribute the movement, there's lots of things happening, but it's also the plan that was put in place as an overall district. So the plan, this is a visual of the plan. In best first instruction, we've worked to um, create coherence in what we say is tier-one instruction, um, grade-level instruction. And so the left-hand side you see there, that's a focus on, on the red D eleven systems um, on the base of that circle. And then the other space is content-specific professional learning. In terms of the focus on systems in D eleven, that's with our professional learning model, including cascading professional learning um, in literacy and mathematics. That is our one-plan continuous improvement cycles, that's what I was talking about, having solid, all the work that we did to create with our um, one-plan symposium, our leadership symposium, and our strategic plans at the school level, at the district level, into the check-ins, I was just describing that we just had our, um, at least our second one that occurred and what we're doing now with our continuous improvement plan cycles. And that system of accountability and support. The biggest part of that, our area network model, um, and the adjustments we've made in that to make sure that resources are getting to our schools. Um, and also how we're prioritizing and tiering for our priority schools with special systems, including um, uh, being able to be part of UVA, um, uh, being able to be part of IE um, and other more um, specific professional experiences there.
Yeah, before you go on.
Yes.
Would you go ahead and back to cascading professional development and define cascading?
Uh, cascading, so we have a model uh, where um, this would be tier everybody gets. So uh, if you, um, our principals at K twelve meetings um, in literacy get uh, get professional learning. Um, our TLCs get a deeper level of that learning and more of it based on the, uh, their coaching that they need to do within schools and, and the providing of professional learning so that they're able to do that within their schools, so that teachers get it um, through that.
So it's no longer an option whether or not principals get to, or, or, it's no longer an option that principals get to pick and choose which um, professional learning that's being expected of their um, TLCs and whoever else is in charge of delivering content. There was a time when it was a choice. And what I'm hearing is, is that it's now aligned so that principals have a concept and understanding that, of what's being provided to staff in their buildings, so that there's no disconnect.
Exactly. No disconnect. We have to, you know, we have to have a base where we all um, have similar knowledge and um, what to expect with implementation as an overall system so that it leads to actions um, that will actually help, have a smooth needle.
Gotcha.
Um, it doesn't mean that there, that there's not things that are very specific within schools' plans to the needs of their, of their schools, but as a district, we have to have things, we have, we are an overall district learning community.
So there is or there isn't a cascading effect from middle school to high school? Do those teachers, the high school teachers and the middle school teachers, by content area, they have an ability to meet?
Um, there, there is, uh, there are some things um, in place, but there's not, like, that's an area, I think you brought this up previously. And I, that was an area I think like we could get even deeper in and better in.
So, so there are now through the K twelve vertical that we've established with the area model, there are examples of that happening. Any of the area supes wanna bring up an example of, I know a couple of schools where like North kids are attending Palmer classes or Doherty kids, uh, I just got an example, oh, Homes kids are going to Coronado, and of course, there is Darren. And so there's a, there's a sharing of both resource of student access as well as that curriculum and that instructional strategy coming down into Homes from Coronado. What was it, Spanish and what else was the other class?
Algebra.
What?
Uh, it's an algebra class.
Right.
Or, I'm sorry, it's geometry.
Geometry, thank you, cause algebra is already happening there at Homes. So more of that to come. Um, we, I think, uh, do we have a what we're gonna do differently?
Yeah, yeah. So the other um, part is that content-specific professional learning in mathematics, literacy, which we talked about before, and secondary content and competency work. Um, so, do you wanna talk about this first, Mike?
Uh, I think we've talked a lot about this, just this, these, these different levels of which the area network model can tier supports. Um, and what I was just gonna opine on is, is now that we have data, instead of also having cascading observation, we wanna have direct action. Everything we're seeking to do as a district is how do we get the resources close to the classroom as possible? So if an area superintendent is working with David and the curriculum and instruction team and sees whether it was they didn't put the data in, or they actually didn't understand what they taught, or they have the highest percentage of kids that are three years behind, which means it's impossible for them to implement it, we don't wanna have a cascading observation or voyeurism to that crash. What we wanna then say is, how do we get tier-level supports directly into that classroom? Now, yes, the principal might need some more supports, and yes, the area or the instructional coach might need it, but we have to stop just watching what we know not happening, even to the special population slide that we see. We see that certain populations and ethnicities are not achieving. So the question should be, where is a robust ELL plan for the district? We know it's a growing minority subset, we know that we're not properly servicing those kids. And so that relationship with the board should be, we expect to see an increase of attention or a different program of how you're gonna provide those supports. Just watching it and reporting on it is not gonna get us there. And so as an actionable group, the changes that we've seen in Ed Insights is that Insights has gone from rhetorical to present into predictive. And so now we're in a space based upon just those modules that we're doing for Eureka. I can ask David, if I have three math classrooms that I need to go to, to help bring in uh, some instructional supports, where should they be? And he can say, based upon what I saw over the last four modules, you should go to those three classrooms. That gets us to a space where we can actually get to those upper sixties and seventies of growth to really deliver on achievement. Otherwise, we end up all, all just observational into knowing, oh yeah, well, we knew that was gonna happen. And so the idea is to use data, and I appreciate that the whole team was just doing data-driven instruction um, through the UVA relationship. The idea of data is actually just to inform how do you properly align your resources. We are always going to be a resource-constrained sector. There's never enough money in public education. But again, it's impossible to think with four hundred-plus million dollars, you can't tackle any one of these things. You can, you just have to commit to it. And this data that we're getting now and getting everybody on a basic same page, which is, this is the math curriculum, you're expected to use it in some way to return this outcome for a student. And then if the investigations, we go in there and they say, I hate Eureka math. Okay, now let's talk about that. Now, I'm not saying anybody says that, but that's no longer acceptable. You can't just say, I'm not gonna use the resource of which the district supplies, because we have limited resources. And so we wanna make everybody happy, but we have to put some guardrails out there that say, these are the tools that we have. You can improve on these tools, but if you choose to not use the tool, then you better be beating the numbers that David's putting up here right now. And if you are, then we probably have something to learn from that as well, which maybe means it's not the right curriculum. But you can't tell me it's not the right curriculum when you're not meeting the numbers that's above average up there. So our focus is just continually getting more and more resources as close to the classroom as possible. Everybody should know a student, everybody should know a teacher, everybody should have a favorite subject, everybody should be thinking about what happens in the classroom every day.
And again, that falls in the system of um, support and account, accountability. Okay, so um, the areas, again, these are adjusted action steps. They're under each of the main sub areas that we're working on that I just went over on the, that red side. So in terms of the one-plan continuous improvement cycles, um, and specifically uh, in our um, academics department and teaching and learning department, each divi- uh, department has aligned their um, strategic plans um, to these areas. So they may have other things that are outside of it, but the areas that are within best first instruction, they've aligned plans um, to tailor their work to meet the goals. So just like we're asking schools to do, our departments are doing them as well. We'll participate in a continuous and learning uh, cycle check-in meeting at our next academics leadership team meeting. Um, so uh, that, that we've adjusted. Um, dyslexia um, is an, a huge um, area we've been focusing on with all of our, our sites. Um, and um, we're ensuring that um, that staff and other intervention and support staff are part of those one-plan um, support check-ins where we're reviewing data. So we're looking at kinder, third-grade data on DIBELS, right? We know how to adjust using the resources um, within the building that can support that need. Um, data dashboard, we worked really hard, David's team um, uh, and the group um, to pull together that data dashboard. It is not perfect, but it's, so it's, it's like to be able to see um, in real time, not only STAR, so where we're at grade level-wise, but also with, um, where we're at real time with standards um, within units of study um, is um, great. We just came off of a conversation with area superintendents. Um, and um, Dr. Colicky, we're talking about next steps based on the learning that we all participated in um, to make the dashboard and really having a one-page um, quick look at assessments that schools could use as, can use as a tool when they're going over these interim data sources. Um, we also, sorry I didn't highlight it there, but we talked about this before. We've got at K twelve meetings, when we do our continuous improvement cycles, so remember from the snow day, we didn't have our K twelve meeting yesterday, but we have our, we've already rescheduled it for this coming Tuesday. You should have all gotten an invite. That will be just the continuous improvement cycle piece. We'll go into greater depth in terms of uh, the data slides, because exactly what um, Superintendent Gall was talking about with, we wanna look at trends, what does that mean for uh, what we're, you know, for the district, but also for what your school um, would want to be focusing on? Uh, that's, that's um, that's, that's what we're, I'm doing there. And so as part of that, we'll talk about the student, the number of students that we identified to meet the year-end target, our very ambitious targets um, that we set as a district that Dr. Colicky um, put together for us. We'll see where are we at on that trajectory? What are the number of students that have already moved in those areas as a district right now at this point in time? And how many more does that mean for the rest of the district to hit our ambitious target? And then they'll go into um, their s- uh, smaller facilitated groups um, and look at, and so think about, what does that mean for the data systems that I have within my building? And what does that mean for where I am at? Um, and Dr. Colicky um, is gonna provide area superintendents and schools where, 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 where have we met um, with the number of students you need in terms of that target, um, in each school's target and the overall district goal. Um, with cascading professional learning, um, uh, what we've included, what we've adjusted to that one is including the aligned observation look-for tools. So we've had that in mathematics. Um, the other part that we're, that we're, that we were gonna be, that we missed because of a snow day that we've already rescheduled, we're extending um, the next K twelve meeting and we'll go deeper in. They've already been introduced to in a, a resource for look-for's for literacy, but we'll go deeper into that resource um, at that meeting. Um, when, we're, we also, um, PLCs, we wanna, we wanna get, um, we wanna provide more support on um, using that, using the PLC time for um, looking at data and going through a data protocol related to um, Director Happily, the uh, reteach, right? Looking at data, how are you gonna reteach, right? So, and we just again finished uh, getting um, instruction and different protocols as a district team. Um, we talked just today about different things that we're gonna do. Um, my team will be tasked with like, what's an original, uh, what's the rollout gonna look like? What, what are possibilities for this um, semester? Um, area superintendents are gonna look at, where are we gonna go deeper, what schools make the most sense to, who wanna talk to about that? Um, Dr. Colicky is looking at, how am I gonna adjust the data sources to be able to support that in, in alignment with data coaches, so more, more to come there. Um, our TLC coaching model, um, we'll con, uh, we have plans to align that. Um, uh, and um, continued work in uh, planning for learning in the block schedule. We've got um, more work to come there. And then also um, with a pilot of K two resources. So we talked about um, that with the mid-year budget request. Um, and that, um, that is scoped out and um, underway.
So we're gonna hear more about this K two comprehensive literacy curriculum?
Um, a pilot, so like we're doing work there right now in second semester. So I think by um, midway through the semester or end of semester, we'd have more information to share there.
Okay. That's different than others?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And then um, system of support and accountability, that last column, um, uh, the area superintendents continue to work with um, teams um, and align uh, facilitator teams and data coaches uh, to adjust supports. Um, I think we're getting even better at that with the sect one, one with monthly area support meetings where the executive director of CNI um, with area superintendents align the use of TOSSAs, area instructional coaches, data coaches, and any facilitator supports based on what we're seeing. Um, and uh, the, the needs of the schools and what they're asking. Um, we're, we're working to focus even more on what the school, the goals of the schools are coming out of those check-ins and how to support the work of the instructional leadership team. Um, and so those are the three main areas and those are the three, uh, or those are the main ways we've adjusted our overall action steps as a district.
Yeah, I think if, if folks join the K twelve meetings, you'll see this in action and you'll also be able to engage with the principals at the differentiated way they're able to implement a lot of these things. Um, this time, last year, we were studying why is the main takeaway from our one plan that schools aren't able to implement PLCs? We've overcome that hump and now we're talking about how to get what we need out of the PLC. And so there's just a real acceleration happening at the school level that actually has central office in a different conundrum. Instead of telling people what to do, we're now chasing principals to find out what are the supports that they need. Because they've overcome that main obstacle of how do they get data-driven instruction and decision-making into their building? Is it at Swigert that we have the um, the data wall, Jeanette built?
Yes.
Is that right, yeah?
Yes.
So you go into Swigert and you walk by what used to be a break or a staff planning room and data exists for every student on the wall by learning objective. And that's powerful for folks to actually have to swim in that data and understand what is or isn't happening. A red column is a lot different than a red row. And uh, the, the team there has surrounded themselves on it, so. Um, we wanna pause here for academic questions before we go to behavior, if there are any more.
Yes, uh, let's open it up uh, for some questions on the data that has been presented. I know that we asked a lot of questions. I know that we asked a lot of questions as we went through, so let's try to keep the questions as successful.
So just two slides back.
Oh yeah.
Three columns. Uh, on the left there, you mentioned the data dashboard.
Yes.
And I, I kinda pair that with system support and accountability.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
School accountability committees, are they able to access the data dashboard as well? Or for each school? I mean, is, I hope that's part, that's part of what SACs usually do is have the conversation about monitoring progress.
Is there any privacy issues in SACs?
That's able to drill down to identifiable information, so.
They wouldn't be able to, yeah, right? Like they wouldn't be able to access it, but they, but what would be able to happen as we're like getting better with how we're, we've rolled out the continuous improvement cycle? Just like I was talking about, it's happening in schools, the check-ins happen regularly, that they would be having that same sort of process happening within, within, with, with SACs or with SAC membership, right? So they would hear data, but the level to which they would need, they don't need that type of access because they don't need to drill down in a way a principal would or an area superintendent or myself.
Okay, that makes sense. Yeah, student level, absolutely not. But the, the higher level, because you're also talking, you know, data.
Yeah.
It's created with all those people who have such great resources to educate a SAC, as long as you can keep it at the higher level.
They should be involved in that continuous improvement cycle, right? Like what's the data and what are next steps? How are we doing on our, our school strategic plan, our One Plan? Yeah.
And just to follow up, on this particular page, there are so many abbreviations. And I think I know most of them, but I'm not going to make an assumption on AIC, is it academic?
Area instructional coach.
Area instructional.
Area, okay, I was thinking academic. And then I, I think just for anybody listening, PL is professional learning, ILT instructional leadership team.
Sorry, we'll fix that for next time.
Well, that's fine. Maybe, maybe in the appendix.
Just put a star.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Any other questions? Director Chukensin, I'll come to you. And then we can go around in a circle. You're good. Director Bankus, do you have any questions? Director Carey?
Nothing.
Okay, I will, if you can just go back to the priority improvement turnaround schools. I just wanted quickly ask a question based on this. I know that we shared, yeah, any one of those slides is good. Shared numbers on these priority improvement turnaround schools. There are nine schools at this time. One of the goals was Superintendent Gall was to reduce this number nine to half of this. Based on the numbers that we have at this point in time of the year, are we confident that we can cut this nine schools to four or five at the end?
We feel that we are on track, if not exceeding that. Autobahn is no longer on that list. We just added and included. They were cleaned up in a, in a data correction by CDE and Columbia. So it's seven schools going to three and a half. So we'll go down to three. But we feel that these numbers are giving us the predictive growth that if you wanna play the SPF game, that we think that they're on the right track. The goal here is, as to the other comments, is to get consistent growth that turns into achievement.
Yep.
A measure of that is the state's SPF, which many things feed into.
The concern to me, based on the data that is there, the two schools that stand out to me to some extent. I mean, it's both on those slide, there Galileo and Columbia, those are the ones that are below fifty as far as NGP goes. Mitchell is promising, hopefully we can at the end of the year pull Mitchell out of priority improvement this year. So they can come out of that, even though it may take two years in a row before they come out of the clock, the state clock, hopefully we can get. But Galileo and Columbia are the two ones that stand out to me here. And the data that Dr. Colicky presented to the accreditation committee, I was able to look at that from the drop box out there. The schools that stand out to me from last year that we pulled up two or three levels that are to some extent concerning to me and I want to share that to you so that we can. Hopefully these schools don't slip back. Adams is a concern to me. We pulled them up two levels to performance. Looks like the NGP numbers this year are concerning to, they're not that. So while we try to pull these schools up on a priority improvement, we just don't want schools that are in performance or improvement to slide back down. Adams is a concern to me. And then West Middle School, which we are going to talk about in the GMP program. Both their NGP in ELA and math are well below fifty percent out there. So that's a school that stands out to me. Galileo, we already talked about in the thing out there. So the other schools, schools, if I'm talking about, you know, schools that can slip back, schools such as Martinez, Pendros, Carver, they all pulled up from priority improvement and to improvement or performance are showing steady stability and success. So hopefully we are able to sustain that out there in those schools. And Autobahn looked fairly promising out there. Quinn is doing a great job, so shout out to it. And Palmer, it was only because of participation that they went down. So we can hopefully make sure that participation is stronger for Palmer at this point in time. Those are the numbers that stood out to me. And at some point in time, there was an article in the Gazette, I think a couple of days back, that I looked at graduation rates, which talked about the graduation rates. It would be, maybe this is a conversation for the board retreat that do we want to put a stake in the ground as far as graduation?
I can't hear you. Do we want to?
Put a stake in the ground as far as graduation rates goes, that we want to improve graduation rates in the district. That it's at seventy percent approximately at this point in time. Do we want to give specific directives to the superintendent that we need to improve graduation rates? And there are a lot of things attached with that, including attendance, discipline, making classroom instruction engaging so our students are present in the classrooms.
And supporting families at home by sending it, sending somebody out.
Yeah, and I think Director Heffley says this all the time, that we expect a lot of our teachers and that they have to provide best-first instruction in the classroom. But we need support from parents. Parents have to have an integral part in some capacity in making sure students are present in the classroom. So we can go and pick them up from.
And maybe what we can also talk when we have that conversation is, it's hard to get parents in for chronically absent students. Then maybe we should be going out. And I don't mean teachers going out, I mean support systems in place that allows us the opportunity. And we could partner with other community services to partner to, to go to homes or to meet where we are most likely to, to find parents. So that's a conversation for another time.
And to that point, we should find out what we're already doing. Because we might be doing that already, right? But I agree, graduation is a concern.
Yeah, and then overall, to me, elementary school, most of them looks like they are trending in the right direction and the growth and everything. We are still struggling at the secondary school level in terms of median growth percentile, both that middle school and the high school.
There, there are areas to celebrate. We talk a lot about elementary schools. It didn't come up in here, but the Odyssey numbers shouldn't be shocking to anybody. If you set a high expectation that says we're going to deliver college-level rigor of which you will get credit for, all types of students will attend and will commit to that work. I mean, those, those growth numbers and their achievement numbers are top of the line. Now, how do we change the narrative of we ought to be bursting at the seams at Odyssey? We're not, right? We're meeting our enrollment numbers, but how are we not growing in our most successful high school? In a place where choice exists and children are achieving? And that is probably the singular school of which we have adapted to this model of find your excellence through experience. Because Odyssey also happens to be the highest participant in our CTE and pathway programs. And our students are achieving. So how do we break down the paradigms that exist in our existing comprehensive high schools and the way that our community has received them over years to see that giving kids an expansive opportunity and different ways to demonstrate and explore is a pathway for them to show both growth and achievement? And the work at Mitchell should not go unnoted as well. And a tremendous amount of work being done by a staff that is short-staffed and constantly under pressure to perform, being on the watch there, so.
And thank you, thank you for all the area superintendents that are out there. Please carry that message to the principals too, that you guys have put in a lot of work at looking at this data which is green to a large extent out there. It's very promising. That requires a lot of work from you guys and the message to link out to our staff. This is not because maybe we are aligning resources to closer to the classrooms, but this is all because of the hard work put in by teachers in the classrooms. And I don't want that message. Sometimes it's like, oh, we don't appreciate teachers. This board is all about appreciating teachers and we are thankful for the work that they have put in to turn around those numbers. With the caveat, we are at the halfway point of the game, that we do want to finish strong at the end of the year. That's, after all, that's kind of what you'll end up marrying at the end of the year. Back, back to you for the.
Chris, you wanna come forward?
Slide for discipline.
There was a request for some behavior data. We don't normally report behavior data as mid-year. Matter of fact, we haven't really reported behavior data writ large. It's normally come forward anecdotally through five essentials and or through individual school areas of concern. So I asked Chris to come forward and I'll let Tamara and Chris go through the slides here. But this is very raw data of which our goal is to hear, what does the board want to see more regularly? That we've kinda come, the mid-year data is much like last year's end-of-year data, which was, you know, an evolution from the first mid-year data. So we're, we've gotten feedback from the board on what's working and what's not working there. As you see the way that we collect data on discipline as a district, what works for you, what doesn't work, what do you need more of or less of? We'd love to be able to set that baseline in the end-of-year data this year. So we have more apples-to-apples comparison. A lot of this is dependent upon individual schools and how it is that they record data. Because again, there's not a mandate for what should or shouldn't be recorded. A, and then an individual event could be recorded differently in ten different schools. Chris?
Board, good to see you. Feel free to get your food, water. The data is coming from our Power BI dashboard. So kind of a segue from the last presentation. That has been a request of mine is to make sure that as we move forward into any new dashboard, that we're thinking through the attendance and discipline needs so that it's aligned and easily accessible for teachers. So know that the data is both from what we currently have and kinda how it syncs with Power School SIS. So that's where it's coming from. The data that we have is comparing first semester last year to first semester this year. And then as Superintendent Gall mentioned, it does depend on the practices that are happening within the school. So if school administrators are documenting everything, then that's getting compared to schools maybe that other schools are not documenting as thoroughly or extensively as compared to other schools. What defines discipline is really that administrative. You guys as the board delegate that authority to school building administrators. And so it's really principals, when they decide that behavioral warrants consequences or discipline, that's what they should be documenting and that's what we're seeing here. So there's other classroom behaviors that aren't included in this, that's kind of looked through a different lens. But this is strictly based off of administrative decisions to administer discipline or consequences to students based off of actions. One of the specific requests was regarding policy JKBA. And so there's a little bit of background on teacher removals. I'm not gonna read through all of it. There should be a slide at the end that, that calls that out. But it is in our policy that teachers do have that authority to remove students from their classroom. And essentially if that happens three times with administrator approval, that could result in a through the rest of the quarter removal of that classroom. And so that's the, the essence of what the policy states. And we'll get to that in a little bit. So the data that is shared, looking at the big picture summary is that it's very.
Before you, before you go on, would you go to the last slide? So when you say five schools in total have used this practice, does that mean that after three incidences that they have?
Some students, yeah, and there's some data at the end that, that will give you the specific numbers. Big picture, we are very similar to where we were last year. The data tool that we're using and pulling is from Power BI. There are some calculations kind of in the programming backside of how it pulls the information that we're aware of and, and we're trying to work through and work on. But it, it is not a hundred percent pulling students accurately who have moved schools. So if a student has an incident and they move schools, it wasn't pulling that in, in the most accurate way. So that's something that we are trying to work on and trying to address. But something that I wanna call out for you guys to know that there's a little bit of discrepancy in what the data looks like from, primarily from last year. So thinking through students that moved from fifth grade, sixth grade, ninth grade to tenth, I'm sorry, eighth to ninth grade. And then any student that may have left the district. Those are the students that might have been pulling it not as accurately as, as compared to.
But the shapes of the bars and the lines are almost identical.
Correct, yes. And, and with that, if you look at the, the comparison, they are very, very similar across the board as we progress.
Can I, can I note the incidents by action on the two sides here of the bar graph? The top two are flipped, so we have other and out-of-school suspensions from last year. And this year, out-of-school suspensions is top and other. So that was, that took me a moment, so I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, they're, they're reported by frequency and not by category.
Yes. Agreed. And so that when people are comparing, they might go, oh, look fourteen sixty-two to fifteen twenty-two. It's like, no, 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 that's all crisscross. So just, if nobody noticed that, there you go.
Thank you.
So in total incidents, am I reading this right? Last year, we've already exceeded last, the full year and we, we're all.
Last year, we're comparing last fall.
Okay.
So that is just last fall to this fall. So we're very similar to where we were. Similar time period.
And we do believe that in the evolution or the migration of Power School, that schools are using the tool more. So we're not, we're not quite at a conclusion point or to be able to make a recommendation to the board that says we actually believe we have more incidences twenty-two eighty-one to nineteen thirty-seven than we did last year. We may just have more reporting. Can you go to the school level slide? Is that the next one? That one. So we redacted the schools on here to show you that one high school has a hundred and eighteen reported incidences. This is last year's data. And compared to another high school of similar size that has forty-six, of which the performance of those two high schools is nearly identical. And so one has twice the rate of incident reporting because they have a tighter way that they choose to engage with their students and then hold them accountable to that. But the, those two schools from almost every other data point that we have are nearly interchangeable. And yet one could look at the data and go, oh my God, what's going on at a hundred and eighteen incidences? That place is out of control. As compared to the number, there's one of the number twos or number fours down on the right over there is one of our highest performing elementary schools. That's a Title I school. So it is, a lot of this is about the way that we ask our principals to develop culture of their building and then the climate to be the rigor in the classroom. And how that comes to bear through incidences is what we're here to talk about. Next week's program spotlight will be our social-emotional cognitive programming at elementary school. We're gonna bring examples of capturing kids' hearts and random, and random acts of kindness. So we can show you that schools are making specific choices to make sure that behaviors are not disrupting their ability to get to instruction. But the number alone can be both an indicator, yeah, I'm not sure if it's leading or lagging is where I'm starting.
And one note of this image that you're seeing is actually for students that have four or more incidences documented. So we're looking at a school that has a hundred and eighteen students with four or more incidents documented for a student. So I just wanted to clarify that as we look through.
On that note, and with the next slide, I have no way of knowing that. I look at this and I'm like, what is this slide? And so I wrote myself a note to ask, and you have provided that information. If you could go back in for posterity, repost this maybe on Board Talks. I mean, that would be my request.
Yeah.
And just in the gray box, but.
I didn't read it that way either.
School variability, you know, schools redacted of, of this with the title. I just, this means nothing to me, in other words.
Is there a concern in putting the school's name at the bottom of it?
Well, I wanted people to be able to see, don't, so this has always been the challenge when the board asked initially for behavior to be a metric. We can curtail behavior and get nowhere near the ends of this district's goal, which is to educate children. We can manage behavior all day long, we can have fifty different locations that are nothing but discipline on codes of conduct. The reason that we redacted this data is you would be very surprised on who has spikes and who does not. It does not follow the logic of which you think it does. It isn't the poorest school, it isn't the school with the highest ethnicity, it isn't the school with the lowest performance, it isn't the school with the newest principal or the oldest principal. It is a scattergram of right now, our model is we leave this for building leaders to manage. And they are managing it in a way, I think it's important that this comes on the backend of the mid-year data, that is showing that we are showing the strongest academic growth that the district has seen in years. So are there areas of concern in individual classrooms? I wanna keep the model open, is if you get them, you bring them to the administration, we will make sure that that class is properly resourced to correct that problem if it hasn't been corrected already. I think we've demonstrated that we'll do that. But the fear is an edict that says we need to see a ten percent decrease in the number of incidents. We will chase incidents, but now I've got people running around seeing if kids got hoodies on, not understanding whether or not the kid actually learned. Yes, we need rules in schools and I am the harshest of I thought I would ever be. If you break the law on narcotics or violence, I will expel you, period, dot. I believe that every child that does that is a manifestation of something that's happened to them in their life. I just can't have the school be unsafe for me to figure that out. But before Christmas, I said, no more middle schools' expulsions that are not breaking the law. I can't expel a thirteen-year-old because he keeps telling a teacher, go stick it up your you-know-what because I don't wanna take my earbuds out. That's a problem we can solve. But if a student brings narcotics or firearms or assaults another student that they're arrested, now I've crossed over a line, we're not safe anymore. And the schools all know that. You wanna go through some more data?
I think the important takeaway off of this slide is your comment that says the academic achievement for both a hundred and eighteen and forty-six incidences are pretty level. Because you're right, it's counterintuitive to say, you have so many discipline referrals coming to your front office, how are you able to get anything else done? And yet, they are getting it done.
And in some cases, they need extra resources. We did strategic staffing allocation this year, of which about twenty to twenty-five percent of our schools ask for behavior support by hiring a dean of students. That's worked for those schools. I don't anticipate that they would wanna spend that FTE the same way three years from now because they changed the culture of the building. And so the culture of our buildings, we feel, we talked about this again this morning with the area superintendents and executive cabinet, we feel that the culture of the building is in a positive direction. It doesn't mean that there aren't anomalies and specific incidences, but we have supports for them and we're directing those supports to where they need to go. And so again, as you get those examples, please bring them to us, but let's try not to draw conclusions to them because then we end up chasing the wrong metric. And then if the metric goes in another direction, because we analyze this stuff, then we'll be the first to say that's a building that needs a whole different strategy. Because sometimes, you know, it only takes a couple of kids before you lose a whole building, right? A couple of kids can turn a whole building and we've been very strong on it, I've written letters to the community. Help us understand why your child thinks it's okay to make a life-threatening statement on social media. And then don't discount it when I suspend them for it. And then those families are still having to meet me on reintegration. I get it, it's a different world, the kid doesn't really mean it, I've met every one of those families. Not one of those kids that I look in the eye and be like, yeah, that kid really means it, they're really gonna kill them after school. But we have to educate our population that says, that's just unacceptable because we have to provide that. I talked to Dan Koschel on K R D O once a month and he always asks me a question when I start on the radio show. And last week he asked me, did you guys get any of those bomb threats that they got out in eastern Colorado? That closed schools last week because people called up random districts in eastern Colorado and said, I'm gonna blow your school up. And I said, fortunately, we have a tight enough network that they called us and on the front range and said, hey, these are all coming and they're not credible. And I don't even know if we ever got the call or not, but other people did and they didn't close school for it. But that's the risk, is if we just chase the behavior, then we're not focused on what the deliverable is.
And having said that, I can, I support not identifying schools. That when we take a look at this and we see trends variable as they are, that as a system, as a school district, then we're aware of them, you at your level, you at your level over there and you obviously, and can be specific about that. I think identifying schools sends the wrong message.
Did I?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Did I misunderstand this earlier or did you say that?
On that slide.
There's a great deal of latitude for building principals for how they want to collect and report data of this nature?
Yes, I said that, yeah. I said that the definition of detrimental behavior is very subjective.
So the two good, best examples detrimental behavior and other violations of code of conduct. I know from my own experience as principal, I know I made mistakes and I classified things in one category or the other. Many of the others call it out pretty explicitly when you have those where, so the other violations, we should be coding it as skipping, minor stealing of items from other students, even staff members. Some of those lower-level disrespect and subordination could fall under there. The detrimental behavior is really around safety and it can include making threats, it can include facsimile of a weapon. And so that's not called out in a weapons violation because it's not an actual dangerous weapon of any sort. But it's, so those are the two that end up having the most misappropriated documentation.
Is the number of incidents regardless of classification something where building principals, there would be deviations in how they think about recording those numbers? Because I guess what I'm trying to get at is, you mentioned if you go down one slide to, you know, your redacted list of schools, that there's not really a consistent or clear trend. I'm just wondering if some of that is just due to the nature of the data collection.
I think there's, I think there's some confusion as in terms of CD has required certain reporting elements at the end of the year. This calendar year, they're changing what they're asking us for, it's more of raw data for any student that has received. Discipline in past, they were more looking for buckets. So students who, number of students that received in-school, number of students that received out-of-school, expulsions, those types of things in it, it kind of clouded the waters for administrators, I believe, in terms of we would use language like, is that state reportable? And really what state reportable now, it's clear, if an administrator does an action, does consequences, and that could even be if you're documenting a call home, that could be the consequence and that's okay. State law is very clear around really trying to keep kids in school. Being restorative, making sure that we're teaching them or educating them, we are keeping them in school as much as we can. And so it's really around if a administrator does an action, simple call home is the consequence, that should and would be reported to the state versus in past years, it was a bucket of in-school, out-of-school, expulsions, those kinds of things. So it has changed in what they're requesting, but I think we'll make, on our and on the district's end, it'll make it clear in terms of what we're doing and sending off and it'll be just more consistent.
Chris, is the discipline plan systematic, so level one, level two, level three, are we still using now?
That, that has changed.
That has changed, so what is it now?
We have a matrix and so there's the student handbook that's on the policies and then there's a matrix that has been shared with since twenty, two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year was created and has been shared and that's the current going practices. But it provides, if you look at other districts, we all have a matrix of some sort and it's really just trying to provide parameters, but also provide some ability and some authority for the administrators and some guidance to make those decisions based off the circumstances. And so what was the intent of the student, was there, you know, willful, harmful types of choices? Was it an accident but still caused harm? But that student really has some self-control issues and has done that four, five, six times and at some point maybe consequences are worth trying to help reinforce the importance of safety. It provides and walks through some of those variances in terms of what would be appropriate for a building principal to do.
Thank you.
Yes. Let's go on, okay, go ahead.
Just a quick, only because it's about a week fresh, and true to Mr. Gall's word, you text him and he'll take care of it. You know, when you have things from constituents, this was a dad at a middle school and just, you know, chaos in his classroom. So it was, you know, something that wasn't normal for that building, but just a one-off, so, you know, to that regard. But when you hear from a dad where he's like, I came in to view my daughter's class, trying to help her, you know, get it out of this math tutoring class so that she could get off of R I P so she could get back to, you know, normal growth and grade level and the classroom's, you know, chaos and, you know, kids throwing erasers and things, you know. And then hearing from that dad that when he talked to Steph about, hey, aren't you gonna do anything about that kid throwing the eraser at your head? Kind of deal like, oh no, the board doesn't want us to be disciplining the students. And hearing that, I just was like, I can't handle that, like, I want whoever's watching, everybody that's watching, to understand this board supports discipline for you having a safe and effective learning environment. And I can say that probably as a resounding consensus that those are interruptions to the classroom, they're interruptions to best-first instruction, to high-quality education and this board does not tolerate it, nor does the admin. So if that's been misconstrued in any way, I'm setting the record straight this evening that this board supports admin, teachers, principals, the whole way up in taking care of your classrooms, making sure they're effective learning environments. And just, that's, had to get that off my chest, so hopefully that's clear.
And again, your text to me to tell me that you got that feedback allowed the principal to hear from me that what they believe is or isn't happening in the classroom can get that course correction and the resources needed to help alleviate that.
Yeah, and that principal might not even have been aware that those staff was thinking that or, you know, needed those supports. So to that point, if you have issues as parents or teachers, please email the board and I'm the secretary, so I'll send it where I need to go, so we'll take care of it.
You were going to get a bunch of emails after this.
If it helps kids learn better, let's just handle it, so there you go.
Well, let's finish the presentation.
So the last one was last year, this is this year, you'll see that there are more schools included, meaning again, this is representing that one school in the high there has two hundred and thirty students that have four or more incidences. And so as I was explaining, the other codes of violation could include skipping. So some schools choose to move that into a disciplinary route and a student might have multiple skipping violations that result in to some disciplinary action. So there are more schools with four or more students this year as compared to last year. Getting into some tables, so this is part of the slide adjustment. But you'll see on the left there, the number of incidences that a student has. So the first row is the number of students that has one incident. Last year, that was two hundred and eighty-eight. This year, we are at one thousand two hundred and sixty-six. Students that had two incidents last year, one fifty-seven, and this year, four hundred and fifty-four.
What's the total incidents column?
That's, so again, that's where the dashboard and the counting, we're working on making that a bit more accurate and kind of correlated and responsive to it. You should see, the easiest example is row one, if we had two hundred and eighty-eight students that had one incident, we would expect to see two hundred and eighty-eight total incidents. So it should be number of incidents multiplied by the number of students that should equal that total column. There are some challenges in terms of getting the data to pull correctly and accurately, kind of on the backend with programming and.
So we thought about pulling this slide after we had posted it, when our data team said to us, this isn't clean. The takeaway here is in the orange box or yellow, whatever you call that, which is, we need to use this data to start informing how it is that we interact with families and students and understanding what is the right way to solve some of these challenges. We have the most robust opportunity academies of any school district in El Paso County and yet most of our kids end up there as a second chance or a last chance. There are students who need different levels of support than many of our comprehensive neighborhood schools offer. If you become the student of, you know, pick a row four, column four, the number of kids, you're expressing your dissatisfaction for the environment that you're in and we keep saying, don't do that. The more you tell the kid to not do that, when they've expressed that they're already gonna tell you what to do with that, when you say don't do that, doesn't correct the problem. We know that we do it differently at Tesla Middle School where our enrollment is up. I appreciate all the middle schools seeing that as a viable way to solve a problem before we get to expulsion. And at Bijou, at Digital Achieve and at Tesla High School itself. We need to be finding ways to have conversations with students and families earlier before we get these spikes. And it doesn't mean, it also doesn't mean that there's a core, a direct correlation between incidents and bad academic performance. But we have an algorithm that we're working on that says, if you are the kid that has more than one incident and you have less than a C grade point average in your experience, we probably need to have a conversation. Because you're getting very close on a very slippery slope. Because that third incident is now gonna be a, how many days suspension? Five days our first?
You have to five.
And I'm gonna say, just because I get the microphone, in eighth grade, if you miss Y equals M X plus B, it's over in math. It's all over. There's no algebra in ninth grade, there's no understanding geometry, there's no algebra two. If you don't understand the slope of the line and you miss it because you fall somewhere in here and we do what we have to do and we should do, which is we hold you accountable and we suspend you, why aren't we interjecting earlier that says, you're struggling in math, you have behavior incidences? Did you, did you miss Y equals M X plus B? Let's find a way to get you into a school setting where you can get that back again. Because the kids get on the slippery slope and it's not District eleven, this is not a District eleven state. This is public education and what the system does is we just make it slipperier and steeper. Once you start falling down, and again, I give this story and I can't give the individual's name for Privacy Act, but the kid that I've been following that washed out of one school, that I administratively placed in the other, that then we had to place into another, that didn't last the day at Tesla Middle School when it was at Tesla High School, is now in foster care in a different county and finally thriving. But that child is through five different ones of our schools and we're talking about a dashboard still and I'm going like, look at it, look, Chris comes in for expulsions, he brings in a full academic report, a full behavior report, a full attendance report and we do it, we map it back and we go, bink, it started in the fourth grade. We missed it, that's where it started, started, that's where the slope went. And we pushed the kid right down it and then we're surprised by the numbers. So this is on us to find, and we'll get the algorithm wrong a hundred times. But if we have two conversations that we shouldn't have, it's better than two conversations that we didn't have. We have to engage with our students and our families and when we do, we get robust conversations. I've been in them and the parent never says, you're crazy. They go, thank you for pointing this out to me, back to the earlier point, which was, our parents don't know everything that we know. And we package that up in a way that says, we have an answer for your kid's future. Because that's our job.
To add to that, and I've been more removed from the classroom than, you know, some folks that are still in it and just retired. I remember, you know, RTI, which is now MTSS, used to restart that process every year. And there was no, you know, like, other than teacher talk of, hey, watch out for Billy, he's coming to eighth grade next year. You know, that was the warning you got. But there has to be some sort of vertical work where, and I don't know, maybe we already, maybe we've already fixed it. But of like, hey.
We're trying.
I've watched Billy in sixth and seventh grade and the teacher just does all the progress monitoring, all the metrics, does this, does that, jumps through all the hoops, oh, just in time for April, oh, it's practically May, let the next teacher handle it. And it's just as, I mean, jills down your head, it's like, it pulls your, you pull your hair out, you know, that you've done all the work to help this kid and then that's just, you have to restart it. So to your point, Mr. Gall, it's just, we do have to fix this. We have to catch these earlier and align this MTSS vertically and get these tiered supports in, not just, oh, sixth grade's over, on to seventh grade, restart it. We have to have these high flyers or these kids that we don't want to become high flyers on our radar through your department, whatever you wanna measure it at, but we have to start catching this slope before, oh, we've reached, you know, this degree, what have we done and how do we keep track of that kid through grade levels?
And both to, to both of your points, I mean, we, this conversation ties back directly to the data conversation. What we're talking about right now is the data cycle and looking at, how do we use the discipline data we have to get better at and support those students and go through that MTSS lens, absolutely, so.
Thank you.
I'm gonna move on, if that's okay. These are just high-level high school, middle school and elementary slides. Again, if you look at the numbers up above, very similar, first semester to second semester. The categories are in the same progression essentially. Um, the categories are, uh, in the same progression essentially, uh, in terms of comparison purposes. Middle school, um, we, we are seeing, I would say, middle school is the one area that we are seeing a little bit more, uh, incidents in, in terms of, uh, discipline, expulsion requests. Um, but again, it's comparing, uh, last year to this year. And, um, you're seeing that this year, we're having students be out of school suspended far more than we were last year in comparing the two, so I think that's the big takeaway in terms of our current practices compared to last year.
Wait, 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 before you go on, these are classroom incidents. Uh, what about the incidents that happen on a school bus?
Those, so yes, that would be included in this. So if a behavior on a school bus rose to notifying a principal and it became disciplined, it would be included in here as well.
Okay, could speak, the, the difference there is that classroom has immediate support, bus drivers do not. And it's frustrating for them, I've heard from them, um, that, that it's not a safe environment for anybody when a kid won't listen to you on the bus and there's nothing you can do about it. And when you do stop and you have an assistant principal come on or you have security come on the bus, the kids are flipping them off anyway and letting them know, hey, you know, I'm not gonna, I can say it, but I.
They're untouchable, basically.
If, if you get me those examples, we will get that course correction.
Okay.
Um, and so sometimes there is an, um, a lack of transfer of information. Do we have a video recording on all buses? Right, so we can actually cite the example and we seek to hold, the school day starts when you get on the bus. It's not, it's not separate, so we seek to hold our students accountable to the same, same codes of conduct from the beginning of the day through the end of the day.
And sometimes transportation will lead the student not being able to ride the bus outside of that and other consequences that oftentimes is done through the administration.
It's just that, it's not immediate. And, and I know that things are, are recorded.
Yep.
What is, what is the, the time on the?
Disrupted student on the bus, the bus still has a, a route to, to complete, and you're still stuck with the disciplinary.
Yep.
That's, I'm sorry to interrupt, did you finish? Uh, that's probably an area, like, we need to, we need to, like, Chris can look into the data in alignment with Chris and the transportation team, um, to see if there's a trend we're seeing on buses. I think like, um, Superintendent Gall's suggestion, like, you know of some immediate places that we should lean into, we'll do that, but we'll look at the trends in transportation.
Okay.
Yep. I just wanna see more than ten kids on the bus and then, then I'll know that there's a problem.
Real quick on this, I was thinking that all of your middle schoolers, sixth, seventh and eighth grade were in elementary school through COVID, through online learning, hybrid learning, in and out. And so, you know, speaking of trends, this might be a group of kids that, you know, lost that socialization that they needed in elementary years. That's, those are formidable years, you know, and your, your elementary school principal, you know how much socialization, you know. Like, it comes back with all these different things he's heard before, then I'm like, I remember learning that when I was in first grade or, you know, whatever. So if they don't have that and now they're trying to integrate or act and grow, and they're maybe covering up, you know, some academic learning loss, we might wanna consider more push-in supports for, for this group because they've had it the roughest through their most important times of learning in elementary.
Chris is.
So I don't know if I'm talking.
You'll see some of that next week as we introduce the social, emotional cognitive learning as a program spotlight. But there's a whole other side of this that isn't here.
Right.
Or, which, you know, used to be, um, SSW, um, which now, um, you know, we have these supports that if either of you wanna talk about the folks that we have that are providing this, we're not just reporting on discipline. Schools have MTSS, they have access to district level supports who are in schools providing that both direct support and or training for them to be able to deliver that.
Okay.
Yes, I was just gonna say, like, Chris's team and looking at data, but also getting, like, direct feedback from visits that we've done, um, in areas superintendent is supporting right now um, in one of our middle schools that has, that I'm sure, that I'm sure is on, um, the list of that data and probably has.
So, you know, it's, it's, it's a difficult balance, cause I'll use MAN as an example. We saw the growth that we reported for MAN and a couple of months ago, we had public comment that said, MAN is out of control. There was a public comment that said, I heard MAN's out of control. From an academic perspective, the instructional leader that we have hired has put in new systems and structures that is showing academic growth at a way that was much higher than some of the peer schools. And yet, I'm sure we can pull out a bunch of incidents here that say MAN is, has a high reporting level of incidents. Those things kinda come to a head and then you tip over that balance that says, and, you know, I, I, I did it, I was in a middle school and a couple of kids were in the AP's office and they were getting sent back to the classroom. That was a sub that they had just gotten pushed out of and three of them were ready to go back to class and one of the kids was smoking and joking on their way back there and I gave him the eye look and they started smoking and joking with me. And I said, come here for a second, and I said, we're a learned institution first, are you ready to go back to class and learn? And they kept smoking and joking a little bit more and I said, no, it's not a social experiment. I want you to enjoy school, but you need to be ready to go back to class to learn. And that second conversation, the kid brought it back down. And then he went back to class and wasn't pushed out of class for the rest of the day. Now, maybe the next day he spiked, maybe he's one of the four or more kids. But we have the supports to push in and we have set a line that said, we want you here to learn. If you don't wanna be here to learn, I'll give you a couple of chances to get you those resources. But if you demonstrate that learning is not important to you and it's not important to your family, then I'll take the dip in enrollment next year. Right? Cause we lose more families by not showing that it's a learned institution. Then we lose by not being able to support the kid that just can't get there. And we still have eleven different ways to get that kid an opportunity, right? That's the gift of our school system, is we made an investment in opportunity schools, it says, we actually never quit. This board, how many hundreds, thousands, dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand to retrofit Tesla? Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to say, why don't we have an opportunity middle school when these are the numbers that we're seeing in middle school? Now we should see, how do we get those kids steered there in a way before this becomes the text message to a board member that says, oh my god, or the public comment that says, MAN's out of control.
Right.
Right? Man clearly isn't out of control by math and ELA standards, they're moving in a great direction. And yes, those things, that's a lot of pressure, these things come to a head. Kids will mat- if you don't know how to read, I promise you, the harder the ELA class gets, the more your incidents are gonna go up. We all, we all know that, we're all adults, we know that, and yet we bite off on the info and just be like, boy, that classroom's out of control. I'm not really sure it's out of control, it's, how do we get the right level of supports to make sure that we can get the kids, the, 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 both the social, emotional cognitive supports and the academic supports and by extension to the families as well. So they understand what some of those challenges are, cause that's the other breakdown, right? Families don't really know what happened in the classroom.
Last one.
Last one?
Here we go.
Here we go.
Oh, there we go. There was one board, we must have held twice, there it is, elementary. So, three oh one to four seventy-one, so a, a little bit more this year as compared to last. Um, but again, still in, in similar rank order and, um, just overall pretty similar to what we had, if you were to include some of those incidences that I think kinda got selected out because the, the way the data was pulled.
And, and yet, the out of school suspensions are doubled. And so that doesn't sound like it's just a, somebody tightening down.
So, so the, the, it depends on that data and how it was pulled, so not knowing. All of the data, it basically pulled out students that had incidences and then didn't count them in any of those other rank orders on that graph slide or on the, uh, table slide where it was one, two, three, all the way down to twenty-six. It, it didn't add them to any of those, so I know that there would be more students in all of those categories um, if we were able to have that accurate, um, data.
You mean in the twenty-two, twenty-three data.
Yeah.
So.
So from last fall, there are s- several data points that, for students that aren't included in anything that we're seeing because of the way the system pulled it, and I, I didn't have a way to find out which ones were the errors and then kind of push them into the right category. They're just not included in this data representation.
But, but I do think it's a point that we wanna measure.
Yes.
In-school, out-of-school suspension, expulsion, and then, or the categories that have led to in, in, in-school and out-of-school suspension would be my recommendation. I don't know if we're ever gonna get to a place where it's apples to apples on some of the code of conduct reporting by school because again, we're empowering our school leaders and their teams to make those determinations. But the national trend is in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension, and then particularly by subpopulation. To be able to look at that data by ethnicity, to see if there are trends that might be showing some level of bias or, um, disconnect in cultural relevancy for how it is that we're asking children to behave in the environment in which they've grown up in, so. That's, that's what I would recommend.
Okay, any final thoughts on the subject matter?
Yeah, sorry, I've been thinking for a while on how to say this concisely and I haven't come up with a good way of doing it.
Must be our table.
Um, so, I, this is gonna come off as a bit of a rant and a bit grandstanding and I'm sorry about that. I've been thinking for the last eight minutes as to how to avoid that and I haven't been successful. So, one of the things that I keep hearing is, you know, you wanna be doing this in a data-driven way, you wanna be, you know, using this to kind of get ahead of incidents and get ahead of student behavior. I just don't have a lot of confidence that the data is gonna let you do that. You, you know, you have a dashboard presented up here that we can just see mathematically is not giving you accurate numbers. And you have cases where you've mentioned, you know, principals will classify things differently depending on their own judgment. And the, the key word, the key phrase that I heard earlier was, all these incidents to be counted have to rise to the level where someone actually feels like going to the building principal and actually making a report, right? Um, so, number one, I, I don't have a lot of confidence in the data. And then number two, even if I did have confidence in the data, I, I know that this is a place where incentive structures really can be problematic cause you see in other districts, you know, systematic under-reporting of incidents when those things are measured and when those things are, you know, a, a performance benchmark to be hit. Because you want your school to look good, you want your classroom to look good, and frequently, it's very easy to just under-report and deal with it than it is to, you know, actually try to fix the problem in a real way. Um, so, I think the thing that I would just really, anyone who's listening or, you know, administration, the thing that I would really just encourage is, reflecting on is in D eleven, do we have a culture where a teacher feels like they can report incidents as needed and get the support that they need to? If, if we measure it with data and we feel confident in that, great, but at the end of the day, I, I need a bus driver or I need a classroom instructor to feel confident going to their building principal and saying, you know, cause when I look at the numbers of the classifications, most of what I see is, you know, detrimental behavior and disobedient and defined behavior. And even though you're telling me there's not trends with academic performance across schools, I gotta think that's a weakness of the data than a weakness of real life. Cause I know that as a teacher myself, if I'm having disobedient, defined, ju- you know, detrimental behavior, learning is not going to occur. So I just wanna make sure that everyone's thinking about, do we have a culture where a bus driver, where a classroom teacher, you know, where an ESP, where, where they feel confident bringing these things to their principals and feeling like they are gonna get backed up? Cause my own personal experience speaks against this. When I was a graduate student at Boulder, you know, we had cases where we had students dead to rice for cheating. Administration wouldn't back us up because they didn't wanna lose the student, they didn't wanna lose the student's tuition dollars. So are we creating that culture in D eleven? And that's, I'll get off my subbox, sorry.
One thing that I think, um, is important to point out with the example with confidence in the data, and where we always, we always will need to continue to strive to make sure our data is the cleanest it can be. But this is big picture overall data for a very specific thing, behavior incidents. And it's important, it's just like with academics data, we get big picture data, something, on something and we drill down. Um, and so you have to look at behavior and culture and climate, uh, like our superintendent said, uh, earlier. It, it's a body of evidence that you're looking at to actually have real, um, uh, uh, real-time adjustments at the level at which they're needed. So you look at something like this to determine, um, and Chris and his team and, uh, in, in relation to what, um, Superintendent Gall was saying as well, like, where are we having big trends as a district, where, what schools are having hu- a, a large number of incidences? Um, and in what areas? Um, and, uh, then coupling that with what other data are we seeing? So looking at, we've got, um, super, uh, uh, social, emotional learning data. Um, we've got, um, a data from learning walks, from area superintendents being in from, in schools. We've got, um, data from MTSS processes. So when Director Jorgensen talks about, um, it is important that we need to make sure that schools are following through with those, but when you have a student that's exhibiting behaviors, like, this is the least, you're not gonna go directly to look in the, um, to look in our system to see, like, what's the number of incidents right away. You know, in the school, and you're gonna go through an MTSS process to, to put interventions in place to get down the behaviors you're seeing. And then if they're still exhibiting those behaviors with the interventions you've put in place, that's what you're talking about, Director Jorgensen, that we have to go to the next level of what that means, right? And you can do that within a relatively short amount of time. So I think like, the confidence in the data, you're right to be skeptical for this particular part of data. This is, we're looking at it for purposes of the board and the request and overall district. But you have to look at multiple pieces to really address, to address, um, needs within a school. Um, and, and that's where this gets back to even what we were talking about with our strategies earlier, in the earlier conversation, right? Our systems of accountability support with our area, um, network model. The, the staff that, um, that Mike was talking about are part of, uh, the dial-in support staff and the area network support staff, um, to provide support in, in cases that the area superintendents can, and principals can. So it's multiple, it's multiple sources of data, not, not just.
I, I think I'll speak on behalf of the administration as a superintendent, we have no intent of creating that culture of where people cannot report. I think the high number of incidents that you are seeing shows that there certainly isn't a fear of reporting. The question is, is, is there an action associated with the report? We believe that we can curtail this into actionable, trackable data that gives us the indication of when we're off that beaten path. Um, and also, I, um, appreciate that the board's goal on behavior landed into a five E area to be able to report on that cause it gives us a slightly more holistic view of the school and the culture of the school. If we, if the culture of the school is positive, we can handle disruptive behavior, get the supports that we need and ensure that we're still able to deliver and, and get rid of the, the known cheating student at CU. There's, i- i- if anything, the incentive is actually opposite of, we do not have people grabbing kids to get kids to get enrollment numbers, um, and ignoring the behavior. If anything, I've had to say, we seek to take all children who knock on our door. We do have the right level of supports for them, we just have to find the match. So if a kid knocks on a comprehensive high school door that the, the principal or team looks at it and goes, I can't get you to graduation, they oughta have a list of says, but John Bailey can get you there, or Jason Miller can get you there, or MC can get you there. And let's find the right way to do that, so. Um, I appreciate the, 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 what, we know the data is raw, this is the first time we've been asked to provide it, this is the way we track it. Um, if we wanna bring it back to, we can bring maybe in two months, a dashboard of what we think is what you all wanna look at uh, for a more editable version. Um, uh, we're not trying to steer away from the data, we want the data to be around and su- uh, sound and rigorous as well.
Yeah, okay.
But the goal would be at the end of this year to have a baseline that then this board and future boards are able to measure going forward.
Just, uh, so we can put an end to this conversation and move on to the next topic. What I'm gathering from the board and some of my own thoughts on this, we looked at the academic data first and now with the discipline data, in a month or so, we are going to look at attendance data too. And already Superintendent Gall has talked about chronic absenteeism being forty percent. Almost nine thousand of our students are in the chronic absentee range. So my feedback or my, um, urge to this board is that if we are going to, there is a way that we can, as a board, bring our governance into this and address this through policy, that we take this as a lift for the rest of this academic year, attendance and school behaviors. That being the primary policy that the board wants to address at this point in time, the policy committee and Dr. X. The policy committee and Dr. X would be addressing other policies that are time-sensitive. But as far as the main revisions go, if the board is willing to give that type of feedback to administration, and because Mr. Brandt is also available here, because this will be falling into it, would the board be comfortable in saying that we want to address attendance and behavior in our classrooms through policy and see what is there in policy going forward? Would that be something that we can give as a directive at this time? Okay, great, I see. Mr. Brandt, that is something that the board would like to see. It aligns with the board priorities out there. To Superintendent Gall's thing, we are not chasing behaviors out here that we don't want to, but the deliverables that are there is that we want to see increased academic outcomes in our classroom. We want to see our staff supported. So that, like what Superintendent Gall keeps saying, the number-one way to student achievement is access to high-quality instruction. And to Director Carey's point, that if there is going to be disruptions in the classroom, we don't know if that high-quality instruction is going to take place. So we want to address this through policy if necessary, where it does maybe bring some consistency throughout the schools where it's become subjective at this point in time. Different schools are doing different things at this point in time. So that is translated in the data that we see from school to school. Is there anything else that, okay, thank you.
Can I make one other note? That discipline is also covered in the master agreement. So maybe we wanna take some of that language and put it into our own policy. But especially to address the, this kid is coming thing, and which shouldn't be, obviously, a way to discriminate against a child. We wanna have that fresh expectation, the next year, new person attitude. But I think reviewing policy for all of us, for this JKBA, is important as well. There are some expectations already set up there. But, yeah, keep in mind the master agreement as well.
Yeah, if there is something that is relevant, that is going to help our teachers out there, then opt for it. Whether you take it from the master agreement or CASB policy, please do it, you know. Yeah, it's all about ensuring our teachers are supported in the ultimate goal, that is to improve student academic achievement in the classroom. And we are looking forward to the conversation about ACL too, that's coming up next week. And if those are helping improve some of the student behavior.
We just wanna be able to share with the board that it's not an echo chamber or it's not a bottomless pit. We have schools that have made specific decisions on programs, and they're gonna come share, we have some showcase schools. We have data to support that there has been substantial change in reportable incidents that has changed the culture of the school. With that, we don't believe that there's a single answer for it. We think it's a bit of a smorgasbord of schools ought to be thinking about how they get there. They're doing that anecdotally right now, just if they're chasing the five Es, which is, oh boy, I'm red there, what am I gonna do about it? I don't think that's where they are. I think they're looking at, I can't get to high-quality instruction because there's too many disruptions in the classroom. How do I put structure in the classroom so I can get to that high-quality instruction? So I think they're, I think they're going down the right path, and we're excited to share that next week, that'll be at the elementary school level, and then we'll build upon that through the year.
And at the secondary level, specifically in high school connected to On Track to Graduate, there's a, there's dashboard that they look at ongoingly. This probably helps maybe a little bit with your point, connected to data. That's all about ABC data, which includes attendance and behavior and course content.
Okay, so thank you. Moving on, we have two more items on the agenda. One is the GT academic master plan update, that's the next one. And then we have the board communication RFP conversations. Those are the two things that are left. Okay, let's get started. Okay, let's get started, guys. We took more than a five-minute break, I think it was ten minutes, that's okay. We are back here at the work session. The next topic on the agenda is gifted and talented academic master plan. Superintendent Gall has stepped outside, so I'm going to hand it to Sausage. Do you want to set up the conversation?
Yeah, and I, and I'm gonna quickly turn it over to Emily. This, it's really, first of all, I wanna say it's really important that we have, I just wanna recognize Emily again for leading this work and just the true treasure and gift that we have in her leadership and leading us in this conversation. Just wanna remind us, we recognized her not too long ago for the Jacqueline Medina Visionary Leadership Award through the Colorado Association of Gifted and Talented. That, that is huge. And no better person to talk us through this work. Our academic master plan, as we know, we codified and solidified some of the pieces of the work that have been done over the year to create our overall plan. And part of that vision is that we have a portfolio of schools with learning foundations that include what we envision for quality neighborhood schools so that all students have access to explore their interests, but they also have the needed opportunities to be able to reach our vision of being able to profoundly impact the world. Specifically with what we're gonna talk about here, part of that work is the pathways and the programming that we put in place, which is Goal Two of our academic master plan, to create access to programming and pathways in arts experiential STEM, specialized programming, which includes the Gifted Magnet Program and Language Arts. So with that.
Let me just jump in, 'cause I missed that first intro. When I interviewed two years ago, I went through all the community data points that your search consultant had brought forward. And a very consistent theme that resonated with me is that District 11 was extremely proud of its gifted programming. At the tail end of that now, two years, Tamara and I have had an opportunity to meet some incredible families who come to District 11 specifically for the incredible depth of what we can offer, not just to our gifted and talented students, but through a gifted magnet program. And so I just wanna make sure that when everybody's listening here, we have and will continue to have every school support gifted and talented students. But we're talking about gifted magnet programming, and Emily and Tamara would be the best ones to tell you on this idea of clustering those students together and what that benefit is. This is not about school closure. I know there are a lot of emails that are out there right now about some of the recommendations that we have. We are not talking about school closure and school consolidation as an administration. We believe that every one of our schools that we have right now has a place in our portfolio. But we have some specific recommendations that are here to better service our gifted and talented students in specifically our gifted magnet programs. To Emily.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'm Emily Andrews, the Gifted and Talented facilitator, and it's so lovely to meet you all this evening, and thank you. And I just really appreciate the opportunity to provide the updates where we provide challenging experiences to build on strengths and optimize potential for students. I'd like for us to take a look back to the three-to-five-year plan that we set in place in 2020, just for a bit of historical perspective. You all know that we really want to serve our Tier Three and our talent development students. All of those students together are academically top-performing fifteen percent. And at that time, four years ago, we had about fifty percent of our, of our schools identifying the top fifteen percent academically. And now I would like to report, four years later, we now have two-thirds of our schools that are able to identify the top fifteen percent academically. And the remaining third of our schools are utilizing local norms. Local norms is a really big piece in the Colorado updated identification guidance that helps us support students that may not be scoring at the eighty-five percent yet. And we still serve those kids in our quality neighborhood schools with our gifted resource teachers. No matter the national percentiles, we're serving the top fifteen percent of our schools, and all of our gifted resource teachers are committed to doing that. I just wanna show two quick slides on the math and reading growth data. I looked at the top fifteen percent Tier Three and talent development kids, and our commitment to the board is that our students will grow in their areas of identification. So these are our math-identified kids, Tier Three, and our math-talent development students. And overall, our students are growing, we're on the right trajectory. I have shared each of the detailed reports that I ran with our whole team, and I've asked our team to drill in, to dial in to each of the individual schools, and then look at individual students to see where do we need to provide some supports? 'Cause we know that there are some grade levels that need some more supports. We know that there are some subpopulations that need more supports. But overall, on the balance in reading and math, we are seeing stable growth, and we're seeing trajectories of upward growth in many places. So for our Talent Impacts Peak Process, you all know at middle school, we are really focused on identifying creativity and identifying students in the arts. Just five years ago, we had a handful of students identified in the arts. And I'm really happy to say that as of now, we've got eighty-four children identified Tier Three in the arts and thirty-four students that are identified talent development. This year, we're hosting a TIP Week. The gifted resource team, in addition to the visual and performing arts team, we're partnering together. We have the capacity to adjudicate five hundred middle school students at the last week of February so that we expect to have a strong talent development pool of kids in the arts, which really helps us support the pathways. We tend to see gifted education as supporting all of the pathways in the whole district and work closely with those facilitators to do that.
Could you go back just a moment? I found it, I wanna ask the question, why you used adjudicates in your statement there?
Yeah, so we, we like to assess students in the area, so I could use assessment. We just tend to use the language adjudicators because that's the name of the judges that assess the students on our TIP days.
And that's why I asked the question. Usually, we're talking about adjudicating juveniles who've broken the law. And to see it in this context, it's like, what? You have judges who are looking at stuff, I can see the, I can connect those dots, thank you.
Sure, the professional artists that review the students' portfolios and see their performances, they're adjudicating them.
Thank you.
So then I'd like to look at our three-to-five-year plan as it is now. We are excited to continue the motivation, the momentum for identification and growth. We are looking to update the FTE allocation model with the hopes of providing every elementary school with a point for FTE that puts a teacher in a building two days a week at a bare minimum, which I'm really hopeful that we can do this. We also are looking to fill our gifted magnet program to capacity. And what you may not know is that we have two gifted magnet programs that over the balance of the last three-to-seven-ish years, depending on which school you're looking at, we've been about half-full. And we have really been trying to market, we've been trying to communicate, we've been trying to recruit. And it's really this goal of filling the gifted magnet program, reaching the number of students that we need to reach to provide this rigorous, rich academic experience to students that we would like to spend a little bit of time talking about tonight. We believe in the gifted magnet program. Our current schools are Fremont and Stratton at the elementary level and Saban and West at the middle school level. And I just want you all to know that not only do I see children eager to go to their gifted classes in whatever school I visit, the gifted magnet program is something special. We currently have a middle school student whose mom went through the gifted magnet program here in District 11. And that student has moved from a different state specifically to attend the gifted magnet program. The student is thriving in the program, and his grandmother teaches in one of our gifted magnet schools. And so it's just a really special experience to see how important and this program is and really truly can change the lives of students and change their trajectory. So in a gifted magnet program, we basically have intentional cluster grouping. And cluster grouping in gifted education is a great way to serve students so that we can put students together in their areas of strength in order to meet their academic needs. And through that, especially in the gifted magnet program, when we take their four core academic areas and provide integrated cross-curricular experiences, we also serve their social-emotional needs. These students learn what it means to be a gifted, an academically gifted student, and they understand the intensities that come with that. They learn how to cope with bumping against struggles and challenges that they may not have encountered before. School in many ways comes very easy to some of these kids, and they don't know what to do with struggle. And so coaching them through that academic struggle, having a core team of teachers to facilitate that is incredibly important. So tonight, we, oh, I am remiss. I should speak to the cross-curricular thematic instruction. Each grade level in the GMP has a specific theme that they tie all of their units in their experiential learning to. And I was just lucky to be in this classroom. I love snapping pictures of kids and posting them on Instagram, and we just have, have a lot of fun, lots of smiles in all of our classrooms that we visit. So tonight, I'd like to talk about refocusing the gifted magnet program and to share a proposal that we move the GMP to two different schools starting next academic year. We are looking to move the West gifted magnet program to Holmes, and we're looking to move the Fremont gifted magnet program to Freedom. And when we say move the program, what we're looking at is we're looking at having all of the teachers are, have been invited today. We spoke to all four schools today that are involved with our comprehensive communications plan that we have designed. And inviting each of those teachers to move to the new school. And we would invite all of the students to also move to the new school. However, everyone has choice in that. We've, we've had conversations with the right people in human resources to make sure that if we have space available and teachers want to stay at their current school, that they would have the flexibility to do that. Similarly, we, we really looked at many of the individual students and the families and the family makeups. We looked at siblings, we looked at where students might land. And we feel that we, we really are making a decision to move all of the students all at once rather than a transitioned approach because the impact to any, any families is not going to be as great as it would be if we have lots of families with several siblings in place, like we do at some of our gifted magnet schools. And so that's what it looks like to move the program. I've been in conversation with transportation 'cause I know that's one of the first questions that people ask, is what about transportation? And transportation, I spent quite a bit of time with them recently to talk through what those options are. And the transportation team is amazing. They have come up with lots of different ideas, lots of brainstorm, lots of creative thinking in how we can support our students. And so we will really be putting some nuts and bolts to that once we feel like we have a decision to move forward with. One of the things I'd like to highlight is that we are in alignment with the research that provides indicators for successful gifted programming. We have leadership that is supportive of gifted programming with a solid base of identified students, and we are reviewing the District 11 choice patterns that we, we believe that a move will reach more students that are not currently being served. In fact, we believe we can double the number of students at, at our elementary level and at our middle school level simply by moving to a different location. What was so exciting to me, visiting with all of the schools today, is the feedback that we got from the staff and from the, from the gifted magnet teachers. And sure, there was a balance of it, there was, there was some concern that was shared. And real concern, I hear the reasons that several of the staff provided for their concern. I also heard the other side. I heard people saying, oh, thank you so much for taking this important issue that we, we see that our program, our enrollment is lagging, and we've done everything that we can. We're so thankful that we have the hope to look towards a full program that is robust with, with kids that we can serve. I've also spoken specifically to families today, and of course, I've heard some families that are very concerned, and they, they see the distance is greater, they're concerned about their commute, and I agree with that as well. I also have heard from families that almost burst into tears for the gratefulness of us paying attention to the needs of the kids and the, and the opportunities that their students are gonna have. And so I just wanna share that we may not hear all of the resounding positive feedback from our community, but it's out there. And we have invited not only staff members but also parents to email or call me and just have a conversation about what this change may entail for their student and how we can help support families in their decisions and what, what they choose to do. So in terms of the application process, some of the feedback we received was about the application process and I want to ensure that we will continue to review the applications for the gifted magnet program through the lens of equity. We want to continue to develop the talent in our students. We want to continue to look at the, the students that are in that eightieth, eighty-fifth percentile and above to grow them into students that now experience critical thinking skills and, and they just perform because they've had more exposure and they've had peers that they've had an opportunity to work with. And so that's, that's a really high value for us. We have conversations with the gifted magnet coordinators quite a bit and we, we want to give kids the chance to experience a rigorous academic experience.
Emily, it didn't end up a slide, but can you verbally share that breakdown that we had of a particular school with the total of kids enrolled and how many were boundaried compared to Choice?
So at Fremont, for our current third and fourth graders that would be impacted by this move, we have a total of fourteen neighborhood children in the third and the fourth grade and then a total of eleven who have choiced in for third and fourth grade. And, and so we, we believe that we can support these students. Some of them live closer to the new proposed school and it would be easy for them to, to transport there. And then I recently have, I've talked to a family tonight that they are a neighborhood school, but they are, they've already moved to a place that's a little bit further away and so the proposed new school would be easier for them to get to. And so we'll just work with individual families on that basis. At West Middle, we've got sixth and seventh grade students that we're really looking at here for this data metric. We've got about twenty students that have choiced in and we've got about fourteen kids that are in the neighborhood. And so with the proposed move of West to Holmes, the transportation there is pretty easy in terms of, I, I don't believe that we're going to have any big challenges of getting those neighborhood kids up to, up the hill to Holmes.
And the ones that Choice are already having to drive to a school, so.
We're direct to a bus stop.
Um, I just wanted, and if we need to get that for the public to see, we'll update the slide for it. The level of depth that with the gifted team has analyzed this data to see how is it that they can minimize negative impact of current students. The original request, when the brief came to me, was, is there a way for us to grandfather this? Is there a way for us to run dual programs to say anybody who's a sixth grader at West will be able to graduate at West if they choose to not make the choice? We just don't have the resources to do that. We don't have the number of gifted staff to be able to provide that clustering effect. Now, we can still produce and support a gifted talented student at West if they chose to stay there, but not in the gifted magnet program there. And so this, again, and consistent with how the district is operated, is completely student-focused, has been shared this week with external staff, but gifted staff have been working and influencing this decision over the course of the year. When Tamara came to me and said, should we do a gifted magnet update on the pathway? And I said, absolutely. And so the timing is always a challenge to be able to give the board an idea that we have and be able to share with community members who will either be supportive or not supportive of it. But this has not been a last minute. This has been a well-thought, well-developed and I appreciate Emily coming forward in the sense of, this isn't even a two-year process. This has been a process as it evolved over five years. And that, unfortunately, the feeder just never really connected. We didn't get families that were coming from Stratton to go to West. West has been, right, or Fremont there as well.
And excuse me.
We have a consideration slide if you want to go forward. I think you've covered most of those already, but.
And I want to draw a highlight to what you just said in the sense that this ongoing conversation has been influenced by the, by the staff, by the teachers over time. And some of the emails that we have gotten have questioned that. So I'm glad that you pointed out that this is not, this didn't come up last month and that in looking at the broader opportunity to serve more of our students and increase enrollment, it has been a long time and the voices have been heard and had, had an influence. I think that's a great way to phrase it, it's an influence. It takes into consideration and what I'm hearing you say, which I, with the, it's very considerate to not only offer teachers to move with the program, but to also allow the teachers to stay if they would like to stay where their school is. I, I think that has not been done before. I think that's, really speaks well for this process to broaden our opportunities for kids and their families. So thank you, thank you.
So we, we have really looked at all of the data. We've looked at individual students, we've looked at families. We've really tried to think about all the angles that this potentially could impact. And now that we're here and, and with this proposal, I'm eager to, to hear more feedback from staff, from families because maybe there is something that we haven't thought of that we can be responsive to and, and I'm all for that. Couple of things just to realize, when we say we want to double the number of students, we currently have four-point-five FTE at West, serving about forty-five students. And, and I believe that if we had four-point-five staff serving closer to ninety students, that would be an appropriate use of the FTE allocation. Similarly, at Fremont, we've got three-point-three FTE and that we're serving about forty-five students at that school as well. And I, I believe we could easily run elementary classrooms that have not just fifteen kids in them, but have closer to twenty-five kids in them and really make a positive impact. My concern on the GMP is that we are currently supporting the GMP with one-point-two FTE of S R funds. And so we know that that is going to go away for this next academic year and trying to meet the point, four-point-four FTE at the elementary level and continuing to support the gifted magnet program at the level we would like to. I just, I'm hopeful that we can have some creative solutions to make that all work.
Increasing enrollment numbers helps to get an FTE, so.
That would help a lot, right?
Yep.
So are there any questions or points of discussion that we want to talk about tonight?
Well, certainly, so let, you have finished with your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's open it up for the board for questions, comments on what has been proposed before. And I do have some thoughts on this too, but I will first defer to the board and direct ahead.
Can I, can I scattershot a whole bunch of clarifying questions? Just because they, they should be fast. I just don't feel like I understand the, the exact proposal here. So let me just make sure I understand kind of how this program works. So you take, you know, the top fifteen percent of people who want to be in the program, cluster them together so they're, you know, with peers of similar ability and similar, you know, engagement. And then those, that program houses those students and those classes in a specific location.
Yes.
For, currently, West and Fremont. Am I understanding right so far?
Saban and Stratton.
Yeah, and Saban and Stratton as well.
Oh, but those are not, those are not, those are not. Saban is a perfect example. There's a back section of Saban of where middle school GMP exists. And all, I don't want to say school within a school because Saban has greatly benefited from the relationship of seeing its GMP as an area of where all of the school can benefit. But yes, the students are in class together.
And the only thing that I would say to clarify your language is that the top fifteen percent is identified in every school. And so we are academically serving the top fifteen percent of every school. And then of those students, they apply if they would like to attend the gifted magnet program and we review those applications, make our best decision based on a whole body of evidence. We look at test scores, we look at teacher recommendations, we look at student responses and parent responses on our applications and do our best to make the best decision to see if it's the right fit for those students. Because it is, they do gifted classes all day long in all of their four core academics. And so they are clustered in the gifted magnet program at four schools.
Okay, so if you're a family who's, the student is part of this program, but your neighborhood school is not West, does the school bus take you to West or do you have to do that?
It depends a little bit. Many families choose to transport their own students. Some parents have a localized bus stop that students can go to and take the bus to the GMP and some schools have transportation that takes them straight there if they're in the neighborhood.
Okay. I'm just going to keep going, I'm sorry if anyone else has questions to jump in like that.
No, no, go ahead, I mean, it's good questions, thank you.
So if, at the moment, because you mentioned that, you know, you feel like your program is not at capacity at the moment, is that through lack of an applic, through lack of sheer number of applications? Or is that through number of qualified applications?
That's a great question. I would say it's a lack of sheer number of applications.
Okay, because I think what I'm, what I'm getting is, I'm trying to understand what the benefit of a move would be as far as actually expanding enrollment. Because one of the things you mentioned was, you know, well, teach, here in this district, we're not interested in telling teachers, you must go to this location and teach this thing. So you're saying, you know, teachers would have the option to move with the program, but if they want to stay in their local school, we can find a way to do that. My guess is for many teachers, being a part of that program is the draw, right? And so if they have logistical difficulties with going to Holmes or going to Freedom, let's say, the fact that they can stay at their school and teach in a program that they're not as excited about, I, I don't know that they're, that that's all that appealing, if that makes sense.
Right, but we still want to give people the option to do that.
Right.
I think the anecdotal piece is that your team is supportive of these recommendations, that we don't have GMP teachers who don't want to either make the move or stay and do something different.
A pre-GMP teacher I spoke with today was supportive of the movement, interested in staying with the program.
That doesn't mean that there aren't other teachers that you're hearing from that don't support this move, but the GMP staff has been a part of this planning and supports the move in an effort to increase enrollment. There are some disconnects and they're anecdotal of families that say, I don't want to go to GMP at a school with only X number of kids in the middle school program or at that elementary school because of its overall performance. There's a disconnect in the oxymoron was the gifted talent turnaround school because both West and Fremont were on priority improvement with gifted magnet programs. When you pull the data out of the gifted magnet performance in both Fremont and West, it says that the challenges in that school, and challenges in schools are real, are even more so than they are with those gifted magnet programs. And so anecdotally, again, do parents want to send their child to a program that doesn't feel that the entirety of the school environment is supportive of or beneficial from?
And why that's super concerning for us. And I'll, I'll just, just a little side note. I was a principal at a school that had a gifted magnet program. I had a lot of training in the needs of gifted learners. The option, so it's true, you have gifted students across the systems and, and some are serviced just their neighborhood school, the school that they choice into without being part of a magnet program, works. For some, they really need a gifted magnet program to meet their needs in the ways that Emily was describing, in the way we've structured instruction to have a peer group. It's, it's an intense need for them. So the fact that we've got two programs that are not full is a concern because that means we're not meeting, and, and there's a certain percentage that you, that you know you should have within your gifted population that should, that need that type of tier-three intensive level support. And we're not capturing them. And we've tried for a while to capture them. So in addition to the financial piece and the forty-five kids with four-point-four, you know, FTE, it's the fact we're like missing meeting the needs of kids. They're not in our program and we know they're out there.
So what, what about the location change? Do you, because you mentioned that the low capacity is in part due to just the raw number of applications. So what, what is it about the location change that you think is going to attract more people to the program?
So there's, there's a couple of things. Specifically at Holmes, we already have ninety kids actually identified in the school itself. So our presupposition is that some of those kids would want to join the gifted magnet program if it's at their school. And we also think that in some ways, geographically, it's very possible that Holmes is better situated to invite fifth graders that are coming from other elementary schools to be in the sixth grade gifted magnet program, even if they weren't necessarily planning to go to Holmes. Now that Holmes would have a gifted magnet program, those students would likely stay in District eleven instead of making other choices on the West side.
And they're not making the commute to West at this point in time? They don't want to, you are saying that they would take Holmes over West as far as the geographic location goes?
Anecdotally, that's what we're hearing.
Is that the same thing from Fremont to Freedom?
I would say that as well. We, we have so many students that we lose across the border on the northern end as well, that we're hopeful that with a gifted magnet program on the north end, that we will retain more of those students and not lose them.
And retain is where I was going to come in. And so sometimes when you have highly gifted kids who haven't had the advantage of being in a program designed for them, when they do get into a program designed for them, they find out they're not the smartest kid in the room. So my question is, what is the retention for kids who enter the magnet program? Do they stay or?
They do. They, I would say, especially at the elementary level. We get them in third grade, they stay fourth and fifth. And we, on a space-available basis, will choice in fourth and fifth graders as well. And you know what, it takes them about a quarter to adjust and then they're off to the races. And then I would say, once we get a student at sixth grade, they stay through eighth. That boundary between fifth and sixth grade where we make it very clear to our fifth grade gifted magnet program students that there is a pathway. And we outline the pathway for them and we help them understand that that's the natural matriculation is to go to the next middle school that has the gifted magnet program. And we understand that we don't, we don't make students do anything, right? We want them to have choice. If their older brother or older sister goes to a different middle school, we want them to have that, that flexibility to make that choice as well. And so there are students at fifth grade that will choose to go to other middle schools and not choose the GMP because their family situation warrants that change. And some people also choose other middle schools because perhaps the all-academic across all four content areas wasn't really the best fit for that student. And so we have several middle schools that will really target the advanced programming for students where they will, say, take upper-level math and science classes but not take the advanced level of language arts and social studies. And so in that case, many of those students are served better at different middle schools that have that level of advanced programming, but it's not integrated, it's not cross-curricular, it's not gifted across all their academics.
And that kind of answers the question when you were talking about the eighty-five percent level. Gift, kids can be gifted in math, but not in reading, or the other way around. So they would be better served staying in their homeschool or the school that they had been attending.
It could be, yeah.
Well, because it leads to, if you're in a gifted magnet program and you have all four classes being taught to that level, but that's, like I said, so I'm not good in reading, but boy, I know math. It would be very disconcerting and I don't think that would be the best fit, so.
And so sometimes we contract in students and we will say, you know what, this is a really good fit for these two areas and try it and see what you do with your chance, right? And then we make a, we make a family decision. You know, families, teachers, we come together as an TSS committee and say, is this the right fit for the student?
Gotcha. Thank you.
Sure.
If I, if I might piggyback off your, your thought there at the end. The idea that teachers would be involved in that decision, that's great. What I struggle with is that, please correct me if I'm wrong. It doesn't seem like staff as a whole was not necessarily listened to given the opportunity to speak. And I'm, I'm wondering if, was there any notification prior to today to the West staff?
So we, we, when we designed our comprehensive communication plan, we wanted all of our communication to happen within the same week as this meeting. And so we had designed to talk to staff yesterday.
Right.
And with the snow day, we just had to, we had to re-look at our plan. The, the um point that I made clear to all of the staff that we talked with today is that we were coming to you with a proposal and today was the invitation to begin the input and feedback process. And so um I I think, I think some people felt like we were getting the cart before the horse, and yet this was by design to share with schools what we were thinking, what the academic plan updates were, come to the board, speak to the doc tomorrow, and then gather feedback as we um as we go through this decision-making process.
So-
Because we knew tonight was not gonna be a decision.
Is that feedback being, like, the feedback that you're gathering, is that door being open to the West staff as a whole, not just the GMP?
Yes.
So are you going to hold some sort of town hall or some sort of meeting to-
We weren't planning on it. I mean, this is a programmatic choice decision that I'm coming to the expert that is state-recognized for the work that she's delivered in noticing a lack of resource allocation. And so, and and I understand that change is hard. This change is centered around better servicing students that we have underserviced, and I applaud Emily in having worked with the gifted staff to get that feedback. It's, it's anecdotal to me on if the West staff doesn't agree with this. West is a school that has struggled to find its identity, and the change and the feedback you're hearing is on the loss of this identity. That doesn't mean that we are quitting on West. We need to reimagine West. West had a hundred and eighty-two kids in this year's attendance, uh, in this year's enrollment with a four hundred and fifty kid capacity. That has to be cause for alarm from the Board of Education. That says, what is the middle school solution for, and Lyman's sitting over there, our most underutilized grade bands in the district is middle school. Do not hold hostage a middle, a a gifted magnet program opportunity for families on the challenge that we're having at a particular middle school or elementary school. This, to me, isn't much different than if we wanna change the robotics uh pathway or the aviation pathway at a particular school. That staff should definitely have a vote in it. But I'm not sure that how the whole school feels about it is as important as the feedback that Emily's provided from the gifted staff today. And so, and and then there is this, well, how do you get change out here? How do you get information? We're bringing this to the board. I think we've had the conversations with the staff. We're interested in the board's input, but I don't think that this is one of those spaces where consensus at the school level. This is a system-level decision of what does the system need to provide better gifted magnet programming for us, for our families. Right now, they're not working at West and it's not working at Fremont. Those numbers are telling you that, that just in schools on the other side of town where population sets of more gifted and talented kids are 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 residing are choosing to go to Stratton and to Saban. And Saban is a good example of, it doesn't have to be an affluent school to be a gifted magnet program. Saban sits right in the heart of our city, and many of you will tell me many things that are wrong with Saban. But nobody tells me there's a problem with the gifted magnet program in Saban. Everybody tells me that is a gem in this district. We have tried for several years. It has not worked at West, it has not worked at Fremont. And so I think if there's discussion, it should be, is Holmes and Freedom the right place? But I think the board should be asking us to make that recommendation.
It's, it's, it's not, forgive me, the question isn't um about the gifted magnet program at all. The question for me as a former teacher is, are the teachers being heard? Because the things that the board puts into place, the administration puts into place, the numbers on a page look like that's the decision that should be made. However, nobody considers the person or the kids in that classroom on a daily basis, and how those policies affect those people on a daily basis. I'm just asking whether or not the staff at West, GMP staff, regular staff, whoever, if they have an opportunity to have their voices heard before this decision is made, that's it.
We do. Um, and the principal at West published a, like a Microsoft form where people have the opportunity to provide feedback, and they can either provide it anonymously or they can provide it with their name on it. Um, and in fact, I've already responded to a person that uh assigned their name to their feedback uh to address some of their concerns and their questions. And so, yes, I'm gonna be checking that form every day and making sure that I can respond to the best of my ability to the questions and concerns that they have.
Okay, so, um, oh, I just escaped. Uh, but the the move is to Holmes because there's more kids at Holmes? That you, that have applied, or that it's just a better off situation? Why not Holmes to to West?
Um-
Land devil's advocate here, I just, I wanna hear both sides.
Yeah, I'm sure. Why not Holmes to West? So the Holmes families um have very clearly not chosen West even though there was a GMP there.
Okay.
There, there is a gifted resource teacher at Holmes um providing some general support, but it's not an all academic, all gifted, all day long um support. And so the Holmes families um haven't chosen West for a variety of reasons. And so one of the reasons that we looked at Holmes is that there is space available at Holmes. It is close in proximity, it's still on the West Side, and we believe that we can capture um and and maintain, like retain, some of our students that attend elementary school on the West Side because they would just come down thirtieth to Holmes rather than choosing another nearby middle school.
Sure, well, understanding, no matter what decision you make, somebody's not gonna be happy. I just think that people need their-
Voices heard.
Yeah, they need their voices heard, and if they don't get their voices heard, they're gonna be really upset. And then morale's gonna be affected, and then that is a cancer that overtakes the entire district. I just wanted that on record.
And some, and transparency, right? Like, sometimes, like, voices being heard to some people is that you make a different decision
Right.
or you go in a different way.
Sure.
And um, you know, that, that, that I think Emily's doing a very nice job of, and that we will make sure that, that we do, but-
When we can, these kind of decisions are substantiated by data to show that this move is necessary. It's more palatable for, you know, the general community too. And we haven't seen the data. You have provided some data as far as the forty-five teacher, forty-five students and four point five FTE and all those things. But if we can have some real data there, that would be one of my feedback to you. If we can see what the enrollment numbers as West and Fremont has been over the past three years. And if this has become a trend where we cannot um improve or increase enrollment at that school.
Okay.
Um, the concern from the staff out there to reflect what Superintendent Gall, and I was just noting down that numbers. West has a capacity of four hundred and fifty students at this time, and from what he was saying, it's got like hundred and eighty-three students at this time. You take away forty-five students from that, it's going to be like hundred and forty students. So the concern for that staff out there is, is this going to decimate our school out there? And to um, you know, Superintendent Gall's point, this is not about closing West, but this is about how do we provide some other uh supports out there to West to increase enrollment out there at West? I don't know what the numbers at Fremont are, but obviously forty-five students with four point five FTE, that doesn't translate out there. We gotta be, we are coming to a tougher budget cycle this year. And, uh, you know, there are some preliminary conversations that are taking place uh with SRF funds moving away and we coming out at declining enrollment averaging. We are going to be hard-stirched with compensation and staffing. We are going to do the best as possible with our staff. We always do. But forty-five students with four point five FTE, I would also like to see, uh, you gave numbers for Fremont and West. Where are, where does Saban and Stratton are competitively?
I think I can-
Are they at forty-five, so?
I think I can do that off the top of my head.
Yeah, okay.
I just would, if they're round numbers and they're not perfect, that would be great to just have that extra grace. Um, but I believe Saban has about a hundred and sixty students.
Hundred and sixty, one six zero?
One six zero. They run two sections at every grade level. So two sixth grade math, two seventh grade math, two eighth grade math, and they do that for all four core academic areas. They've got seven FTE currently, right now, with the core academic teachers and a gifted magnet coordinator. And Stratton, um, we, they have three um grade level teachers, so third, fourth, fifth grade, plus a point three FTE um for the gifted magnet coordinator. And um, they run about twenty-five students per grade level. I think one grade level has twenty-three kids, one grade level, I think, has twenty-six, cuz we had someone move in, we had a set of twins move in. Um, so we went over that twenty-five cap that we like to put, and then um the other grade levels at about twenty-five.
So what you're telling me is Stratton has about seventy-five students in the GMP program, Saban has hundred and sixty students, and we are at forty-five at Fremont and uh West.
And we have been for the last three years at West. Um, if you recall, the winter of twenty twenty-one was a hard hit for West. And um, we, we lost a lot of students that year and haven't regained them. Um, and then um, the trend of enrollment at Fremont, I would say, has been about forty-five to fifty students for probably the last seven or eight years.
So the change in enrollment at West, two thousand nineteen was two seventy-two, and then in subsequent years, two forty-eight, one ninety-one, one sixty-six, and then this year, one eighty-two. So even with a bump in enrollment of this last year from one sixty, one sixty-six to one eighty-two, it's not coming in the um gifted magnet program. So we did get a bump this year on some of our efforts, and then for Fremont, as it's coming into me as quickly as I can, oh, actually, the word Fremont came in, but the numbers didn't come in.
It's right there, should be right there.
No, cuz it takes the picture longer. Here it is, got it? Cuz the Fremont numbers are uh slower overall numbers total. Can you just read them, Nicole? Cuz I, I can't quite make out the numbers, starting from twenty nineteen.
Let me go back to twenty, there's no totals on, it's just total of what's decreasing on this spreadsheet that I have.
Okay, we'll get to the numbers on Fremont as well. But the enrollment challenges for some of our schools have been real. We've made very specific marketing campaigns around what each school has to offer um for them to attract new families, and we're just not getting the response in the gifted magnet programs at Fremont or uh West. So the, the thing I wanna just be careful of is, this is a hard conversation, and I do appreciate um Director Halfley reminding us that every teacher voice is important in the conversation. Um, but what we, I wanna have a hard conversation about a program instead of having a harder conversation about a budget that says, with SRF falloff of one point seven FTE and clear misutilization of the limited FTE that we have in gifted magnet programming right now, that we end up then cutting gifted magnet teachers in order to balance a budget cuz we were afraid of making a programmatic change that we actually forecast will increase the gifted magnet programming over time. That hundred and sixty number at Saban is palpable. I mean, running two different sections. And then if it doesn't pan out, we might have to find that maybe we're a single elementary and a single middle school solution to Director um-
Yeah, the one thing that I would-
Director Carey's point.
Yeah, Sarah's sitting out there, and I know that Chibita identifies so many gifted students. How many do you guys have roughly?
Uh, seventy, eighty, seventy-nine, how about eighty?
Eighty students at Chibita, but I, if, correct me if I'm wrong, those eighty students do not enter, end, end up going to a gifted magnet program or going to Holmes. They usually transfer out of the district.
No, that's not true. Uh, very few go to the gifted magnet program at West. The majority still go to Holmes.
Okay, great.
Uh, I wanna add to and re-emphasize, um, first of all, the, the concerns that the teachers who are at uh at West who are not in the program, that as they continue to send their comments in, and I'll go back to your point where sometimes folks don't feel that they've been listened to because the decision wasn't in line, what they were proposing. But as a former principal and as a longtime teacher, I understand that the way in which I look at this is my view, and I would like somebody, when I say I want you to listen to me, to understand the significant impact that moving forward would be for the greater good. And that's the way I look at this, a greater amount of opportunity for uh gifted kids. And having kids in my classroom, there was a time when we took, say, there were seven kids in the fifth grade, and you got two, and you got two, and that's four, but you got three. So are we best serving kids when we only have two or three kids in a class? And I've tried it every way, and I don't think that's true. I think um preparing kids to be able to interact with their peers at their academic and emotional levels gives them an opportunity to develop the skills that they need to go to the Air Force Academy, to go to high-profile college opportunities. At the robotics up um fundraiser that, that we went to back at the Alps Club, uh, the young man that I talked to who was standing on the stage, he's the only person I've ever met that majors in four different areas at college. It's like, who does that? He certainly didn't come out of my fifth grade classroom, but out of a gifted magnet program, he certainly could. So again, to the teachers who have written in, the teachers who haven't written in, or who provide information anonymously, I speak for myself, and I think I speak for every teacher in this room, as well as um those of us who've run for board and wanna do the best for our kids, that we take your comments seriously, and we try to promote what you're saying so that we get our questions answered, and that as this progress, process unfolds, that your concerns are being taken into consideration. It may not turn out the way you want, but there is a, a way it's going to turn out, what I wrote the word down refocused. So for West, who's going to lose forty-five kids, how are we gonna re-man, reimagine our, our building? What is it that we haven't done that we can do because, because of other things that have been tried? Now this is critical, and we need to take a look at this, and we certainly have the supports in order to make this happen, in order to expand our enrollment. Um, and those were the two things I wanted to point out, and there is a difference between giving information, having your concerns heard, and collaboration. And sometimes, as a classroom teacher, I found that the collaboration piece was difficult because I didn't get out of it what I, what I wanted, but I did have my voice heard, and I did have the overall. And I have to, again, compliment you on giving the um program as full spectrum as possible to accommodate families, their kids, teachers who are in the program who may choose to move, not move, and for the other teachers to feel that they are part of the campus. Those are my two points.
Okay, any other, go ahead, cut it.
Oh, yeah. Um, so some, some additional things for you to think of. And first, thank you to Director Banks and Director Carey and Director Hayfley, because I, uh, collaboration, absolutely. I think that, given our history as a district at this point with the changing of the block schedule and other situations where people don't feel heard, and whether or not we choose, or you choose, to make a decision that they like, if we haven't listened, uh, I mean, we talk about community engagement, we talk about collaboration, and those are supposed to be important to us, and it sounds like we're just like, you know, check, you know, this is the way it's gonna be. And that might not be what you have, and intended, but I think that's what's coming across, is like, top-down. And I, the considerations you've listed, the communication with current families, with respective families, I'm not clear at this point if that's already happened or it's going to happen, because if it did happen already, then you've been talking to them before you told the staff today. No, okay.
We didn't share with parents before we shared with staff. We shared with staff starting at seven thirty this morning.
Very good.
Um, shared with a, another set of staff at three this afternoon, and then parents received the email at three fifteen.
Okay, so we, we're talking, the people have had a couple of hours, so we're only working with anecdotal information at this point. So for, you know, to President O'Palko's point of view, some data would be very helpful, I think, for us. You know, if we've, if we're to wait in.
Can you be specific on the data? Cuz we provided the difference in the classroom size and the economy of the efficiency of the staff that we have. So again, to bring it up, cuz you brought it up, the idea of collaboration within the master agreement, the line at the bottom of that says that budgetary and FTE decisions are excluded from that space. So we are at a budgetary and an FTE conversation of, to make this about what it is, is we're either going to move these programs, or we're going to reduce the size of our GMP program by cutting staff. We cannot support having three-to-one ratio of middle school GMP programmings with similar-sized staff. That economy of scale doesn't work in next year's budget. That economy of scale doesn't work in next year's budget. So the conversations we're going to be having, so if the data, what is the data? Because we're given FTE and student-level data, we've given enrollment-level data. If the data is opinions of staff members, we're happy to collect that. Emily's already said that she has a Survey Monkey or a Google Sheet out there. But I want to be clear on what the administration's being asked to gather for data.
Okay, um, come back to that maybe. The, I, well, no, let's just go there. I I would be curious what other board members might want to hear, Director Carey.
I already asked for enrollment data.
Yeah.
Yes.
But you have shared that already right now. You gave at the top of your head Saban versus West and also where West has been the last three years. And you say that they've been around forty-five students for the last three years in the GMP program. The only other data that I would want is like, how do Saban GMP students compare to West GMP? Is that a data that is even, you know, useful in this decision-making process? The concern there to me is are Saban students getting a more richer and rigorous experience? Because you have more resources and supports at Saban as compared to West where you have four-and-a-half FTE for forty-five students. And here you have seven FTE. Considering all that, I mean, I don't know, I don't, you know, that basically I was looking for that enrollment data which I received.
We'll we'll put it all on a single piece of paper and share it with the board, get all that data together.
Yeah.
And I would say the Saban program is so robust and so rich because the team has been together for so long. It's been a very stable team that has spent a career developing integrated cross-curricular units.
And if you go back and look at West, when you referenced that at the winter, I think, West had the same stability and group which was broken up during that time. And I I don't want to get into that conversation because I heard from parents at that time I was on the board. For whatever reason, that staff was broken up and parents left with it. Parents choose to go to North because North had not a GMP program, but gifted talented support. And we've not been able to recover.
We haven't. And though our staff at West has worked really hard to use to develop the program, they they are basically developing the program. Though we give them resources, we provide curricular units, we engage with them, we collaborate with them in a PLC time. We give them time with the Saban staff to share, you know, how do we do this effectively? And and yet the staff turnover has still been at such a rate at West that some of that work hasn't taken traction like we had hoped it would.
So anybody need any data information other than what has been presented here to help you make this decision?
And then we'll share it and if you add to it, we'll add to that.
Yeah, yeah, any other data information other than what we have asked for so far.
Yeah, I, not to put words in Director Oates' mouth, but I think some of the difficulty for Director Oates and myself is the presentation doesn't contain the case for why moving is helpful. There's some numbers that have come up in conversation that, you know, we're going to see the hard data for. And Director Malpakam has asked for kind of, you know, the longitudinal graphs for those so we can think about them. But if it didn't come to us, it wasn't put in the presentation, it's not accessible to the public. So in a, in a sense, we don't know what data to ask for because we don't know on the basis on which you've made the decision. So what I would just say is, whatever data, you know, because I I don't think anyone here is saying that you haven't thought about it. You've clearly thought about it. You've clearly thought a lot about, you know, there are already students at Homes who could benefit from this. We're not seeing the enrollment numbers change. We think Homes and Freedom have these advantages in location. You've clearly thought about it, but I think whatever data you use to make the decision, we have to see too. Is that a fair summary?
Yes. Yeah, and actually, I thought they, so they, to, very fair. And to Superintendent Gaul's point, like we'll get it to in writing. So is that in writing on the presentation? And and Emily did speak to it. Um, and part of that is is connected to what Emily was saying about the way we were cascading and not trying to manage that, not having conversations with the board before we having conversations with staff, like trying to do the timing right. We have to post these things and put it on Board Docs, right? So like that, those, we want to be honoring of being able to deliver the message of the of this in person. And so like some of those pieces are related to that, though we can follow up in writing connected. Does that make sense? So it's not like trying to not give you that information, is to give information during this time. But it's not actually on a slide in a presentation deck because of that.
Well, I mean, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? Do you want to go out there and then board members are going to say, why are you talking out there before coming to the board and talking to us about it?
So we align it so.
You come to the board and why didn't you go and communicate with the, so it's, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but so closely, right? Like very, very quickly together.
Yeah.
We do want to keep a sense of urgency that it can be a this-year decision just because of the ESAR offload that we have and the impact that that's going to have to GMP overall, as well as to gifted talent and supports at individual schools.
Well, that has to be communicated to that staff team if you haven't already done that. That barring movement of this West to Homes or Fremont to Freedom. You are going to potentially see a cut to the staffing in the GMP because it's not affordable. Maybe that has to be communicated to the staff to, so the staff are aware of what the cascading effects are going to be by keeping the program at that school. I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
And we're hopeful for to speak to your point about the decision. We were initially hoping to have a decision by January twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
Um, because that impacts, we already have parent information night set up. It impacts our recruiting, it impacts all of our promo materials. Like we we are poised, ready to go to either produce one direction or the other. And we we want to confidently be able to share with families which schools we're going to be in for next academic year because we were already feeling a month behind the curve.
Yeah, we we'll get to that. Director Oates, finish it.
Thanks. Um, so, you know, some of the community, I talk about community feedback. Some of the feedback we're getting is the impact on West. And yes, to your point, when we pull out a fourth or a third of the students, it's going to have a huge impact on West and its programs, what they can offer. And while this might be the best thing for our gifted students. It's obviously not necessarily the best thing for West as a school. And to your point about promotional materials, I feel like, you know, pulled out a significant piece of that school's program and then you have a hole. And so I'd be curious to also hear what the hole is, or maybe we put this off a year, which is never good for anybody. But there has to be a plan for West and everybody there should be part of that plan. So we we as a district, I would think, would have to get right up behind them and give them the biggest supports we can, make them the focus.
So in two weeks, on January thirtieth, our LCC Corporation that we partnered with under Design Thinking will be here to now integrate into our middle school redesign work that has been a task force. It has struggled to get over the hard conversation of who wants to be the school that wants to be about what. We want to complete the middle school pathways as an extension of our elementary school pathways. So as we jockey to understand the resources to meet the demand that we have in our pathways, how do we realize that in middle school? We're bringing that into a design center, starting at the end of this month, to be able to meet that need. West can't be left with nothing.
Right.
West is the elementary, is the middle school right now without an identity. Their identity had been the Gifted Magnet program, but no other school uses Gifted Magnet program as their identity. It is a program that is delivered within a quality neighborhood school. Saban is a perfect example of that. Because even with a hundred-and-sixty kids at Saban, you still have three times that in the population that go there as a quality neighborhood school. And so we've never gotten to a space of saying, we want a standalone Gifted Magnet school. We have Gifted Magnet programs within schools. And so we want to put those resources in the West to understand what it is. This is a confluence of the challenges that exist in public education. We hired a leader that we thought that would bring experiential learning to the West campus. And the basic vision was, we're going to create a K-eight model that is going to be mostly experiential-focused. Different in the outdoor learning aspect, but just outside of the walls of West. In the old Colorado City community, that seems pretty easy. We lost that leader for extenuating circumstances this year. And now we have an interim team as we get to a hiring cycle again. Every one of our schools needs an identity outside of the design thinking work that will happen for middle schools. Every one of our schools goes through an identity process and then goes through a new marketing campaign as well. You have seen that in some of the logos that were first formatted, formulated in our pathway schools. Again, I talk about, if you look at Bristol's logo, you have no doubt what the identity of that school is. It is clearly a STEM school, it's clear that a bear is their mascot, and they managed to get violins in there as well because it's more steamed than STEM. And it's all right there and everybody in that school knows exactly what that school's about. But there is great irony to me that most of the feedback that is coming from West is not coming from the gifted staff. It's coming from the other staff that is saying, the only thing that we had is our identity. Because we're worried about our jobs and we love our school and we love our community is now disappearing. We owe it to West, not as just as a school, but as an old Colorado city. What are we going to do with that campus? What's the right answer to, I gave you those numbers, four-hundred-seventy-two, now down to a hundred-and-eighty-something? Like that outside of this Gifted Magnet conversation should be an alert that says, we have to put this school through a visioning. We need to get a redesign of what we think middle school AMP is going to look like on a completion of the pathway. And we have that work in place. We're just always stuck up against this, who who do you tell first? Who's the chicken and who's the egg? And we did redact a lot of information from this because we have to post it over the weekend. And to post it over the weekend and then have people screaming and yelling without the context. And particularly, I really appreciate, because this is what I love so much about Emily and Tamara, is their empathy to this conversation and to the people that are impacted on this by students, by family and by staff member. This is a real conversation that we have to grapple with and it's coming to a head. The whole West thing is coming to a head on Gifted Magnet program. So we owe it to West. What we want to do is we want to get you all the data to make a Gifted Magnet program decision. Hold us accountable to making sure what we're doing for West in the same way that we have found that we've been able to do this for several other schools. What I don't want to do is get crisscross that we hold Gifted Magnet hostage because we're worried about West. We have to do the right thing for our Gifted Magnet students across the district. And and it's not just West, it would be Fremont as well. But most of the feedback, and maybe you'll get more feedback from Fremont as well. But Saban is a perfect example of how you can have a Gifted Magnet program in a school that its tire identity is not about Gifted Magnet, it's about being at Saban. And the kids at the Gifted Magnet program there get it, they're a part of that community.
Yeah.
So we'll get the data.
Back to you, Director Oates. You have more questions?
Uh, just a couple other observations. I just, again, again, we don't want to be dismissive of anyone. I mean, and you'll work to, not dismissing it. But the the process that you, the consideration of many voices and some collaboration on what is best for the West side and/or the Gifted Magnet program and/or West and/or Homes, Freedom, whatever. I I'm glad that maybe some of the visioning will happen for West. Because of course, like you said, it, that is pretty much their identity at this point. And it has been for years, maybe decades. So again, just pulling something out, the outcome might be the same, but what about that process? So and and if we don't, then we are just stamping down and down on the trust issue. And again, the top-down appearance, that we don't listen to our communities, maybe families and at least teachers. So I will set that aside. And just point out the other, what to me, I'm looking at my student demographic data, it doesn't seem to be posted for every school. But as far as I know, you're looking at taking gifted programming out of two Title I schools and putting it, you know, probably more socially or racially ethnically diverse schools and putting it into two schools that probably have higher socioeconomic income and are not Title schools. So if you just pause and think about how that looks, it's not a great look. So, um, and that should hopefully was part of your consideration, but I, if if something does me pause.
Can you expand upon what part of that is look, are you implying that there's some bias?
It looks like you're taking things away from black and brown kids and and poor kids and putting it into schools where that, where those populations, they're they're just not there, right? So you're taking this program and giving it to these kids.
But there is nothing stopping those kids from attending Homes or Freedom. I mean, we are not.
Which kids?
The black and brown kids that you are talking about.
Oh, transportation?
So we have a transportation solution.
Yes, then that needs to be part of the the data you give us and certainly what you're communicating. And and that may be, but yes, we we need to have that information, I would say. And and even so, you might have everything planned out, but you, there are going to be people who come at us with that observation. I'm just.
We haven't heard that except from you at this point. I mean, making this a case about, no, making this a case about race, I don't want to open a can of worms. It's not, we are, what are we about as a vote priority? We said students come first, okay? Not a single school, students come first. Okay, so are we doing it for the best of?
It will come up because the same conversation happened when Academy, what's the name of that charter school? Academy ACL. ACL, when Pike Elementary was being closed because of budgetary concerns. They didn't have the school population or the enrollment. The neighborhood had gotten older, new families were moving in. And so the decision was made at the at the board level, at the superintendent's level, to close that school and to take the children, the hundred and some children, less than two hundred, from that school into other schools. And that was exactly what was hitting our community. Oh, you've taken our local school and all those schools up on the north get everything. And I think that's a very real concern. But I, again, I go back to what I had written before and that's to refocus. This gives West an opportunity and us to provide the supports to be able to have them build their community. And this is what we stand for. Because not every kid at West was involved in the Gifted Magnet program. It was a portion of it. And we just have to be clear that we are trying to reach out to make sure that we are offering families and students on the West side a viable qualified programming that will attract other kids. Not because we're moving into a higher socioeconomic group, but because economy of scale. Because West needs to reinvent itself, should have, I won't say it should have. But maybe perhaps, thinking in how to increase the enrollment there. And I remember when it was on my list, having a conversation with the principal who was there at the time. One of the proposals that I was listening to was to redraw the the district, redraw the attendance area for each individual school. And therefore, she would be robbing students from another District eleven school to fill her school. That's not what we want. We want identifiable programming that attracts families so that they know that their children are getting the best that they, that we can offer. And it matches what they want for their children. So this gives an opportunity, but I agree. I think that we need to be cognizant of the fact that we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul. What we're trying to do is to build our programs and increase the quality of what it is that we can deliver. And how can we do that at West? And I think this board and this superintendent have demonstrated that we will put supports and supplies and money into increasing the quality of what we have to offer. And so as long as we're looking at how it is that we're going to help West to gather themselves and with the collaboration piece, that's where the collaboration comes in really hard and fast. What is it that you want your school to be known about? What is it that we can do to attract other teachers who want to come here and families who want to come here? So that we can take pride in who we are and not piggyback on a different program that that doesn't actually involve us.
Yeah, and just for points of clarification, Saban is a Title I school at sixty-seven percent free and reduced lunch. So the corollary between whether or not you can have a successful Gifted Magnet program in a Title I school has been proven that our strongest program is at a heavy Title I school. Homes, although not Title I, is forty-two percent free and reduced lunch, which is pretty darn close to about that cutoff. Stratton is not Title I and their free and reduced lunch is?
One-twenty-five.
What's that?
One-twenty-five.
What's their percentage of free and reduced lunch at Stratton? Thirty percent-ish, if you said one-twenty-five and it's about.
That's that's not my point. That's that's not my point though either, I mean, that's great.
No, I'm just trying to understand, cause it sounds like an accusation as if we're removing an access point. Where we have access points at Title One and high and free reduced lunch. We don't have a gifted magnet program at Chapita where we're very far from a Title One school. And and they're probably our lowest free and reduced lunch population. And we we have gifted talented supports, but we don't have a GMP program. The, I think the thoughtfulness of the recommendation of the schools was to find that right balance. To make sure that we're not just in an area where you could make an assumption that says, we don't think it could be successful at that level. The program has existed at West for as many years of which it has not been attended. I think if there's anything the board has been about, it's recognizing that we have to follow where parents are choosing. Parents have told us very clearly that they don't choose the gifted magnet program at Fremont and at West. Probably the more relevant question is, is do you need to? Or do you just need the one because of the applications and do you expand the one at each elementary and middle school?
I think this is a very helpful, uh, healthy conversation to have because we've got all these different points of view. And we're gonna be asked about our opinion on this and what it is that we've discussed. So I appreciate um the quality and the compassion and passion that we're presenting our thoughts. Um, and I think this is really good.
Okay, any further questions or discussion on this topic at this time, otherwise we'll talk about the timeline that you mentioned. Any further thoughts or anything? Okay, timeline, you said that you wanted something um decided or feedback provided to you by January twenty-fifth?
Hoping to have a decision by January twenty-fifth.
Okay, uh, just for the boards of enders, uh, following prior practice. When we identify a pathway school like what we did, uh, Columbia as an arts magnet school, Martinez as an act. It did come to the board and the board took a decision from the board tires that we want to um um. Authorize that or approve that uh school as a pathway school. I am seeing that the same kinda thing here that we as a board would have to collectively take that decision for this move. So this would come as a board agenda item on January twenty-fourth. Next week on the board agenda, what the board has indicated is in the meantime, we need some data to substantiate what you are looking at, okay? And like to Director Carey's point, you have identified and you are, you know, we are not questioning your uh decision-making. But let's look at the data not only for the board, but also for the public. So when we are responding back to this emails that are coming to us, we can refer to this as what's happening. The enrollment data that you are talking about, all those things and uh even something related to the budget. How this can potentially impact future uh budget cycle, um. So this would um probably come as a non-action at the January twenty-fourth meeting. But we may have to pull it into action the straight same day to make the decision. Um, and we can do that uh by two thirds of the board for the pull it into action. And in the meantime, um, the other feedback that you hear from several board members is the need for our staff to be listened to. Uh, the administration, um, and you guys, uh, you know, at the curriculum level. And then Superintendent Gall is going to make a recommendation to the board. And the board is going to make a decision on the subject matter. But we at least, uh, the feedback from the majority of the board is that um we want our staff to be listened to. And different perspectives to be heard. And we will gather that perspective and then make the best decision for the greater good of the school district. And the greater good of our students, not just uh for the greater good of one school. But overall for the school district and the thing, but we need uh at least the communication, that communication possible. Let's keep keep them engaged in whatever way you can, okay? Anything else that I'm missing as far as feedback to um administration at this point in time on this subject matter? Okay, I captured everything that we need, okay? Thank you, thank you, appreciate it, that was a long discussion, okay? But I hope uh the staff also understands that um that are watching, uh, that we don't take these decisions lightly. We are looking at it, when you look at the richness of the conversation that took place and the compassion that comes from this uh. Asking for all the necessary information so we can make an informed decision as best as we can. The last agenda item on the topic, if you can put this down and put that um communications RFP up. We do have one last agenda item on the topic, which is the communications RFP. And uh this information was uh provided to the board, I sent an email to you. I think a few days back on Friday, uh, as far as um. What that is, uh, you know, in the scope of this um RFP. Yeah, uh, this has been a discussion, Ms. Odom, you may want to come and join us uh at this table. Because I'm going to throw to you uh for some more um details on the specific RFP itself. But setting the um uh table for this discussion, uh, this is more a need for board communications. Over the past several months, we have talked about the need for proactive communication. And that we, the work that happens at the board level in this boardroom and the board tires. Is being communicated to all our stakeholders, some out there, including staff, including uh community members, parents. And sometimes even the community members who are not parents, there are seventy percent of citizens. That live within District eleven that are impacted by the mill levies, that they paid taxes to our school district. But they don't have any kids in the school district. So how do we communicate what we are doing in an effective manner to all stakeholders, including parents, staff? We started with the newsletters couple of years back and Director Haley is fresh out of the classroom. And she has often said that, yeah, the newsletters are good, but teachers sometimes don't have the time to read a two-page newsletter or a three-page newsletter. What are other ways that we can communicate them uh in a much more succinct and effective way? And the message doesn't reach all of the community, um. So uh those were all the reasons and sometimes, you know, going through the recent elections. Messaging that happens at the district level and the board level gets distorted out there. And I know that um uh people are looking for um uh political agenda to um push. And the communication that we intend to, you know, put forth from uh the school board level. From the district level, by the time it reaches the community, it is often distorted because they hear multiple other voices. So how can we improve um uh communication throughout the school district? And how can we bring uh clarity and remove outside influence that may try to distort the message from the board? Those are all the um thoughts that are there between um uh whether there is a necessity for board communications going forth. This is not to promote the board itself, this is not to promote influential board members. Those messaging was all put out during the election season. If that was the case, election season is over now and we would not be having this conversation. We want to as a board priority, how do we reach out to our staff? And listen to them and also uh respond to their feedback. And with that idea in mind, uh, this RFP was put together, I will turn it over to Chris Odom, Ms. Odom, to provide some more feedback. And while doing that, Doctor Weiss, you may also want to join us if you have uh things to contribute to this conversation. Ms. Odom, I'll turn it over, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, um, I think the most important thing when I scanned through the requirements. Is to make sure that your requirements are broad. Because we want to tell the vendors, this is what we'd like to see and how it aligns to your board priorities. You have an objective stated in there. And if that truly is what you all give a thumbs up on and agree to. Everything that you task under that or ask for that, I need to understand what that frequency is. Is some of that um part of an implementation period to get on a, on a normal routine? I want a monthly this, I want bi-weekly that. We want periodic um press releases whenever there's a X, Y, or Z. Some of that's not clearly defined. From a procurement perspective, when we would issue the RFP, I would recommend that um. We have the vendor proposed recommended KPIs. So the board needs to approve that. But I think it's important to see from the vendor perspective. How they believe they can deliver key performance indicators. And see if that's really meeting what you all want. The last thing that I think I really need after you finish identifying your wants and your needs. Is in the proposal, I need to know, what do you want to see? Do you want to see how this vendor has approaches certain um situations? Can you give me a scenario you'd like for them to respond to?
Like a sample work of a topic we might wanna cover?
Yes, sir. Give me, uh, you know, your, I would recommend if you have three, and I'm gonna use the term buckets of requirements. Maybe we have three different scenarios, how would you recommend we um communicate this scenario? What's your approach to um to expanding our communication with our uh parent uh community? For these issues that we feel have been gaps? I need to know that and then we can help really refine this. I I don't know if I'm helping or I don't know.
Okay, shall, can you please pull down that document, I think that is so important. Further down to the next page.
I absolutely need to know if you, when do you want this to really start? Cause I, when I read this, I really believe that there needs to be a lot of engagement with the board. With whatever vendor gets selected. I would imagine a forty-five day period of time where they meet with you, they understand your needs. They come back with some information, some recommendations. You say yes, no, or you appoint a person or two individuals that represent the board. To act on behalf and move forward if that's the board's wishes.
So you want the date out there?
Mm-hmm.
Um, you talked about scenarios to ask.
Mm-hmm.
The different vendors that show up for the interview process. What else do you need from the board? You needed deadlines, like what's the, you know, monthly newsletter, things of that nature?
What are you envisioning as a deliverable or as an expectation and outcome? So I, when I looked at this, just listening to the various conversations that have taken place over the last couple weeks. I see this being anything from um something that might come up spur of the moment, that you might wanna engage this entity. I think this could be repeat monthly um pushes through whatever media you, they recommend. And you say, yes, let's do it for whatever is coming down the pike. I don't know if I'm helping.
Yeah, I know, I mean, that's, yes, and I think it is something that will come on a regular schedule, I would assume. But also some things that come up, um, uh, that we cannot expect at this point in time. But as a school district, we may need communication based on emergency.
And I absolutely believe that whoever gets this contract will wanna meet with the board and understand your priorities. I mean, the written word is almost always something different than what each of the board members would like to see or have a concern. And I think it's really important that that opportunity happens. So just curious, is this a contract that you would like to have awarded and in place? To start an implementation process within the next sixty days?
Well, I don't know that quick.
Yep. Okay, no, I I just need to get an idea to know how to prioritize and to ask you what I need to help you do what you want.
Well, the thing is, uh, the board has to decide how big a priority this is as far as communication goes. Over the next several months, we are going to be dealing with several issues. Here at the board level, it could deal with the COP, circuit of participation and uh renovation of some of our schools. That has to be communicated out there. The town hall meetings that we are going to have, we may need some help or support as far as the messaging goes. Even things such as movement of a GMP program from one school to another school. That's a board decision that has to be communicated uh in a clearer way so that there is no misunderstanding. That community clearly understands why that move took place. There could be things that come out of negotiations that we do want to communicate at the same time. There are several things that I I think the sooner we have something in place as far as communication goes, the better. I would not certainly want to procrastinate on it and wait. You know, hey, let's start in August or whatever it is, you know, for the new year. The sooner we have some type of communication in place. You know what communication has taken place from the board level? That has been uh the newsletters that we put out, uh, um. And if the board thinks that's something that we can continue to do over the next two or three months. While we go through this process, then great, then we need to figure out collectively as a board. How do we put out that communication going forth for the next two or three months? How do we share that responsibility in putting that communication out? Or do we provide that feedback to Ms. Odom that we will go through it in a systematic diligent way? But urgency is key out here, so.
Yeah, I have a question about why sixty days, that sounds like a long time.
I I would just, I just threw it out there.
Okay.
I can't get started until I have your feedback, so I can go as fast as you guys. But for the new board members, uh, just a two-minute overview of the procurement process. Once I get a a workable um statement of work, scope of work. If you have any known sources, I'd like to get that, we'll go out and we'll solicit through our Bonfire RFP system. We can contact as many individuals as you'd like and then it's posted for anybody who sees it to respond. We will do, I would like to have two board members represent the board through our solicitation process. They would be the evaluators to evaluate the written proposals. I also encourage that we have follow-up interviews. Um, and that could be with as many individuals who wanna be there, but still only two voting members. Once I go beyond two members, I have to have a public, it becomes very public. So that's for you all to decide. Once the interview has taken place and final voting has occurred, we'll do background or um past performance reference checks. We can get any information that the board would like to participate in, um, I will need funding to get going. If you are trying to get this so, this effort in place for this fiscal year ending June thirtieth. I need some sort of of money to get started. You can, if I were to throw a wag at what I think you want. And if we started March first to get you through June, you probably need thirty thousand dollars, just, I'm spitballing. I, don't hold me to that, but but I would need some money to at least start the effort. That's within the superintendent's contingency approval to transfer that, so I'm sure he would support you. I have no authority for that.
The question becomes, um, what kind of um communication we wanna have? I mean, also in the past, I know that we use billboards to, during the open enrollment. I know that um we've talked about Facebook, we've talked about, um, what else have we talked about?
I've seen commercials on cable.
I've seen commercials on cable the last couple of nights, but they're on very late.
Yeah, I mean, that goes to marketing and stuff. I don't know if we are, are we?
Oh, that doesn't come out of public relations?
Well, are we talking about that under this?
So, that would be, that falls within the purview of the Office of Engagement and our marketing coordinator. And we still do plenty of radio contracts and TV spots. Um, billboards, we're reevaluating the worth of those right now, but we're looking into that. Um, so that, those marketing strategies for enrollment are fully within our office.
Okay.
This is for the board's message. And so, having worked on the draft of this a little bit, I can say that listening to your conversation two meetings ago, right? Um, what I tried to capture in this, and I think what Chris was speaking to with the timeline a little bit, is what I heard was the need to have just preliminary discussions with an outside firm about the real purpose behind the messaging from the board, right? So that those kinds of questions can be navigated. What is the responsibility of the Office of Engagement versus the Board of Education when it comes to communications? And how does the board want to come across, right? And that happens on two different levels, which we also tried to capture in here. Because there's a overarching level of the board communicating its vision and values as I stare at the priorities here, right? Do you wanna always be connecting your messaging back to those priorities in a way? That's a communication strategy for the board. As well as a firm that can be on call for these instantaneous twenty-four hour, we just had a negotiation and we need to get messaging out quickly, right? That's a, that's an engaged work process, cause that's two different communication strategies. And so, thinking through the right opportunity for someone who can meet those needs at those two different levels, if that's what you are interested in. But the marketing piece for the district, we are fully the communicators and marketers for our schools and for the district.
So, part of this communication thing, and I don't know if it comes from the board, but we've participated in and have students come up to our dais uh on a weekly basis just to count lately when they have won um or been recognized at the state level for the competition that they've entered in and all. Does that go to your department as part of marketing or does that uh not? And I don't wanna, I'm trying to get a clear focus of where we're going with this so that we're not overlapping our needs. And I like the way you put that, our um, an overarching um perspective. And our messaging being a, being attached to our board priorities. So, that would include achievements, that would include um recognition for our staff and our students. I don't know how to make that cogent. I don't know how to um create a list that says, oh, these are the things that fall in this column and these are the things that fall in that column. So. Thoughts off the top of my head?
I think inevitably there will be natural overlap, right? I mean, we represent the same constituents, we speak to the same constituents. And ideally, we're aligned most of the time. Um, so we did add like a bullet point on the deliverable that we wanted to include in this. Um, our thought was to include it, that there would be um collaboration with the Engagement Office um to ensure coherence between the messaging, whatever that looks like. So, they won't be separate entities not speaking to each other. That we can continue to work on which type of messaging is most effective from which place, what is worth. Plenty of things are worth being redundant on, right? Um, especially if it comes to achievement. Happy to have that come out from a million mouths in a million different venues, so. Yeah.
Yeah. And I I see, I mean, the board work is the district work and the district work reflects the work of the board. So, there is some um cross out there and we just need alignment. So, who are we end up hiring to do this work will work closely with your office sometimes to get that messaging out. So, you guys are completely aligned together. You don't want one messaging coming from them and a different messaging coming from you. So. So.
So, I see it as maybe two things, the, and and you got the priorities here, you know, um, and it's on this big screen there. The ability to do, you know, um, on-the-spot type things. And then also just, you know, general marketing or methodic, you know, um, effective communications. I think yeah, it's in here, multimedia, you know, videos, digital media, you know, a audible track you could send out or, you know. Cause that's what teachers and other folks might want, you know, they don't, they're not gonna sit down and read a letter. But they might hear a sixty-second sound clip that they can play while they're doing the dishes or taking the trash out or whatever. So, that's good that that's in there.
Go ahead.
Just from my lens, when I read that, if I'm a vendor, I don't know where I start and where I end and who I talk to to do that work.
What are your suggestions?
We need a point of contact on the board that that vendor can reach out to and say, hey, I watch this. Or this contact on the board can reach out and say, hey. The board collectively thinks that this upcoming activity would be something we really want to push out. Every board member can send the point of contact, hey, I want this out there. I think this should be out there. That's your procedures that you would have to agree to. But that vendor needs one person, not seven people calling them. One person and to give kinda guidance as to when to engage and when not to engage. Because this type of contract is gonna be a mix of, here's the the recurring needs and it's gonna be this flat rate. And then it's gonna be, well, as I do this, it's gonna be an hourly rate. That's how I, unless you can really define some. We're only gonna issue two videos a month and we're only gonna have one press release in a year. And we want this very definitive actions. And I don't think that's what you need. I think you need a mixture of both based on what I see and how I've observed the um conversations. Is that true? Am I wrong?
Okay, uh.
Maybe.
Maybe?
I don't think so. Well, we can't um, you know, look into the future and identify what is going to come up. There could be times when we require communication strategies from people from, communication strategies from this firm that we are looking at who would, you know, I address a situation of emergency in our school district.
But I think when you have, as you've outlined, specifics, and I guess that's why I was confused when I read this. But um, I think once we delineate the kinds of things, every other week we will put out a board newsletter, blah, blah, blah. But outside of that structure, should we need for emergency purposes, they will charge us, I don't know, two hundred and fifty dollars an hour or whatever the the cost is. And I don't know if that's the way they do it.
Yep.
But I think, and and I think the whole contract would be not to exceed and then we pick a number or we take information.
You're getting so used to this. Yeah, that's. We can absolutely uh put a not to exceed amount and kinda cap things. I always want firm, firm rates. And I would like to have those things that are recurring frequency to be firm-priced.
Mm-hmm, that that makes sense to me.
And we can ask for samples of their work to be provided in the RFP. We can ask them to respond to scenarios. I could ask them to develop three KPIs to show increased engagement at, you know, elementary, middle, high. What is it that you want? So I can create it. Cause nothing's worse than I think I know what you want and then you get this proposal back and you're like, what the heck did you ask that for?
It's a KPI.
Key performance indicator.
Key performance indicator, I'm so sorry.
Know where you're from, there's so many acronyms.
I, I, yes, I I apologize. That's not good.
So, can we talk about um the scope of the work? I'm looking at this and I didn't know if this was a draft or this is actually what's gonna happen, but I'm looking at.
This is a draft. Let's say something.
Oh, yeah, so I'm looking at the first priority. And I agree, consulting services to craft the purpose and vision behind a communication strategy for the Board of Education. Do we want that last part in there that will increase student enrollment and community engagement? I think, I thought we were pursuing this to um to engage our community. And so, uh, this, the increased student enrollment, I didn't think that was the purpose. I thought it was to have uh communication going out and giving people an opportunity to communicate back with us. So that it's a two-way communication um in an effort to have another avenue for that conversation to happen.
Wouldn't increase and increase in student enrollment be a, be an indirect result?
A byproduct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Having improved communications and um
I I don't see the direct, yeah, I don't see the direct link. I I don't.
Like, for example.
Because if you're gonna put it in there, then you're gonna have to have a measurement. And how would we measure whether or not our public relations piece going out is due to our communicating with our public as opposed to high uh achievement levels or gifted programs or robotics or whatever? I don't know how you'd measure it.
Yeah, that, it's going to be impossible to attribute it to just one thing.
But we're so metric oriented.
That's why I wanted the contractor to propose based on their approach to meet our requirements. They have a vision, they have an idea, and they would know how they could provide data and how it would support it. That would be my.
Okay, well then.
So, don't we have overlap with with what you're saying on the next one, marketing strategy? We're not market, uh, we're not marketing, we're communicating. To me, those are two different things. Uh, marketing, I'm selling. Communicating means I want us to have a broader conversation and you are invited into that conversation.
I think we use the, I think communications work, we use the term marketing sometimes when we're talking about like the creation of all of this media. Um, that's just kind of like the bucket it would fall under with some of these companies when they're trying to understand what they're producing and why. Um, so I think that's kind of some guidance language there, you know, like if you're producing, considering how you're getting the message out, who your audiences are, how you're engaging them, that would be considered like a marketing strategy for the board, right? Is Instagram the best venue? Is it videos? Is it podcasts? So that, that would be the correct terminology in that way.
I see.
But separate from our district marketing, like too larger, if that helps.
It does.
Yeah, that helps, really.
I'm, I'm gonna just push back a little and say, when has the Board of Education had an emergency that we had to communicate about? And I, I, let's just, we can name it, that there was concern about negotiations last year and that's why we wound up, I guess, with um the contract that we had last year that we didn't know about for months. But the idea that we have emergencies beyond something so shaking
It's outside, yeah.
that it rocks the district to its core. Um, and that's gonna go to the district as a communication, I think. So, I mean, I I see the point. I I worry about the expense. Um, I think it's something that people can criticize us about, fine. But I I think, you know, if you want a monthly newsletter, that sounds good to me, a monthly newsletter, okay. And yes, maybe we have some things that we really wanna communicate. But to me, even what was done, I think, under our contract this last year, I'm not clear on it. The um early numbers for enrollment, for academic achievement. Um, and I think some of those were a little early, earlier than they should have been. But those, those are district things to me too, that the district should be paying for. And it just as part of our program of communicating how great the district is, the great things we're doing, that, that's not necessarily something the board needs. We can communicate it, but it's not an emergency. Yeah, and telling them about the work we're doing, that's great too. But even the people we honor, to your point, that, that should be, and it is being communicated, at least on social media. They have been on that for months. You know, yes, you know, we honored these people today. Yes, we honored those people, you know, again. And and right now, if you look at our social media, it's just churning with posts about what's happening in this district. I can't keep up.
I agree with that, but at the same time, I really think it's important for the board to have its own line of communication. I think it's important for folks to feel like they are getting information from, excuse the phrase, horse's mouth.
Sure.
And so that we get that message out. And maybe it will be at times duplicated. But I think that from the volume of emails that we get and the kind of conversations that we have in buildings, that folks want a pers, a more personal um relationship as opposed to those people who meet every Wednesday and make decisions about how we're gonna work our, how we're gonna live our work life. And I think the ones that you put out have been, have, have in my mind, the kind of communication we wanna have. As far as emergency is concerned, I don't know. Haven't been, um, haven't had experience with uh what we need to let our public know if um something comes up with the COP or something comes up with, um, what?
Oh, I I have an emergency-related question.
Oh. So, I don't know what those might be. That would be different from what the district would approve of or not approve of. Um, and one of the things that, that um has come up in the past and and we make a collective decision on whether or not we want to address it through our newsletter. And that is people coming to the podium during public comments. And the line between First Amendment rights and being able to say whatever and and not allowing people to say whatever comes to their mind. That is uh disruptive or disrespectful or whatever. So, I'm looking at this as our communication, separate, separate but aligned with what the district is putting out. So that people can hear our voices, that people can hear our uh collective point of view. And thank you for taking notes, cause I don't know how to make it succinct.
Well, and to that Rob's point, when I talked about emergencies or something like that, I don't want you to take it out of context. What Ms. Odom was talking to us about was that do we want definite structures? One newsletter, one video a month? Or do we have the opportunity, if something comes up, that we want to deliver a message? It's not an emergency, but we do want to deliver a message and that doesn't fall in that timeline or scope. Then we have that flexibility to open that conversation with that firm and say, hey, this is something that cannot wait till the end of the month to be delivered. We want that option out there. And maybe that is an ascent option where we keep a structured contract for a certain amount of money. And then when extra things come up, that can be done on an hourly basis that we are talking about. Okay, that's, that's basically what I'm saying. It's not just an emergency, it could be a communication. I know that um Superintendent Gall's team right now puts out like a board brief and it's been coming uh sporadically. It was stopped for some time in the fall and it seems like it stopped, started back again. So, after every board meeting, things that are happening uh at the board level, can it be captured in a forty-five second video snippet that can go to the staff? That these are some of the decisions that we met with the students um at um the Broadmoor for the Casby thing. And the students said that we don't get the newsletter at all. We don't know what's going on at the board level. And they would be interested in knowing the decisions that are taking place at the board level, how they impact them at the classroom level. So, there is that too, that we can communicate more specifically to that group, uh, student. That's the whole point of this thing. Uh, we can go back to uh two years back where there was no communication at all from the board other than board meetings. And we as a board established at that time that communication was a priority. And we have put together newsletters and every newsletter is archived on the board website for our public to know. And if we want to continue that type of uh service and maybe even expand on it, the board has limited capacity at this time to do that. We just don't have the capacity or the bandwidth unless. the board says that we can do it at that point, at this point in time. As you guys are aware, I've been doing that and I got to, I cannot continue at the same. It takes time and energy and effort to capture all that into a document and then have seven board members chime in. And then uh take it to our administrative team, who has to put it together in a format that goes out. So that's where we are at this point in time. I know that everything comes with uh financial uh constraints sometime associated with it. And people are going to look at us and say, hey, are you spending money for this? Uh, when always it comes to, hey, we should be spending money on uh the teachers in the classrooms. And we have said over and over again that the resources are going to go as much as possible closest to the students in the classrooms. And even that, we need to communicate in an effective manner to the community, because that message is not resonating with our staff. Who sometimes think that the board is, because of other groups chiming into this conversation, we get distortion out there, so.
So I, I, I think it's important, I'll, I'll give an example. We have a student uh project going at a high school that seeks to get surveys on a policy decision that the board had made last year. But the survey is on what the policy was not, because that's what hearsay said the policy was about. Now, that's gotten all the way to a classroom level and through multiple levels of review by academics. That says, we certainly want students to explore the things they want to explore. But they're exploring a falsehood, because the rumor mill says this is what a policy discussion was about. Not what the actual policy discussion was about. Because nobody writes the ship of what does or doesn't happen out of a board work session or a board meeting. Rumor and innuendo and/or interested parties will take pieces of information and use them to their advantage. My team does not have the capacity to summarize the COP conversation to say, we never said we're gonna close Palmer High School and bulldoze the building, yet people ran for school board on that talking point. People ran for school board on misinformation, cuz there's no correction of the record. We're here now, coming up on our sixth hour by the time we finish tonight. It is impossible for the amount of resources and staff that I have, for the primary role of the engagement team to be engaging and building partnerships at the school level that are supporting students, to summarize this body of work. We try to do it, Nicole does it, she's still there. I'm texting her, I thought she was home. Texting her, I said, no, I don't need that information tonight, she's sitting behind me. She's doing that in trying to get the summary of what's on board docs, how does she condense that and then send it to the staff? So they understand. And our staff covets that information, but again, they're not cascading that. Principals aren't taking her summary and sending it to all teachers. We have a giant gap in between the body of the work that the board represents. Remember, we, we are all just supplying information, you all are the decision makers. There's a giant gap in the system of what we do every Wednesday and how the system feels about it. And it's a huge opportunity for us to be able to say, this is the district, and again, I'll just take it because the Gazette ran the story. This is the district that added kids for only the third time in thirty years last year by making the decisions that this board supported. That's a major talking point for the Board of Education. Right now, I'm stealing that talking point, because you all don't have a mechanism to make that your talking point. I'm certainly proud of the strategies that we brought that you supported to go for a portfolio approach. But it's really not my talking point, it's really the Board of Education's talking point. Right now, the system is built that that's our talking point and we manage it internally. But it's much more powerful if it is an answer to the will of the people of this is the board that they elected and this is what we have turned for you to get. Even to the earlier conversation we had on gifted magnet. When that decision is made, wherever the board goes, how does the board own that? To say, this is why we made that decision, to level all the noise that's out there. And there'll be noise either way you make that. Right now, my team's trying to manage that, but my team is in, incapable of doing that. Because there is an inherent political nature to school boards. We are an apolitical body that has to support whoever is the board. Particularly those not at my level, cuz superintendents have a tendency to come and go, as goes the Board of Education. But the staff has to find a way that they're being supportive of that. And so asking the staff to own those decisions and communicate them, then becomes almost a conflict of interest for them to do it. So if the board wants to be a leader in public education and communicate the value of the vote for the return on that investment, it has to see this as something that fundamentally every board should have.
And that speaks to the fact that this opportunity is a communication between us as decision makers and the people who put us here. And in, in hiring the superintendent who's gonna follow our um board priorities.
Right, the greatest irony for me in the last election is the way this plays in politics is one slate says the teacher's choice. The number one vote getter is a teacher that isn't on that slate. There's a giant miscommunication between the value of anybody's position of what they believe happens in the classroom. That's, that's, there, there's no irony lost on that. But we're not filling that space, we're waiting until an election to fill that space. And then individuals have to say, I need this support or I need that support. We can own our message that says, we're giving public education back to the public. You voted for this board, you voted for a very similar board the time before that, that says, we heard you and here's how we're being responsive. But we go silent, I can remember Parth telling me about door knocking, him saying that he's getting feedback from individual constituents that is exactly one eighty out from decisions that we have made. Because the board doesn't communicate its value, we let other people fill that space.
And given all of that, I still don't know the specifics to put in the RFP to capture what it is that our purpose is in creating um this position.
Well, would a part of it be hearing the noise that has filled that vacuum and then having to have a, a response? Not to say like, we've heard this and here's the truth, but just to go, you know, knowing the background noise of, you know, the hundred and eight like for me, it was door knocking and saying, oh, the board wanted to cut, you know, twenty grand teachers pay. And I'm like, in what reality would we do that? Like, literally, in what reality? But that's what these people believe. So if it's this marketing company has to, or whoever we use, has to know, maybe from a what's the rumor mill got going on, and then watches board work session, listens to the takeaways at uh Nicole's building from board docs and says, okay, here's what's actually happening, and that's just a deliverable, then maybe that's what it is.
So would it mean that this person would have to attend meetings, board meetings?
They certainly have to review them.
Yeah, review them or watch it remotely, whatever it is. They don't need to be in the room watching it, they can.
I hear the price tag going up.
Right, that means that like tonight, they've got a six, what, five-hour meeting at the moment that they're gonna sit through and try and sift and winnow what we want. And so to me, that's where we're president, vice president, anyone, secretary. And maybe we could, we could have a little tiny debrief at the end of the session that says, here's what we want communicated.
That goes back to what Ms. Odom was talking about, having a point of contact on the board. And that, you know, the board can provide that point of contact. And we can say, hey, um, these are the areas that you want to focus on. We can even tell them, one hour into the conversation, in the board meeting today, you may want to listen to that fifteen-minute conversation that took place on this topic or et cetera, so they're not watching a five-hour board meeting.
People just listen to it like I do my audibles at one and a half or two X speed and you just get, get through it.
I thought we were better than Netflix, so I don't think people would want to watch it anyway.
Can I get in how much they charge us per hour?
Yeah.
That could be brutal.
We can charge them to watch our board meeting.
That's the funniest thing I've ever done.
If, I can, I'm just gonna put out there, uh, to the district's credit, the BOE, the board briefs um are sent to everyone. So it's not just principals, it should be, every staff member has that available to them. It's, it's kinda nice, it's got a what, what, you know, why, why is that happening? So that is a great communication, thanks Nicole, for letting people know what's going on. They have to avail themselves of it. You know, our newsletters, to your credit, have come out with pictures and things, and that's nice. And um it's definitely more newsy and it talks about everything from, you know, student enrollment, achievement, graduation. So that's, that's even more broad and I, I think it's personal, more, much more personal maybe than this. But if this is going to continue to come out from the district side, that is a resource to whoever we hire. And or do we duplicate that? Yeah, it's just.
It could be a resource, you're right.
I think it's a resource.
Yeah, I think it's a resource. And then whoever the point of contact is on the board, then um they don't necessarily wordsmith it, but they um put it into the message that we wanna go out from that meeting. And then I am assuming that it would be done in a timely manner that says it comes to all of us, if we wanna make changes, we make changes. Blah blah blah, I don't know how that um final piece would be.
Uh, I appreciate that, because I know that sometimes time has been a little tight for you. And um I wanna review things that go out from us as a group and.
So it sounds like us can, um, as a group.
Yes, and a couple of hours has not been sufficient sometimes.
Which is up to the board, as far as how quickly do you want to get this message to the public out there? If a board meeting takes place today and you want to wait ten days for that message to get.
I was thinking Monday.
Right, but yeah, then we need to be able to get that person to whoever we hire to turn that around to a message and then it goes, if we need to go to the interior board. Or to me, if there is a point of contact out there, let the point of contact be authorized to do that. If seven different board members are all going to chime in, and that's the, uh, it comes back to me again. Seven different board members are coming to me with their feedback. I still have to capture the will of the board to the best of my ability. So if I'm hearing from one board member to change this, but I've not heard anything else from anybody else about that, I'm still going with what I have in hand. So how do we get the will of the board at that time? So, um.
That's a conversation.
Yeah, you know, I mean, it just becomes laborious at that point in time. So that's why, by the time I start a newsletter and by the time it goes out to the public as a deliverable, there is a gap of two weeks. It takes me about three, four days to compose the newsletter, send it to you, get feedback and then provide it to the communications team to turn it into a thing and then, yeah.
Yeah, and maybe that's too long a period. Maybe we need to think again about how it is that um the will of the board is expressed through the, the newsletter without making it laborious. Uh, I, and I don't know, I mean, it's a conversation to have.
Yeah, but let's get through this process step by step and maybe that's something that even the firm that we end up hiring can provide.
Maybe they'll have an idea.
Yeah, feedback as to how to go about doing it, in a much more simpler way. Instead of deciding this, let's look at the, the date that um uh Ms. Odom asked for. Would, uh, she suggested March first, would that be?
Be, before you get there, so in order to write the RFP, do you have to know upfront um where we're gonna cap the, the cost? Is that part of an RFP?
I would like to have, so I need to know this fiscal year and next fiscal year. Next fiscal year will happen as a result of the RFP. But do you want this to be a two-year effort or eighteen-month effort? Is this a three-year contract? I, I need to know the period of performance. Um, I need to know a, a good, I, I need to have some seed money. Superintendent, I hear is loaded.
I would, given your um type of contract, if we as a board decide to do this and I, and um Lauren is the only one not here today, if we decide to do this, the board will turn over in a year and a half. So I would like a year and a half contract for us to support, so that we get it, um that we get our message out, as opposed to writing a six-month or a year and then having it switch over and we have to do it all over again. Um, I think it'll take a, a while for us to solidify what it is our intent is and the scope of which our newsletter is going to um to reach the people we think that we wanna reach. And I think if we stick with one company, and I don't know any companies, don't think that I've got somebody in the back of my head. I think given the last RFP with the quality of people who applied, I think we'll get quality people again. And um some of what we can do, cuz this is out of our area of expertise, we will take in the information that we get and better codify what it is that we wanna accomplish. So I cut you off.
So that's uh the feedback that you got from Dr. Bankers was June twenty twenty-five. Then, you know, the contract going till end of June twenty twenty-five, is that something that the board is?
That's my, my proposal.
Yeah.
And then you all have to decide what you wanna do.
It's out there, so is there any um support for that, what Dr. Banker suggested? Or other alternative options that board wants to give?
The other question that leads to, do, would a company um apply for this RFP if it was only for six months? Until we started a whole new year and a new school here? I don't know.
I'd recommend you do a year and a half because of this is the board and then each new board should have the choice to make. I think eighteen months is enough time for someone to get to know the district and show the value of what they can offer to see if it makes any, any um difference. And we could come up with a metric, I mean, our relationship with AdPro was the one who first said to us that the number one detractor for D eleven was inside D eleven. And so we could come up with a net performer score would be one measure or other customer service ways of seeing. Do people now value the district in a different way, right? That's, that's what's missing. Director Ott said people need to avail themselves to the messages that we send. I categorically disagree. I believe we need to sell to them the message that we have to deliver. If we're waiting for people to open up emails and newsletters, we're gonna be waiting a really long time. That's just not how the world operates anymore. And again, if you read the Gazette Telegraph uh, uh article on enrollment, other neighboring school districts are blaming the cop. It's too expensive to live in our district, people can't get there. They can't buy in here. This is a state of choice. This is a state, you don't have to buy in a District twenty to go to District twenty, you just have to be able to drive from Dougherty to Rampart to get there. They're not getting the kids that they were getting before, because we've become active in saying, our product is not only as good, it's actually better. And we're just the first people that are doing it and we need the board to be able to say that same thing. And if we do that as a full package, then I think we're in a place where we're the leaders of El Paso County. It doesn't matter if our enrollment's higher or not, but we have been the ones who have siphoned off ten thousand kids over the last thirty years. While the population set in this county has nearly doubled. And that's cuz we're just not in the space. We don't see that the board isn't, is a part of district marketing. Matter of fact, we've actually been taught it's the opposite of that. It's the opposite, which is, we don't wanna hear what the board has to say.
I think there's a distinction too between the current, I, I just pulled up kind of one of the meeting summary briefs. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the current product that is being shipped out is kind of a summary document. Whereas if, you know, if I think about the gifted, and you know, the gifted program that we talked about earlier this evening, it'd be one thing to have a document that says, okay, as a summary, uh, the board collectively gave a thumbs up to this or gave a thumbs down. But then it'd be very different to have a product that says, and here's why we made that decision and here's the justification for it. And I don't know that we'd want to put your office in the position of having to do that for us.
That's exactly.
That's exactly.
That's it.
Yeah.
Because if you don't win your next election, does that mean Jess has to go find another job? Right? We, we work at the bequest of the Board of Education. And I just have found that in my now fourth district that I have a senior position in, the boards don't own the message. And they, they, they say things in here and they think everybody hears them and they don't. And then people fill in the space, because you either like or you don't like Jason Jorgensen. And if you like him, you like him. And if you don't like him, you don't like him. And I'm not trying to get people to like board members. I just want people to see that this board, the last board, even the boards before that made the right decisions for the district based upon the time that they were in. And, and there's no connectivity between that. And again, I found great irony that people that ran for the board election last time that were on the board didn't use the wins of that board in their campaigning. Even though they got credit for it.
So in the interest of moving this along, we've been discussing this for a while, so we can give some specific feedback to the questions that Chris Odom asked. If um nobody else disagrees with it, um, then I'm going to provide that feedback that June of twenty twenty-five uh is the length of the contract that you can put out out there. Whether that is going to be structured as um this half a year first and then a year following that, however it, it is that you want to.
I think we'll get a better uh response.
Okay.
Look, and can I just throw one more thing out? Um, if, if we're looking at June of twenty twenty-five, you said. if we're looking at June of twenty twenty five, you set up yourself if you run for reelection. So I'm just gonna say the we we are in January of twenty twenty three. We might wanna make it whenever it starts to spring.
It has to be in twenty twenty four.
I was gonna say December. Maybe we do it through for a year with an option to renew through December of twenty twenty five. It gives a new board that is elected in November the opportunity to decide if they want to continue. But we don't set anybody up for, oh, here we are. Yes, we wanna continue. Only for, you know, five months or something.
And we've all learned when you're first on the board and all these huge decisions happen. It's like, well, I'll just go with what everybody else said or whatever. But I think you're right. I think the new board coming in in December should have the opportunity to make a decision on whether to continue it or not. I agree.
So then then go on till November or October?
December thirty first, twenty twenty five.
Great. December thirty first, twenty twenty.
Yep.
Okay. And at that point in time, the new board can decide how they want to pursue it, whether they want to end it or not. As far as the start date, is March first a realistic date to go through that this R F P process and have somebody hired March first?
As long as I have a finalized scope of work by Friday, I can get things going.
Even for March first, I mean, it's like you've got six weeks of that.
Maybe we can make it to fifteen.
I I could go, if I go another week, like let's just say March or January twenty ninth. Bless you.
Yeah.
And I have money and I have two people that want to be volunteer to participate in the R F P process. It's usually how long does it take to get the word out for vendors to respond? And then evaluate. So, yeah.
Possibly, I mean, two weeks to put out the word and two weeks to evaluate them and make that decision. So if it's possible, March first will be the date that we can start from. Okay, so that gives us a if you think.
As long as I have everything by January twenty ninth, is that fair?
Yes, yes, yes.
Is that reasonable?
That's fair, that's fair. So March first is the date. And you need two board members to participate in the R F P process. I already have one hand out there with Joe and Sandra lifted her hand and Jason lifted her hand. So I have three volunteers out here. Um, I will talk to them and see who are the two that will serve on this. So we have three volunteers. Between Jason, Jason, Sandra and Joe, we figure this out.
And I absolutely encourage any sources that any of you have send to me. And we'll, I'll get it to Rosa and we'll invite them to participate.
Okay. And then all the other things that you asked about the deliverables, what we want on a monthly basis or a weekly basis. How does the board want to handle that? Can we just delegate that to the two board members that get assigned to this committee? And they can, we.
I think you could decide it now.
Okay.
Monthly, I think you're you're you only have two meetings a month of official board business.
Yeah.
So I think one monthly newsletter would expand the last two board meetings.
Right, right. One monthly newsletter and maybe one snippet, like a forty five second video or something after every main board meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. So that that would be two video snippets and then one newsletter.
You want two videos a month?
After every board meeting, one after every board meeting, we have a forty five second uh, video to capture some of the main things that happened at that board meeting. And then another one. That's at the most two video snippets. That was my thought process after every board meeting. Not after every work session I'm talking about every board meeting. Yeah.
Can I, can I sixty four thousand dollar call a friend question kind of a thing to Jessica? I mean, what is, when I think of social media and stuff like that, where the Instagram and TikTok world, I would almost say, let's skip the video or go for a five second video. I don't, I don't know. Cause it's hard to summarize a meeting in even forty five seconds, but the game is strong right now for social media with the district. And if there was a collaboration, we could even have a board post a week or something. I don't know. What is, but going back to my original question, does any, what would the format be for a forty five second video?
Yeah, I I don't think, I I don't think we should put what we want from the R F P.
Let's see what they say.
I think we should ask the R F P, what's the best way for us to deliver a message through a multimedia
Yeah.
That's fair. Yes.
Perfect, yes.
solution set between print
Yes, right, let's do that. Let's do that.
social media and whatever else.
Yeah, let's do that.
I was gonna say that, cause part of the point here is we are manifestly not the experts.
Yes, exactly.
Absolutely.
Just tell me the frequency. You said one for board and a monthly newsletter.
Let's do that. Yeah. Let's, yeah, but let's do, let's.
I'll 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 help you with the language of what I.
Yeah, let's do, you know, like, let's ask them.
Okay.
Instead of putting specifics out there, let's ask them.
And we helped you with the language.
Putting with this overall deliverables, how best that they can communicate this? Is that going to be on newsletter a month or do they have other ways that they can provide that support? Okay, so let's keep it open ended. That that's what I'm hearing. We are not the experts there. So let's go and ask them. For that feedback as we go.
I do think to the point you made earlier, the collaboration, you you've done, not negotiable the last couple of years, that is a must. We cannot find ourselves crosswise with the district. There's got to be incredible cooperation there to make sure we're all on the same page.
Cooperation with?
Between whoever is hired and deal of an engage, right?
They're engaged. Yeah. Totally. Yeah, absolutely.
It can't be.
Absolutely. And that is there, that is there as one of the bullet points of.
Yes, I but maybe emphasize somewhere else and whatever updates you make to this.
Yeah. Yeah. And, you know, as far as two board members sitting on that R F P or whatever it is, maybe it would benefit and I'll throw this to Superintendent Gahl. Uh, maybe somebody from Jessica's team could also be part of that R F P.
That would make sense.
Oh, yeah. Okay, great.
Yeah, yeah. So, um. So with that being, do you need any more feedback? So we can keep this a little bit more open ended. Put this out there that we need board communication, delivering the message out there. Some of the language that's captured in their multimedia, all those things are good. And then through their application process, we get their feedback on how they would address this request. Okay, so do we need scenarios that you talked about or is that something that?
If the representatives can do that, that's.
Great, okay. So I have three board members already that are willing to serve on that. I will talk to each individual one of them and see how we can narrow that down to two. Who is the team wants to give us some uh, feedback on that. Is that okay if I just engage with the three of you of line? Okay. Anything else at this point? Uh, in this conversation, Ms. Odom, did you get what you needed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, anything else on this subject matter, I'll be good. So we do have a board meeting next week. As far as I know, we don't have executive session next week. So the board meeting will start at five thirty in the evening. If there is a need for executive session, I'll I'll let you guys know, but there is nothing on the plate this next week on that. You have three charter schools that are going to be on the board agenda next week. All the information pertaining to the charters have been communicated to you. Two charters are coming up for renewals. That's Academy A C L and Roosevelt Charter. Uh, this is a ten year process where every ten years the board has to look at the data and go through that renewal process again. And that will come as non-action next week. And in February come as action. And then we also have the Thomas McLauren contract coming up as an action item because it's a contract, it will come directly as an action item. All the necessary information pertaining to that was sent by email. It will also be loaded on board docs by Friday. I just wanted to get that information to you a little bit in my plan. So you have time for preparation. If you have any questions, reach out to Superintendent Gahl. Uh, I think Dr. He was here. I think he disappeared. Dr. Mendelsberg.
I sent them on as we were doing a communications.
Yeah, uh, uh, reach out to Dr. Mendelsberg. Uh, he will be the point of contact on that.
Great.
The other things, and then the week after that, January thirty first is the tentative date now for the board retreat. It's set to start at four o'clock and we think Ms. Melissa Olson, when she comes back, she will let you know the location and all the information.
U C C S downtown as well?
I think so, but I just want to make sure that she does has confirmed and everything since before I just put the word out that it is U C C S. But I think that's the direction that she was going in. Uh, I just wanna make sure that everything is, the i's are dotted and t's are crossed and everything is there. Uh, and that, if you guys have any feedback on what you guys want to see in that retreat itself, reach out to Ms. Haley, Director Haley or myself and uh, provide that feedback as far as what you would like to see in that retreat going forth. I do have certain thoughts in mind based on the feedback that you provided from the prior retreat. Uh, but if you have any specific agenda item that you would like to be covered in that retreat as a vote, please let either of us know.
Yeah, then speaking of feedback, you have a manila envelope. It's time sensitive. So when you look at that. Thank you.
Okay, and then that goes back to her.
Okay. Yes, yes.
Yeah.
It said so on the document inside.
Okay.
Okay, with that, we are officially adjourned at nine thirty five P M.